I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Alright y'all. Let's work.
I do have a couple of housekeeping things, bathrooms in the back, there's a kitchen over to the side, recorder there, please speak low.
Okay. So we are moving first into rules of procedure, code of ethics, um, working draft, then we have the policy of procedures, appointments to county reports. And have a break, wrap it up, ten forty if we have not gotten to a stopping point at that point. Um, I think Renee has handed out to everybody a packet.
So I'd like to run a couple of things as we're talking about the rules and ethics. One is under our current rules, we're supposed to be video recording this live streaming at the same time, so we're violating our own rules right now by having this meeting without video. That's what's in our current accepted rules. So I'll note that.
Unless we're not in a building.
If we're not in a building with the recording ability, it does state that.
In the current, which one are you looking at?
It's hard to wait.
Which rule of procedure is already looking at?
I'll find you a second, give me a second.
Okay, yeah. And I can get it pulled up, and then there is a way I believe I can, um, mirror my screen up here.
Yeah.
But while you're looking for that, just kind of go in, they suggested rules of procedure for the board of county commissioners, um, what Renee has drafted, and I, I don't know if there have been any amendments, I, I'm trying to, I haven't, you know, gone page by page necessarily yet, um, because it was a busy week, but this is from the, um, fourth edition by Trey Allen that's put out by the local government board builders, um, that we're kind of going with. It is what is recommended by the NCC, the School of Government, uh, Lila, all the, all the things, um, really recommend the suggested rules of procedure.
Just okay, Commissioner, four seconds, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, please do. Because it's been like a month or two, and I was looking at when I first thought this was gonna come up, and that was one of the things I was like, okay, are we doing that or not? She's not in this pack.
No, not, not the current one, the current one's not gonna be in there.
I marked it up at home and it didn't bring it.
And from what I could tell, and that's, that was kind of where I was at, but the areas highlighted in yellow were the only changes she made, I think, from this book, is that correct?
So the areas highlighted in yellow, that's something that we need to dig into a little bit further. It references courthouse bulletin board. We can adopt a policy as a board to, uh, more suited location, i.e. the administrative building. Um, this is just what's referenced by statute, um, which is why it's a little bit different.
Where are we currently posted at?
We are currently posted in the, the administrative building, or in this sense, this is where the meeting was gonna be taking place, so posted it here, and front and back door of the administrative building.
So yes, I would be in support of changing that from.
To that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we understand that it changes.
Because having it at the courthouse across the street from where we meet is.
Yeah, it's kind of counterintuitive.
Right.
So Renee, why are you looking it up?
Yeah.
You're talking about how we don't have to if we're not, but it also says in there that we should only, we should be at our regular place unless there's a reason not to. Again, that's my next question, is why do we meet here at the courthouse?
Because we're having a roundtable discussion with a lot of department heads throughout the day, and it gives them the opportunity to come in and sit down with us as we have the work session.
The thing says if the buildings aren't available, not.
You're talking about in the current rules?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the plan was to go over the emergency operations plan to use this facility since this is where we typically operate.
But yes, we, you know, we, we can modify, however, y'all see fit, especially for future purposes. This set of rules and procedures, like Madam Chair stated, was, it is basically verbatim. The only changes that I added, if you look at... I'm gonna give you the page number. I should have put some pocketed on gears on it. Uh, let's see. The public comments portion. On page fifteen of sixteen, I added, there had been discussion about agenda-only comments and other comments. That's gonna be, uh, numbers two and three underneath rule thirty-six on page fifteen. That had been discussed, so I added that in there, draft form. And there was discussion of... In closed session, no electronic devices, so I added that. And then there was one more thing, um, page eight of sixteen, a second required, motion shall require a second in order for it to be discussed, and that's not necessarily stating that you agree with the motion, but this is just the, the allowance of discussion for the item.
So let's, let's take note of that too. So under existing rules, I would require, so I made four motions this year that didn't get moved on without a second, because no second was done, but in fact, there's no requirement for that. I've heard in our previous meetings.
Um, if it's not listed in the rules, it does defer to Roberts.
It doesn't say that in our rules. It needs to specifically say that.
That's what we're trying to correct right now, because we're trying to work, round up to rework all the things that have not been correctly listed as, as to date. So we're trying to bring everything modernized a little bit based on current day's meetings, and also make sure all things are included.
So this, this came forward because you chose to go and engage the county manager or the legal or whoever.
Because I was talking to people with UNC School of Government and NCC, and they both highly advised that we revise everything to bring it up to date and make sure that we reflect the board.
But the board itself didn't vote on this as an agenda item or action, so.
Not yet.
Well, I think it was discussed after your training in January.
Yes.
Because there was discussion about the change in the public comment, doing it.
There was.
As long before.
There was a little discussion about us revisiting and rewriting our rules.
It has to be updated in order to include, amend those changes, so we still need to look at the whole.
I would have agreed to this, but it just seems like very much somebody went off and decided to do this on their own without a consensus of the board discussion to.
We had, that's what this was for, was the work session, was to start a starting base of this, bring in the changes that we have already discussed, and then have a work session to go through it together. That was the purpose of this, not to do it on our own. So we've gone through based on.
You're not hearing what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is somebody took it on themselves to go and say, we're gonna rewrite the rules off, and talk to the board, and get a consensus vote from the board, to say that where, where we're at. I'm just wanting to point out the nuances of how we're doing, we're kind of doing this kind of thing. And I'm, I'm just wanna make sure for the record that this wasn't based upon a consensus request or anything from the board, that we engaged to revise the rules, ethics, et cetera, procedures of our board. I'm just noting that for the record.
Okay, well, for the record, we have discussed this, and as chair, I asked them to compile a work session so that we can work on it.
Okay, alright, so you as chair asked, and that's.
I as chair asked that they do that, so that we can move forward as a board and amend this together.
It, it does need to be updated. I don't know if you were able to go through the, the current one that's in place now.
Well, I'm gonna do it lots of times.
A lot of pieces, and it did, the flow wasn't very easy to read. So by compiling everything, and especially going by the rules suggested by School of Government, um, I definitely think it would be helpful currently and going forward for future boards. And as laws change, you know, think, think, different things can come up, so... I wanna say exactly.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, no, no.
The validity of need to do this, just how we got to doing this.
Yeah.
And so it's clearly initiated by the chairperson without the consensus vote of the group to go and engage in this. I just, for the record, that's what really happened.
Well, a consensus isn't normally a vote. A consensus is without objection.
Either one. It was neither a vote nor a consensus.
We had conversations about amending these, yes, we had many conversations about amending the.
Pull up the videos and show me, because we haven't, we have not.
We haven't mentioned about electronic devices being prohibited. We haven't mentioned about adding a second public comment period.
That's not the same thing as saying we choose to go and engage to rewrite the rules. But I'm not disagreeing, we need to do this. I'm just saying how we got here. It would be nice as a board if we made a decision by vote or consensus to go forward with this. I'm not arguing that we needed to do this. I'm just saying why we got to do it.
Alright, we have three of us here. Do we have consensus to move forward with working on the suggested rules of procedure for the Board of County Commissioners?
Oh, at this point, sure. I just said that. I'm trying to make the point of how this got on the agenda.
Well, then we're here, we're good.
Okay.
Let's move forward. Thanks. Appreciate your input.
There's several policies that I, that I, as clerk, need to implement going forward with appointed boards. Um, there's just several things that need to be updated.
You're only in the rationale of why. I'm not arguing with you why and how it's needed. I'm arguing about how we decided to do this. It's resolved.
But she's gonna leave, she's gonna leave conversation for a minute to walk us through this.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead Renee.
So we're, do y'all have any questions other than that?
Yeah, under page, um, page three of sixteen, under broadcasting and recording, I want to note that the way this is rewritten, we're effectively squelching visibility. We're going counter to the, uh, was it open view, um, of having all of our meetings videotaped? We no longer say that in this section under broadcasting, say people can, but we don't say we will or we must record our meetings.
There is verbiage somewhere about, uh, about the county recording. This is also for the press. This portion is for the press.
I couldn't find anything in here that says we will report and live broadcast in our meetings.
Okay, so let's, let's work through it. Let's work through it.
And that's also because a lot of counties still don't record at all, or livestream anything at all. Um, so that may not be in the suggested rules of procedure as she was going from a working draft. This isn't from what we had.
Yes, that is correct.
Many counties, and I, I was talking to several this past week, that they're like, we're not recording. Um, well, we are. We're livestreaming meetings and that type of thing. Work sessions are slightly different. Um.
So we want to add live recording and notating that, that's specific.
That's my preference. I'm just, I'm the one.
No, personally.
No, and we're.
My preference is that we continue to have it mandatory that we record and livestream our meetings.
Yeah, it probably just needs to be added as a, maybe a E, and the county will be.
Yeah.
And, and posted.
I would actually venture to, I mean, just to correct, I would say move that to an A and just push the others down a little, to put up as a priority that the county will do this. So you have a right to, but we will first kind of preface.
There are rules of them, um, and we're in a, notated A portion of mandatory live recording. And in the event that we meet at a place like this, on either a work session or at
Right.
the auditorium at the extension office. Um, I know we've been able to have the owl, the extension office has, you know, gotten that owl device.
I believe we should maybe report on one regardless of the situation or visibility.
How hard is it to have a, the county that has its own aisle where we can bring it with us wherever we go?
We have one, it's in the closed session room, but it is not mobile. I want to say the way that it was mounted.
Well, possibly the one the extension is where we could go.
Yeah, yeah.
The truth may be one that we have to.
Which if it would be working with extensions, like they are, they're another permanent family.
It's actually broadcast. I mean, it's really difficult to keep that wheel from spinning for folks that might be trying to watch live. It might be better to have it recorded and then available.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm more concerned about as far as, if we had something like that, then we can record it, and when we're gone, it could be, here's our meeting minutes from this, and post it on the internet, and this is available for whoever wants to watch it at any given time. Because, I mean, all of our citizens are, we're, we're all working, we're doing our thing, and we live our busy lives, and, but they still wanna know.
Right.
And even myself, you know, as I was kind of leading up and trying to get more involved and, and understanding, I went to the last three years of recordings to see what the, the board had kind of been working on, listening to those. And so that was nice to help YouTube where I was able to listen, yeah.
So in the event that we, we didn't do it live necessarily, a live recording, as long as the burgers is in there, that it's a, a video recording, is that sufficient?
I think we should try and stream it if we can. If there's problems, we're recording it at the same time.
Right.
And then go back and look at. I've done that. I've had one where it hiccups, and we got terrible reception in this area of the county.
Yeah.
So I mean, I get it, and I think that's what Nathan's point will take in, is that most people aren't gonna watch it. A few will try and watch it live, and then do go back and watch it the next day.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, I've got that noted. I'm still trying to look the older one.
How is it stated now as far as, uh, the debate procedures and?
It's vague as sin. That's why this is a good thing. It really is just a good thing. I, I ain't lying about that. I'm not working with the value of doing that, but it's vague the way it's created.
So it is pretty vague with the way it's current, currently is, is in our agreement pretty much, yeah.
I believe it references perceive, uh, as far as the parliament, parliament rules, we would follow Roberts. I don't think it goes into detail as far as each. Because Roberts is for, you know, uh, of the House or the Senate, right, right? We can kind of narrow things down a little bit as.
Taylor's, and that's where, right now, we, we really don't have any true rules of parliamentary of how we conduct our business. I mean, if, if I wanted to say something, I don't have to be truly recognized to say something. And because each one of our positions are equal as county commissioners, do we really wanna constrain ourselves to where we have to be recognized? Yes, we, we should conduct ourselves in a professional manner, right? But do we wanna be constrained where we have to be recognized by a chair to talk?
Well, if, if we're talking, honestly, I actually, I like that. I mean, I know I'm probably one that people are most concerned about, but at the same time, if the chair recognizes, and that's when you get to speak, and we set where you now have two minutes, if you truly do it like parliamentary procedure of Congress or Senator, anybody else, and say.
And I have the same mindset.
Commissioner, four seconds, you have two minutes, spill your two minutes, and then move on to the next one. You don't get a second time to talk again, me or Brian, get to keep repeating the same thing three different times. You get your one shot, somebody else gets their shot, you don't get another shot until everybody's had opportunity to speak.
And then the first speaker gets a chance at a rebuttal, and then you, and it's typical for.
Well, but that's not the way you, Roberts rules.
Well, that's, I, I, obviously, that's how a lot of smaller governments I've been to have, have done things. But, I mean, that's where, do we wanna go, just defer to Roberts rules, or do we wanna amend it to?
That's, that's.
No, I mean, what, what we have, that's what I'm saying, is, is it spelled out right here as far as the debate?
Yeah.
And, and it talks about that you're not allowed to bring the same point back again. It's like you make your point, and then after you make your point, there, there's a rebuttal.
Right.
And then you're, you can be recognized to, to say something different, but you can't keep repeating yourself.
Not the same thing, yes.
So, I mean, I'm, I just wanted to bring that up though, because it's, we're, it's, to me, it's, it's, it's more about, okay, what, what are we, our sound, how are we changing that, and are we okay with the change?
Right, yeah.
Right? And so, I'm just making that point, as far as right now, it's pretty loosey-goosey and, and, you know.
I really think, um, and this is just the way my brain works, I don't know if it'd be helpful for y'all, if we could start at the beginning and work through.
Sure.
That way we're not skipping anything.
Sure.
Kind of go point by point, because I would like to make sure we.
That's what I was doing. I was just gonna do everything else. I was kinda got there.
Just kind of a thing, does anybody have anything on the applicable, like rules, anything happening on forum, like that kind of thing? Just kind of go through, because I would like to make sure that we don't overlook something of importance. Um, so, and yeah, I'll ask that, anything with part one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything as far as in part one, that's any different from what we do, we're just formalizing what we do.
Alright, part two.
Well.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
The one thing I was gonna mention is closed sessions. So, I don't know how you feel about this, but closed sessions, we put this language in here. I suspect, or actually I suspect, I have strong belief that recently somebody participated in our closed session, they went out and talked to a lot of people about it.
Well, I know that happens, I was in front of the church about it.
There you go. So, from my perspective, we should point out in here something to the effect of instances where it's believed to be done.
That's fine.
Should be investigated.
Okay.
I think we should specifically call that out, because I know a particular individual went out and talked to all kinds of people, stirred trouble.
We can, we can get on there. Alright, so forum, no comments on that, that's pretty standard. Open meetings, um, remote participation in board meetings, no member, not physically present, we're good with that, right? For a board meeting, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Meetings open to the public, obviously that's pretty standard. Alright, so we're down in closed session. We're talking about the motion to enter closed session, we're good with the way that works. Um, basis for closed session, we have listed, goes our law, we don't really get a say in those.
Is that, is that a misspelling there, basis for closed session? Is that supposed to be basis? B-A-S-I-S?
Mibin cyba. Possibly, possibly.
Let's see.
B-A-S.
Good catch, good catch. No, it says bases, like the, the bases are covered, yeah. Basis would be the, I, I understand what you're saying. I guess it could be either, but it does have bases in both copies, the third and the, um, fourth, so that's intentional.
Yeah, I think it should be.
Alright, so are we doing all the closed session stuff?
Um, I'm sorry. No, we're going through the closed session, um, item by item here to add in the additional part.
Yeah, because I was, I was fine. I'm fine with the way the closed session comes.
Closed session participants, um, no person may attend any closed session unless invited by the majority of the burger board, okay? Motion to return, okay, electronic devices prohibited. So you're saying you want an item F about confidentiality of closed session?
Yes, I believe so.
And then all, all instances will be investigated to this force.
Okay.
And I think we need to be willing to, each of us be asked questions specifically, whoever the investigative person is. But I, I'd be willing to have him, yeah, interrogate me, if you're talking, what you said, did you share, I think that's my.
Oh, no, I agree. Like, I don't even talk to my husband about things, so.
My wife, even, she says, you can't even.
So, no, can't talk to you. Um, no, I, I agree completely, closed session is closed session confidentiality. Um, laws are in place for most of the conversations anyways, so, um, attorney-client privilege type deals.
Yep.
So how long do y'all want to be toward that?
Um. I think we need to look up a legal, a legal way of wording that, and present it with the final draft when we come to that. Would y'all, gentlemen, be okay with that?
I think I'd be okay.
Okay, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, I would imagine School of Government would have some suggestions.
I would reach out to those, I can make it airtight. Um, alright, moving into meeting minutes, minutes required for all meetings. Um, general accounts of closed session, sealing closed session records. Alright, any con, comments on these three?
Uh, yeah, the closed session recommends, it said, uh, about being released, it can be released by board or authorized administrative staff. Let's see, where's that at?
On page three.
Um, page three, yes.
Yeah, oh, let's see.
Uh, point D, I believe.
Maybe, let's see. Seal and tell, unsealed by order of the board, or if board delegates authority to unseal to one or more staff members. And according to the guidelines adopted by the board, the sealed minutes of general count of any closed sessions may be withheld from the public inspection so long as the public inspection wouldn't frustrate the purpose of the closed sessions. And I guess the question is, it says unsealed if, if board delegates the authority. So we're just saying like a majority vote, three of the five can say, yeah, we want to release it, or is this something that closed session is so, um, so critical that we wanna say only by unanimous vote of members present?
Um.
Well, that could be part of the policy that it refers to.
I think, we can, we can edit that to amend that, because, and this is talking about to staff members, like to unsealing.
Delegated. And no offense, Scott, there's an applicable thing.
If you want to say.
We would all say, yeah, let's do it.
If you want to say full consensus, I'm, I'm okay with amending that to consensus.
In fact, if y'all think about, for me pushing about the whole board election stuff, this is a case where, you know, even if I convince one more person, unless full consensus says release it, you, you, you end up frustrating my request. So this actually is counter to mine, but a good thing, it's really what we should do if we're really concerned about safeguarding closed, or word information, closed session information.
Um, but yeah, I would make it all, all.
Yeah.
All present members, yeah, because, you know.
Majority of our unanimous, or.
By attending members, or.
A hundred percent, whatever the terminology is, for all of them that are present.
Work on the wording.
So we're rule six, item D.
Yes.
Okay, we want.
If the board delegates the authority.
To unseal.
By unanimous vote of all members present.
Yes, okay.
Sounds like we should come back with some guidelines that will be adopted by the board for those closed session.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Matters, to define that.
Okay. Alright, any other comments on the closed session portion? We'll move down to the broadcasting and recording meetings. They did say at the A of the county will have the live recording, uh, enable video recording when not, um.
I think it should always be recorded.
And I, 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 I mean, can we put a third option of audio if video is not capable, video fails sometimes, at the very least, we have that, if an owl isn't working. Because if you put it in here, then we're just gonna cancel a meeting because an owl's not working.
Well, I mean, to me, if we're trying to be full disclosure, full public access of our terminology used.
Transparent?
Transparency, yeah. If we're shoot for a hundred percent transparency, then, yeah, if we're relying on one owl, nobody's tested it beforehand, hopefully.
No, I'm not saying.
But you weren't on Renee.
Things still fail. My computer failed me on this trip, and I use it every day, so.
I'm, I'm honest, I'm okay with, with a, uh, recording.
Uh, vi- video recording, a, a audio recording, I'm okay with it. It's preferred to have video, but in the instance that video is not available, in fact, audio is.
I mean, I'm just thinking technical glitches. If we lock ourselves in so airtight, there's no room for anything. I'm not saying you take advantage of saying it, I agree.
Somebody like myself, that's very schedule oriented.
I'm saying if something.
And I blocked, I knew that I had this meeting, so I blocked this day out of my schedule. For me to say, well, we'll just be tomorrow is impossible.
Right.
Yeah, I get that.
Hundred percent. So I was trying to say, shoot for live video every single time. In the event we have it here and it's just not working, we have an audio backup.
I don't like it, but, I mean, if it comes down to a vote, this is gonna be a reason for me to vote against the rules.
Okay.
But I, I do think the cost of a camera, even buying two cameras, one as a backup, and then, to me, the cost is pretty minimal to make sure we meet the transparency expectation.
And nobody's disputing that we should have the, the camera.
Right.
Should.
Just a backup, just in case, because technology fails sometimes.
Sure.
Um, even sometimes with our live streaming, we have issues where they, the live stream isn't wanting to work, like there are different issues. So I just want us to be cognizant of that and have a fallback in the instance it's needed. Okay. Anything else of the right to broadcast, advance notice, equipment placement, or alternate, alternative meeting sites? Okay. Give y'all a second. Um, and then we'll move into the organization of the board, and the organizational meeting, selection of chair and vice chair.
Isn't this very similar to what we do now?
Requirement to hold organizational meeting scheduling, yeah, just kind of walking through every step though.
It's just, I mean, it's, you know, you need a good job putting it all together as far as organizing, because you're wrong. When you read, and you read through it now, it's like a hodgepodge of shit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's your different fonts got me. I couldn't take all the different fonts.
Yeah. So, um, I'll just ask, yeah, with anything with, uh, rule eight, is there any commentary on any of those?
One thing I did, um, miss, vote by the shoulder of hands.
Yes.
I mean, to put that in there at some point, so we just.
So that, we're not quite to that part, right?
As we ever.
Um, cool. Okay, so term, rule nine, we'll move into, I mean, that's pretty standard. Um, rule ten, regular meetings, regular meeting schedule, um, third Wednesday of each month, except if the regular meeting is holiday, six p.m., all of that standard. Um, notice of regular meeting schedule. And I will ask, do we, is the Wednesdays at six o'clock work Friday, because we're gonna be looking at the calendar for next year soon, and I feel like we should probably look to adopt that in September than waiting for December, because I think the staff deserves the opportunity to plan vacations and such ahead of time.
And the board members too.
So, and the board members. So if we could schedule the next fiscal year, or the next calendar year, I'm sorry, of meetings in September at the latest October, I think that would be ideal for everybody. Do you agree?
Yeah, to me, I don't, I don't think we should change it. This is the whole public's accustomed to this time of day.
That's perfect, yep, just got it out there, perfect. That's perfect, yep, just got it out there, perfect.
There'll be some person saying, well, I always thought they met on Wednesday.
Right, no, hundred percent, um, notice of regular meeting schedule, and that's where the courthouse bulletin board sheet has highlighted, we wanna change that to what verbiage?
Post it at the county administration building.
County admin building, okay. And.
And we should probably put in parentheses, old courthouse, because historically.
Yeah.
The two hundred building on the opposite side of the street was the county admin, may even say, admin building on the.
So, include historic courthouse, you think, in parentheses, okay. Okay.
Alright, so I'm just gonna read a comment in here from this fourth edition, it says, the board does not have to post the regular meeting schedule on the courthouse bulletin board if it has been adopt, if it has adopted and coordinates designating a more appropriate or convenient location, so we, will we do that before we get these rules fully adopted, but it's just FYI, coordinates will need to be brought.
So, concerning posting of meetings.
Yes.
And in our modern society, kudos go to us getting in place a Facebook page, I love seeing the posts on there, to me, that's ninety percent of it now, this posting physically. If I'm in Core Peak and I don't have a business in Gatesville, I have to drive specifically all the way there to see it, if somebody tells me it's posted there, or else I have to make an appointment, drive thirty minutes. Every two days because forty hour notice, a meeting could be served.
Excuse me.
And I wouldn't know about it, so for me, I almost feel like if you're gonna post and say it has to be posted on the board, I'd say we also say it has to be posted on our social media.
I'm good with that.
I think that does.
I do post it on.
Well, I think you do, yeah.
He's just saying, put it in here.
That's a good thing, I think that's more important.
He just wants it written that, like, you know, yeah, it carries forward, yeah.
On social media.
Required by law and posted on the county admin building historic courthouse as well as our county government's social media page, okay.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree.
A lot of people have told me, cause you know that they really like that, and you'll see it, like Melanie Medina, who I talk to a lot, she, she reposts your suits and goes down.
Okay.
And she does it all the time, makes comments about that.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think the Facebook page has been amazing, like, as far as information.
Yep.
Perfect, so we'll flip over to the next side, we have, um, change to regular meeting schedule.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, and then we'll move down into special meetings.
Okay, special meetings, Scott's, I was hoping you'd be here, I was gonna ask this, cause again, I come across, I know it's belligerent, not trying to be, but here we're talking.
If you wanna give your own to be a part, you can wait for that.
Majority of members or county manager may call special meeting, and I'm looking for, and even maybe Warren can tell us this, what's a case where the county manager would call it and it wouldn't be you or commissioners making that decision? What would be a case where he would need to do it, because I think our old minutes don't, our old rules don't allow for that.
If it like, there's a catastrophic thing that happened, he knows about it, he doesn't need to waste time.
That's an emergency meeting, that's a little different.
Well, so.
Not, not special, in emergency meeting?
No, there's another section for special meetings, um.
This is special meetings, there's a separate one for emergency.
I mean, I personally don't see where it's going to be a thing, cause he's gonna communicate with at least whoever's chair, um, at the very least, whoever's chair, most likely with all commissioners, cause I feel like he does well articulating with everybody, and we do well talking amongst ourselves, um. But, I mean, is that.
But also too, we're, we're not, we're writing this not for, you know.
Ourselves, not for futures.
But, but the future.
Right.
So, you know.
Right.
Uh, yeah, the special meetings should be.
I, I think that should be chair or majority board members.
Okay.
Now, this, emergency, he absolutely should be emergency, no doubt about emergency stuff, he should be able to say, shit, it's hit the fan, come on guys.
That's great, and that's why we're doing this, so, yeah, that's great, um.
So, remove?
So, remove county manager for special meetings, cause he is gonna be in communication with, at the very least, the chair.
Well, if he calls you up and he's got a halfway somewhere, and you say, yeah, let's have a meeting, or if you're not available, he calls me and, and Brian and, or, Brian and, and Nathan or whoever, he's gonna get a quick yes.
Right, right, no, hundred percent, just, yeah. Um, notice to the public, that's, that's law, there's nothing we can do there, so again, just the same words that we used, our first that we put in for letter B, move over to replace county courthouse bulletin board there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Alright, um, notice to members, which is this sunshine list, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, um, transacting other business unless all members are present, any absent member has signed over to waiver of notice, only those items specified would be taken up as a meeting, I feel like we're pretty decent at that. Hello, hello?
Hello, sir. How you doing? Here's a haircut.
Of what was sent.
So. I'll say, we are on page five, starting at rule twelve with emergency meetings. And I'll just say for the recording that, um, cause we did not do this at the beginning, um, Commissioner Truman, Berryman, Forsyth, and Roundtree are now present, um, Commissioner Craddock will be arriving later, we have the assistant county manager, uh, Warren Perry, county manager Scott Sauer, clerk to the board Renee Draper, should've done that at the beginning, so.
It's okay.
In the, uh, call or emergency meeting, we need to add the county manager.
Right.
Yes.
That seems almost something for a pack.
So it just maybe got put in the wrong place, yeah, so calling emergency meetings, the chair, majority of the board's members or county manager. Um, may call an emergency meeting to address, yep, okay. Alright, notice of emergency meetings, again, that's pretty much by law, um, not much to change there, transaction of other business prohibited, which should be understanding, can't talk about anything except what is pertinent to the emergency. Recessed meetings, we are now on page six, um, calling recessed meetings. Special meeting and time delays, motion, motion, state of time, alright, and notice of recessed meetings, so those are pretty standard, I think, did y'all have anything to input?
So, when you do go to do these, watching, uh, I guess some counties up north where they've had some crap at the fan, and they're going to do this, and they're trying to say, when will we meet again, they're trying to talk, it gets so loud, it's hard to do. Then, I guess the question is, if you go to do recess, and we recently had a meeting that was kinda romantic, it's not terribly so, but kinda, but if it got so bad, could we not somehow allow that the chairman would say?
If you would like that.
You state it seven days, because if the crowd's getting wholly unruly and screaming and hollering out like fools, it'd be nice if the chairman just says, hey, a week from tonight or whatever.
Yeah.
We'll reconvene.
Yeah.
Because you can state that for the record without having to have a discussion.
Name, the time, place, and location.
And I mean, could we has, as a default, in the event of an unruly situation, say seven days, like, the following week at the same time?
Right.
Like, could we have that written in, if there?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I would be okay with that, if you two.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. And again, this is all just to be put in for a final draft to be approved at a later date, this is not being approved today.
Right.
Okay. Just kinda putting clauses throughout as we go. So, limited authority to meet outside the county, there are times, like, when we've talked about touring COA, different things like that, where, um, you do have authority to meet outside the county, um, but there are certain parameters that have to be in place for that. Um, convention, like we just went to, association meetings, that type thing, um. We don't have any comments on those, we'll move down into the agenda.
So, the way this language is, is different than like Onslow County, you can talk to them, they actually have an agenda discussion phone call, the week before their meeting or whatever, discussing, consult, and some other counties that they didn't, I don't know if you remember that, we were training on. And I guess my question is, why?
So.
County, they county have like a major meeting.
So, once I talked to, they have like an agenda setting meeting, some of them, some of them have a phone call, some of them have the chair and vice chair that meet with the staff once a week before, like, the week before the time, different counties do different things, so it's just kinda seeing what is the best fit for us then.
So, the, the way this is written in is anybody, any of us can't shoot an agenda item to Renee, it's on the agenda, drafted agenda for discussion at the opening of the meeting. That's the way I read this. Any board may have an item placed on the agenda, it received at least five workdays before the meeting and provide any supporting documentation with request.
Yeah, do we need to change that?
No, I'm okay with that, that's actually a little different than what we've talked about, but I'm okay with that.
And I don't know that that was in the previous either, I think this is being adopted going forward, so, um, and that would be the key, and, and at least five workdays before, it would be phenomenal to get away from amending the agenda as often as we do at the beginning of meetings. That also allows all of us five to be on the same page essentially, um, with where we're at, rather than going into the meeting unprepared, so, um, alright, supplemental information materials, we have that, that's pretty standard, I think, but. Adoption of the agenda, pay special attention to item three, cause that is highlighted, um.
Um, let's see. I had highlighted that. For, any time. Okay, the agenda. For an emergency meeting is confined by subparagraph B two, to business connected with the emergency, I think I highlighted that just because, um. For discussion and possible action, I guess they should have, uh, the discussion and possible action, the discussion, since the board intends to discuss items.
Oh, is this just to notify the public that there may be action on that that evening instead of just discussion?
Yes.
That's just a transparency typing?
Yeah, and it's just something that was not in the other one, so I wanted to bring it to.
Cause some things are conversation only and don't really require a vote, okay.
Right.
And this says may, it doesn't say we have to say, yeah.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm good with that, um, we have consent agenda and a formal discussion of agenda items.
Now, it talks about under consent agenda, it does talk about, um, let's see, prior to the board's adoption of the meeting, request of any member to have an item removed from the consent agenda to unfinished business must be honored by the board. Unfinished business is confusing to me, does that mean just old business, regular business?
Remember that time you had asked to remove the consent of minutes, something like that, that needed to be tabled for further discussion or?
That's a good thing to like for meeting minutes, if I had minor changes, and we were gonna do the meeting minutes by consent agenda, but I see, oh, there's a couple little changes, this basically takes it off the table till the whole next month, and I guess what I'm wondering is, is it more likely that if you can make minor changes, say, I'd like to request this change be made, and.
And so we adopt the consent agenda with the amendment.
Right.
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 This, the way this works, it almost feels like anytime you say something you wanna modify, it moves, pops out, and it goes on to the next.
So you wanna be able to still say, oh, I just want this word changed to this word, let's adopt it the amendment.
That's a wording change.
Right.
And as long as we have consensus that it wouldn't be a case where we're pulling this out, cause somebody else said, well, I can't see the meeting minutes, and I haven't seen them.
Right.
So that would allow us to go ahead and finish them, and again, if I consent vote, if everybody says, no, Dave, we don't like your word, and we don't agree that's what happened.
No, I, I don't disagree, I mean, that'll save paper too, then we don't have to print the minutes again the next few.
Exactly, but, but really, what does that terminology, unfinished business mean, really, does that mean?
Alright, prior to the board's adoption of, I'm gonna read the sentence out loud because it's not there, prior to the board's adoption of the meeting agenda, the request of any member to have an item moved from the consent agenda to unfinished business must be honored by the board. I feel like that would be moved from consent agenda to new or old business, facing, meaning it needs further discussion rather than just passing out consent. Agenda to.
Last item on our new business.
We can put from the consent agenda to new or old business, because it could be either, okay, new or old business must be honored by the board, okay. Awesome. So, moving then, um, down, acting by reference to agenda or other document. And then agenda items from members to the public.
Get a font that seems obvious, that Renee, number sixteen.
The font?
The font for the, the text there looks different for some reason. This is me.
I think it's how it printed, I think it's a little lighter maybe, yeah. I can see what you're saying, but I think.
Printer was going.
Oh, yeah. I do see what you're saying, yeah, but I think it's, I think it's just the printing tone, um. Let's see, the board's on, let me just, yep, I like that, alright, so role of the presiding officer, moving down, um. Presiding officer voting by the chair, um, the chair has same duty to vote as other members, um. Though in no event may the chair break a tie on a motion on which he or she has already voted, I think that's, should be common knowledge, but.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand, it's like, okay, so you've already voted, so.
So, chair gets too much.
My guess is that it is, someone has tried to do it before, if they put it in.
I think there are some units that their rules.
Oh, I saw that.
Of the chair doesn't vote, so basically, yeah, just like, uh, towns.
There are some where, yeah, they, they have the chair sits back, does not vote, and if it's a two-two, then the chair would have to make the tie vote.
They have some more, I think, municipal coming too.
Yes, correct, for the layer.
Because actually, per ethics, um, that I just took, all commissioners have a duty to vote regardless of anything, so unless there is a, a reason to be recused.
Yeah, a duty, but by law, they don't have to, unless we change it.
But they don't say anything, it's a yes vote.
Yeah.
We'll get into all that.
Okay, sorry.
They brought that up in the same office class I went to.
Recognition of members and powers of presiding officer, any comments on the, or appeals to procedural rulings, any comments on those three areas?
The, the only thing, the recognition of members and the vote, which I said before, I think it's a good idea, but we should put a time constraint on, on that.
So, okay, um. A member must.
For equality sake, it'd be the same for everybody, unless the group votes to say, hey, we're gonna allow this to be five minute discussions each or something, I guess what I'd say is, is you put something like two minutes.
Upon recognition, each member shall have two minutes to state their.
Unless, unless the town is, uh, if I voted the majority or whatever.
Okay. We're trying to get some shorter meetings here, aren't we, it's cutting us down.
Y'all always say, I'm the one that goes on, so.
I don't ever find meetings.
Yeah, I see.
Um, okay, so moving down then, um, presiding officer in the chair's absence, the vice chair, um, in any event, both are absent, the members may choose a temporary chair among themselves. That's pretty standard.
It's fine, but we won't have a forum if that happens.
Yeah, you can, there's only two of us. You three can absolutely have a meeting. Um, when the presiding officer is active in debate, if the chair becomes active in debate on a particular issue, yes, so if I got incredibly heated or passionate about an issue, Jonathan can take the gallant. That's essentially what that means, um, which I think is a good, good thing to have in place, because I can be a passionate person, so.
So, but now, this, this, that would be a point of order, I think, that somebody would have to intervene, right, say, hey, point of order, I think the chairman needs to disengage.
We'll leave it there.
Yeah, I know, I'm just putting that out, that it's not like somebody's just gonna go and do that.
No, no, I know, yeah, yeah, but, um, alright, so moving down, motions and voting, action of the board second required, um. One motion at a time, withdrawal of motion, anything on those? No, pretty standard, okay, moving down to rule twenty-five, debate, uh, this will also kinda be where it is a two minute can time constraint if we're gonna do it as far as.
I think so, yeah, I do, I think so.
That carries to this.
Unless otherwise.
Agreed on.
Agreed on by the, by the.
By the board, okay.
So, same verbiage.
Same verbiage, yeah, so include that there.
Should I just do that as like a, a number four bullet?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, adoption by majority vote, changing a vote. Those are, a member may change it to her vote of motion at any time before the presiding officer announces whether the motion is passed or failed. Goodness, okay, um, so is this where we're gonna have in the, um, voting by hand, show of hands?
So, is there, in our section here, it talks about a written ballot?
There is.
There, there's, you, you can have a written ballot, it doesn't say that that's how we wanna do it.
I know, but my point being is, it almost seems those are difficult, ones like, it's almost like a record, you want a visual record of it, and if you have a written vote, it's, it's almost like you don't need one, everybody's held their hand.
If we have our hands up, one, on a recorded video.
You got a camera, that's your record.
And she's gonna have it documented in the minutes, so, um, I agree, um.
We can pull it, we can, it, just not to be, you know, so it's redundant as far as reading.
Or in case the wifi just goes out.
That's something that might be the case, or we would say have a written ballot for.
Okay, voting by written ballot, in that we have no electricity. However you wanna word that, I mean, I would, that could be a backup, kinda like the audio would be a backup, as a option to have.
Trying to see what it makes sense for.
Alright, so anything, is there anything else that needs to be brought up before the voting by written ballot portion? Are we all good?
We're due on rule twenty-seven though, right? We're due on rule twenty-seven though, right?
We're, we're down on rule twenty-nine. We're on twenty-nine.
Well, the.
Moving into twenty-nine.
Duty to vote is where you would put the raising of the hands at.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, so twenty-eight would be under item E, would that be where we need to make a new item about voting by show of hands?
So, the only thing I was gonna say is the duty to vote thing, do we need to say that you can vote abstaining, that you're still voting, you're just saying, I'll go with the majority vote, because really, when you say abstaining, that's still a vote.
No, you're, you're saying that if you were abstaining, you're saying you were a yes vote.
What?
It doesn't matter if the majority at that point in time says no, it says whatever, you're a yes vote.
If, if.
It says if you choose to not vote, it's a yes vote.
That's right.
Yeah.
But abstaining is not choosing to not vote.
But it is, because you, there are very few parameters on which you can actually be excused or recused from a vote, and unless that, and it has to be done publicly before the board to be excused and recused.
You're gonna read Robert's rules, because extension is saying, I will go with the majority, okay? Not voting is saying, it's a yes. There's a difference, there's a nuanced difference is all I'm trying to get at. Cause I have abstained before, because I said, hey, I'll go with whatever the group says, I'll abstain. That's not the same as saying, I refuse to vote and I'm pissed off. Really, there's a nuanced difference there for this.
Alright, where does it need to be and how's it need to be worded?
All I was gonna say is, is an undue duty to vote saying, an abstention is considered a, is an act of vote, and it is.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, you're abstaining to vote, but you still.
But it's still a duty to vote, you're still voting.
You're voting, yeah, but you're basically saying that if there's, if there's three people there besides you, you're saying, I'm abstaining, whatever the three of them look at.
You're saying, you're saying instead of it being a yes vote, if I abstain, I'm going with majority, whether it be yes or no.
That's what an abstention vote is.
Yes, okay, I understand. My brain is trying to get there.
You gotta clarify it in, in here, so in the duty to vote, you need to highlight, if a board member chooses to abstain, their vote will go with the majority.
Alright, so under duty to vote.
It could be.
It could be, yes, that's what I'm saying, I would go with the majority.
If, if a, if a board member, like it says in here, if a board member decides not to vote, then it's a yes vote.
It's a yes. Exactly.
Right.
If you say, just say those, you can, you can just say that by definition, by definition, these rules, um, a refusal to vote is considered a yes vote, while an abstention is a vote with the majority. It's simple as that.
In either direction.
In either direction, yep.
So how does the subsection under A?
I think under A.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
Well, I.
I just wanna start abstaining to vote.
Okay, but no more than one member abstains.
No, if you have four members abstaining and then one person votes, they're the majority.
Yeah.
No, you have to have three for majority, sir. Okay, you have to have a quorum, no more than two members abstain.
They had this, they, just so you know, they had this discussion at the Republican convention, where they talked about Robert rules at like an hour-long session, and there was a guy that went through this in great detail, because I was like, I never knew that. And so he went in and he wrote this home. Yeah, yeah, it's really important, it's legal, you can be sued. If you abstain, you can be sued with a voting majority, if you refuse to vote, you can get a legal out. That was what the guy was, was teaching it. Anyway.
Alright then, that's all I can say.
So, clarification. If the member abstains.
Their vote goes with the majority vote, an either yes or no. Refusal to vote is a vote yes.
Yes, right. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, I like it.
But it, if it ends up being a tie vote, that's not the deciding.
Cause there won't be, then you have to vote.
Well, you have to bag it, it's, it's, it's like a hung jury, it's kinda like, yeah, we can't.
Well, not, yeah, you can't, but you can't have a, you can't have a tie vote, it has to be, so if, in a then, that there's a tie vote, abstaining vote must.
Must, must.
I agree that, you have to go on a record.
Must be a yes vote.
Must be.
If you're abstaining.
That's really, you're refusing, I like that, yeah, you're basically.
Then you've given up your right to.
Yeah.
Same just refusal to vote, especially with the tie, you're basically cowering out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
If it's legal, we need to check the school of government on that, make sure it's legal.
Yeah.
We will.
Yeah, if they come back and say, no, an abstention's a yes vote, then, well, alright.
Okay. Yeah, let's just double check that with school government, for sure, cause I.
Clear?
Yeah.
About that one more time.
If you would, when you, if you get like them to send you an email or something, share that with me, I will, I will send it back to the guys that did this ranking, if that were different.
If the member abstains, the vote goes with the majority, gay or day, but, obviously the refusal.
In, in the event of.
Is a affirmative, yes.
Instead of doing but, in the event of.
Okay.
A tie vote.
No, I was, I was.
He's still, she's still.
Talking in my head.
I hear you, yeah.
So the refusal obviously is an affirmative, yes.
Yes.
But.
In the event of.
In the event of the tie.
And it's more than.
I like, yeah, I like you, I like.
This would be the Gates County rule.
Alright, in the event of a tie, the affirmative voting member must.
The abstaining voting member.
Abstaining, yes.
Yes, yeah, the abstaining vote will be counted as a yes.
Okay.
I like that, it's a good one.
Alright, yes, as long as it's legal, we can put that into our final draft.
If we accept it as legal regardless of.
That way it doesn't have to go around through a round of votes.
Right.
At once, this is what it is, and if somebody decides they wanna abstain, and it's a tie, then that one.
In reality, if you abstain at the start, you think that it's a clear majority or something, you abstain, say, I'll just go with majority, turns out it's a majority, then, okay, you just vote yes, I think that's fair. I think that's fair, you basically cast the side.
Okay. Um, yeah, you getting blinded too?
Yeah, I opened it earlier.
Okay.
For some sunlight in here, but it was blinding.
Thank you. Alright, so moving down to voting by written ballot, we had talked about that some, um, and that's gonna be a fallback on technology. Right? Okay. I don't know how that needs to be worded, but that can be, I guess, worked out later, just basically it's a fallback. On the technology fails. And that is just for transparency to the public. Okay. Okay. Um, so moving down, I'll start substantive motions. May draw another motion is pending, yeah, but. Um, procedural motions. So certain motions allow priority motions. Motion one, two, three, all those, review this.
It doesn't say here, it already implies it, but that's the order of precedence, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I looked here and tried to read and see if it clearly said that, and I didn't see it clearly saying this is the order of precedence, but it seems like it is.
Yes, it is.
Alright, should we have any questions on any of that? Alright. We have no comments on motions, we can move into ordinances and contracts.
Alright, so I have this portion highlighted because I wanted to read the comment referenced in.
Yep.
This fourth edition, it states, under GS one fifty-three, eight forty-five, as explained more fully in rule thirty-four, and a comment thereto. The size of the majority necessary to approve a proposed ordinance may depend on whether the vote takes place on the date of introduction. The statute does not define date of introduction, and there are no court cases interpreting the term. In the absence of legislative and judicial guidance, county attorneys have offered various opinions about what constitutes the date of introduction. This rule gives the board three definitions to pick from, ranging from least to most restrictive. The more restrictive the approach, the more likely it is that an ordinance will survive a lawsuit claiming that the ordinance did not receive the requisite majority because of the board. Because the board misidentified the date of introduction. So there's different brackets, um, you know, you got the first bracket, the second bracket, and the third bracket, those are what they're speaking, referencing being. Um, the, the last one is more restrictive.
Right.
So I wanted to read that comment.
I feel, like, my personal opinion, as far as ordinances, the middle option is. The best option for that. But that's just my opinion. The board actually considers the proposed ordinance, so if it's just been mentioned here on, on the agenda, it's been brought up. But if we bring it back for discussion, or we engage on that date, actual discussion. Because it could be just a flyby, and this might try to go back to a year later and say, oh, well, it was on the agenda a year ago, and this, but I think when it actually engages true discussion would be the most reasonable point.
Yes.
Okay.
I think I understand what you're saying.
So under, so saying that the purposes of these rules, the date of introduction for a proposed ordinance is the date.
Yep.
Is the first date on which the board actually considers the proposed ordinance.
So basically.
Not discusses it, but, but discusses.
Somebody can have something on the agenda, and there's a brief discussion, but nobody's actually talking about moving forward with it, and we don't talk about it again for six months, but in six months, it comes back on the agenda, and we have actual discussion about moving forward with this. That would be the date.
But you're, in all likelihood, we're not gonna pass an ordinance first time, it's up, because it's not gonna be written, nobody's gonna be sitting there typing it out while we're in the middle of a meeting, so it's gonna be a follow-up meeting, so that first discussion point, it's not really possible to pass an ordinance right then, right? Is that what we're talking about?
What you described is, is accurate. Typically, an ordinance, not all ordinances have to be, uh, subject to a public hearing, but typically, there would be an advanced copy put out, uh, for the public to see, for the board to review. And, and it usually occurs after several discussions. You know, do we really need this animal control office ordinance, or do we really need this, uh, water conservation rate like they did when they amended that?
I would be okay with point two or three. Number one, I think it's far too, um. Far too loose, um. Either. When it's adopted and voted on, or it can refer back, defer back to the date that it began picking up in conversation, so I, I.
Conservative, yeah.
I would be okay with either, I think the first again is too, um. Too loose there. But what are y'all's opinions on that, like, as far as presenting in the final draft?
Yes, I agree, it should be the time in which the first looks in the discussion.
Conversation start, okay.
So, given the example, we had a meeting tonight, and she says, we really ought to have an ordinance for this, that's not the starting point really.
No, when it comes back and is being presented.
Comes back the next month and says, Scott's had a draft ordinance drafted, and we're saying, okay, here we're drafting this, we're gonna distribute this, let's make some changes, let's discuss it and all.
Yes, that's the first.
And we'll, we'll have a proposed final one available for the public to review before the next meeting.
Right. Does that?
I like option two.
Option two, okay.
Is that coming on unfinished business? I've heard that term.
Now. Okay.
Oh, I can decide, really, I guess it's old business, that's what I was.
Yeah. Alright, so I guess let's move down to adoption, amendment, and repeal of ordinances, um, form of proposed ordinances, adoption of ordinances is not subject to public hearing. Um, subject to public hearing, and amendment to and repeal of ordinances, so any comment on any of those? If y'all have moment, and if not, we'll move into the adoption of the budget ordinance, because this is probably where I wanna take it.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so when it comes to budget ordinance, what, um, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to y'all first, do y'all have any input comments?
Well, we follow the Budget and Fiscal Control Act, which requires that it be available, the budget has to be available for public inspection.
Right.
No less than ten days.
Right.
Uh, and, and we do that with not just a copy in the clerk's office, but on the website, a link from Facebook, we usually put a couple copies at the public library. And I think once you levy the tax rate, there's, there's no amending the tax levy unless there's some absolutely drastic circumstance.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. And I think more what I'm looking at is in the next section that I'll have to just comment, okay. Got a few more minutes, and then we'll take a break before moving along to comments. So moving into public hearing and public, uh, and comment periods. Public hearings, public hearing locations, does state they can hold public hearings anywhere within the county, um, notice of public hearings, the rules continuing, any comments on any of these? And if not, we will move along to the public comment periods in rule thirty-six. Which is on page fifteen of sixteen, so we're getting there, y'all. Alright, so moving into public comment period, um, there was discussion based on, I, I think, when Commissioner Forsythe and Craddock and myself and Mr. Sauer got to the ethics in January. Where we had heard from others talking about agenda-only comments at the beginning, um, all of their comments at the end, allowing a second comment period, which is when we began to move this into practice. Any comments on any of, of this information?
Yeah, I guess the problem with this is just for long meetings, that's my one concern, is a lot of people wanna get there and speak their mind, they don't wanna sit through a long meeting with a whole bunch of stuff to get to speak about something. And while I, I kind of agree that agenda-only comments is kinda good, the reality is, is that kinda squelches the ability of the public to get up and speak right away. We drag them out to nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night before they get a chance to speak. I, I think that squelches public input a lot.
Okay.
But that's one voice, I'm.
Right.
Not in the group, yeah. Which and.
Well, you can't really talk about the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
You could have a session where you say first of the agenda comments.
Right.
And then follow that up with this general public comments.
If there's time.
If you don't do that, then you run the risk of, uh, jumping public standing up and derailing the whole meeting.
Right. Which we recently had something like that go on, I mean, so, the point being is that if people have a right to speak. If you say agenda comments only, and somebody gets up there and starts to ride off the rail, somebody has to step in, the chairman, and say, hey, this is agenda-only comments.
Right. And once getting this in place, I'll have that stand on.
Right.
So, um.
And then, the second. Comment section at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
That is their opportunity.
To say what you need to say. Yeah, you have three minutes at the end with a limit of ten speakers, um. I will say, I, 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 not that I'm trying to have longer meetings, but in the event we have something that's on the agenda that is a hot topic. I don't know that I like the thirty-minute limit at the beginning with six, I feel like that should be a little bit longer. Cause it allows for ten speakers at the end, only six at the beginning.
And this was just me playing with numbers.
I.
I think you still leave the six, but you, you say adds can be changed at a discretion.
I, I would like that, yeah, to, to be, yeah, I, I think leave in discretion to have, to allow for more would be ideal.
We know something that needs to be discussed, we got a lot of speakers, we won't let the people have their time, then we can just say, okay, we wanna allow ten speakers, and your time has now been adjusted from three to five.
Right. Right. Hundred percent. Right. Okay, stuff like that, okay, yeah.
They saw how many people have signed up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're removing agenda-only comments.
No, we keep.
No, we're keeping that.
We're keeping the agenda-only comments.
And we're just gonna add to that section, um, basically to both, that, um, at the discretion of the board, the, um, comment period may be extended. Or shortened.
Yeah, or shortened.
If we have fifteen people trying to speak, and we wanna say, okay, you can, but you're gonna have two to three minutes versus five minutes.
Sure.
Yeah, we have discretion to change. But I would also add, and I don't know if this is me being a little picky. By full consensus of the board.
Yep.
I don't think that should be two or three of us saying it happens, I think everybody there needs to agree to the time constraint change.
Yeah.
Okay.
So instead of where I enforce, if the chair makes the timeline, there's majority vote reward that covers that, but.
Oh, well, I guess I've read down to number four, directly following, okay.
But I need to change it to full consensus, not maj, not majority.
Yeah, I think majority.
Yeah, majority.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it matter who first did?
That just doesn't wanna hear what they have to say, because that's the one it's against.
They're probably ones that need to hear the most.
Okay, that's fair. Alright. Alright, any other comments under comment periods, and if not, we will move down to appointments and appointed bodies on page sixteen. And miscellaneous, I'll just ask all of this one group if. And miscellaneous, I'll just ask all of this one group if there's any, any comments on this. Um, I will say there was a point brought up in the ethics classes past week talking about, um, commissioners can only be a part of, and I have notes and I will have to scroll through and look, it's been a lot of information this past week, but one other board in addition to this, like official board, I guess that they're on. And that we need to be providing the clerk at the beginning of each calendar year with a list of all of the boards that we are a part of, whether it's as a commissioner duty or an additional board that we're a part of, because there are guidelines on how many things you can serve on.
What if you sell a board that you've got non-disclosure agreements about?
Um, let's talk to Renee with the school of government about that, um, and see how we can handle that, because there are, there are several laws in place regarding the, the types of words, number of words, that type of things.
My, my, limited experience with non-disclosure groups doesn't say you can't say what you participate in, you just can't give any details out of it. No, I'm not allowed to say anything about the board at all, really.
Okay, um.
We can revisit that.
Yeah.
Tell the board, I didn't invite them on the board.
Okay, so, but if we can look into that, because there are, and I, I just learned this, that there were law limits based on how many, and, and it doesn't apply for like committees and that type thing, but there are laws just to certain boards that you can, the number of certain boards that you can be on at one time.
And ma'am chair, I know we're, you know, wanting to get to the next session, um, this is a good start. Um, I did want to point out though, so this might be a good stopping point for us, being that we're on the appoint, appointments and appointed boards right behind the code of ethics.
Yes.
Y'all will see a policy draft form of the appointments to county boards. This is something that we need to have in place.
Okay.
Um, and the highlight portion, just a quick note, the highlight portion about ordinance resolution or policy that created this is an advisory council or board or committee, whatever it is, whatever the name is, um, this is going to need to be completed for a majority of our boards.
Okay.
Just don't have anything on record, so to make sure that we're doing the right thing going forward, that's something to keep in mind for.
Perfect.
More reading and adoption.
Thank you. All right, well, I guess it would be per my agenda over here, appropriate for a five-minute break, and then we will move into the board of elections filing fee and constitutional officers, um, and Gates County EMS. Okay, so we have a recorder in the middle of the room, we'll bring it back together, um, to move into the next portion. Um, a resolution to set the register of deeds and sheriff's salary, um, just briefly, that is basically, um, going into an election, it's, by law, you have to, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to amend what the sheriff or registered deeds salary will be in the event an incumbent is not elected. And if it is not done so long before the election, then the current salary is what will be for the newly elected positions, is that correct?
I don't think you have to, I think this is an option for the board.
An option, it's an option to do it.
So that if a, a new person were to be elected, that individual wouldn't be coming in after you've had a, a person holding a position for twenty years and might get a higher, it was higher.
Isn't it also for, in case, uh, in event if something unfortunate was to happen and we had to have a interim, uh, appointee of one of those two, uh, positions, that they would also get that exact same salary?
I don't, I think ultimately that would be up to the board.
Yeah, because that.
But even with this being adopted, if somebody were to be elected that y'all felt warranted a different salary, you could adjust it. This really helps set the filing fee for those candidates.
Because that was something that they talked about when the breakout sections I went to, is that how it was important that we went ahead and adopted this because of those two reasons, of the, in case something was to happen, we had the interim person, that interim person would get that salary, as well as, um, you know, the, the incumbent was to lose election and then the, the new, uh, person was to come in. And they needed to pick up with all of where the income of, of that, instead of, you know, this is somebody a lot less experienced and then just roll, so they need to be brought back.
For example, your current chief deputy, um, if he's anywhere near that minimum or not.
Yeah.
But I think you do have some flexibility, but, but this is considered a prudent action to take to, 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 because I'm sure those questions come to the elections office.
If you haven't flipped back on the last page, page eight of nine of this section, there is, um, Gates County history with the salaries for sheriff's, um, current registered deeds.
I think if the board was inclined to take action, you could have made your agenda this evening.
Sure.
And add this item, plug it in the numbers to the draft that's before.
So we, we in agreement, the guidance added, did it done to do that for this evening?
I would, I would be, just go ahead and get it done.
Yes, I'm, I'm agreed, yeah, sure.
Just for that, I need a little reminder for.
Okay, come on in, if I can see, if you want work, just work it through it. All right, so the next item that we are going to is the Gates County EMS board, um. Right across from me. So I will hand that over to Stormy, uh, to us.
Problem specifically about those three trucks, is that? So towards the bottom of that page that I just gave you, um, shows you the fleet, and our board's concern is those three trucks that are over two hundred thousand miles. So we started transitioning to an all-gasoline fleet in two thousand and eighteen and finished that transition this year. So all of our fleet is now gasoline trucks versus diesel trucks. And it, it's such a new beast in the EMS world that nobody knows how long they're good for. A diesel truck, you could run it four hundred thousand miles and, and it'd still be running like it was brand new. Nobody really knows what the lifespan of a gasoline ambulance chassis is, because we were one of the first counties to start transitioning. So my board's concern is those three trucks, um, needing to be, at least the thought process of replacing them. The other concern is since COVID, ambulance manufacturers are now two years, so if I order it today, my earliest delivery date is two years from today. And most are, are further out than that. Um, Dare County has taken delivery of their twenty-twenty-two ambulances that they ordered right now, in the last month or two.
Yeah, and it also mentioned if the remounting has already happened once, so that cannot.
Right, so, so, yeah, everything on this list, with the exception of eighty-seven, eighty-one, has already been remounted one time. And that's, that's generally the standard. There's nothing that says we couldn't remount a truck, meaning move the box from the chassis it's on to a new chassis. But it would be completely at finding the vendor that's willing to do that. They'll, they'll always do it once, they don't necessarily always want to do it more than once, because that body starts to break down. And they don't want the liability of putting it on another chassis for another five or ten years, however long that life expectancy is. So that's a concerning factor, is we don't know that, that these three trucks that are up over the two hundred thousand are, are remountable again. And one of those, we would, it's, it was already a used truck and we bought it at, um, forty-nine sixteen. So when that truck goes away, it'll go away forever.
And I'll point out too, um, we have that EMS board meeting August eleventh, August twelfth, we had met, um, with Legislative Appreciation Day, had Congressman Davis, the representative board, in. And this was presented to them as critical need to see if there's any funding available at federal or state levels. Um, we have not heard anything from either one, obviously, yet, it's only been a few weeks, um, we will follow up with both of them and, and keep seeking out options and opportunities for that. But it is considered a critical need with the two-year delay for delivery. Um, I think I was just told Chauan waited almost three years for their deliveries that they're getting or have, are still expecting, I'm not sure what side of the fence they're on.
I'm not sure if they took delivery, but Dare is that way.
They're about three years out, yeah.
They're taking delivery of trucks they ordered three years ago right now.
Camden somehow got lucky, I wonder if it's because it's a new, a new thing, but they were able to get theirs out. However, every other county around us and across the country, they're struggling to get trucks in a timely fashion.
Yeah, Camden lucked into, somebody ordered trucks and they didn't want them, so Atlantic had them, and they actually purchased them before they even had an EMS agency, their county manager. They had approached somebody in Pasmatank County who knew Camden was getting ready to do this, and he took it to her. And she reached out to Atlantic and bought the trucks before they even said, we're, we're opening an EMS agency. So they, that's how they got their trucks. They just got their backup truck from Dare, when Dare replaced the truck, they sold the truck to, to Camden to give them their third, or their, their reserve unit.
What's the difference between, um, a ambulance that you use versus somebody who does like medical transports?
The biggest difference is the equipment, so a medical transport truck doesn't have to carry the drugs that we carry. And they don't, they don't want to carry as much equipment as we carry. They, they didn't get away with just an AED like is on the wall in the courthouse or in that box. Whereas we have to carry a, a full-blown cardiac monitor, so some of the equipment and medications that are on, on the truck.
But you can, you can use a vehicle like that and just, for what you need to do.
Right, most of the time, medical transport companies are buying ambulances from the agencies that are phasing them out.
That's why I was, I was asking that, because it happened to be that, uh, one of the customers, the chair and my wife has, is actually starting a medical transport business. And they, they bought a used, uh, ambulance. It was a, so a special place that kind of, they specialize in buying used ambulances from, um, municipalities. And they turn around and resell them, and they're reselling this particular ambulance, now it's not, I don't think it's a class four or supply, I think it's, you know, lower model, but they're selling it for, uh, she said it was like fifty thousand dollars, and they were buying this ambulance for and a half, um, seventy-five thousand miles on it. And, and so if, if it got to be a dire need, there.
There are options.
There are options, right. So basically, what we're just talking about here is how we plan this out and how we get there.
Right, and if I may, um, because it came up, because I, I was curious in the board meeting, asking like specific truck, that kind of thing like going off, um. We are very far from hospital.
Far.
Farther than most are from hospital, and I was asking about having different types of ambulances at a lower rate and kind of stuff, um. But the importance of having a box that is this thing, that is in the back for ease of care, if you have somebody that's working somebody in an emergent situation and they need to turn and they know here they're this, oh, but on this truck, they're way over there, and on this truck, they're way over there. It interferes with the level of care that you're able to get based on the, the accessibility of materials and, and things like that, um, which I thought was interesting to consider, because that wasn't something I had thought of until it was presented.
And then, isn't there a difference between classification of ambulance, selective, or.
There's four types of vehicles, and then there's also a different classification of who's on that truck. There's a paramedic-level ambulance, there's an AET-level ambulance, there's an EMT-level ambulance. Most transport companies are just EMTs, but then also there are four types of trucks. So a type one ambulance is on a pickup chassis, a type two is on a, on a van chassis, type three is what we have, it's on a cutaway van. And then type four are, are big, like on a tractor-trailer chassis, like a Freightliner, big semi chassis. So my guess is that is probably a type two ambulance for that price.
Yep.
So what, what, um, Commissioner Truman's talking about is, is we try to continue buying the same layout. So you can, you can walk into five different ambulances and everything be completely different based on how they built it. We try to stay with a standardized layout because of muscle memory. You learn, you're in that truck and you learn where things are, and then you all of a sudden get in a new truck, like if we were to have to buy an emergent out of sequence truck. You have that problem of now you've got to move things around, and, and when you're in the heat of the moment, you're going to where you think something is. So ideally, we try to stay with that same standard layout, and right now, all of our trucks are, are pretty close. One is a little bit different, but close enough that it's similar.
Have we tried to reach out and get any grants from the state or anything like that, or maybe FEMA or something, uh, to be able to, to purchase?
Because fire isn't in our name.
Okay.
We're not eligible for any FEMA grants that will buy ambulances.
Grants in general.
And most grants in general are the same way, like the, like the state has some fire rescue grants. We're, we're only eligible for a reduced portion because we don't, we're not a, a fire department, we're only an EMS agency. Um, we did do what we talked to, to Congressman Davis and, and the state legislature about last week. Is really the first time that we reached out to county manager and I, so I heard about Camden, they got a million dollars to buy an ambulance and some equipment. And so I, I reached out to county manager and he reached out to, um, Bill Ward about, is that, those funds still there? Um, because it was a pool of money that was set aside for EMS that, that wasn't publicly made, or wasn't made public necessarily. Got to hear about it through the grapevine, and I don't know if he ever, he said he would look into it, but I don't think we've ever heard anything back. But we have asked over, over the years, but there, it's very, very limited.
Are there any other EMS in state that's in conjunction with fire and rescue in that name? Based on what I'm saying, is it possible that you can incorporate fire in our name?
Sure. Wringing the fire teeth in the room and say that, and you might not get that. Currituck is the closest to us, they are fire and rescue, they, Currituck took a way different approach to public safety. Ten years ago, they started down the road, and four years ago, they actually staffed fire trucks. And so that, I mean, it's been a long time to get to where they are, um, to incorporate it. I think probably the next, I don't even know that there's anybody else that's running fire in EMS.
Not, it's, not at a county level, most of them, when there's.
Some, some big, big cities, but like even Raleigh, they're, they're independent, Wade EMS, does EMS, and Raleigh Fire does fire. So it's, they're very few and far between in North Carolina, unlike other states.
And you have to have a fire service district. Right now, we're district into the, the fire, volunteer fire department, so we have to read the district, the fire department.
Historically, what's been the county's participation in supporting the ambush acquisition?
So per, outright purchase of an ambulance, there hasn't been any participation since I've been involved. The, 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 where we are now is we're so far behind the salaries that a lot of operations money is pushed that way to keep staff. And that's what's, that's what's disrupted our fleet replacement. So since, if you look over the lifetime of the, of the appropriation that was covering the staffing model, it hasn't, we haven't kept up. So we've used operations money to keep up with that, and, and we're still a long ways behind the surrounding counties.
So I'd actually ask for more of the questions I was going to ask, and you may have to educate me a little bit on this as far as the structure and legalities as far as how the, uh, Gates County, uh, Rescue Squad is structured. So it's an LLC that says, uh, A one C three, right?
It's a five oh one C.
Five oh three, five oh one C three. So with rescue squads being your predominant largest, uh, expense as far as, um, So with rescue squads being your predominant largest, uh, expense as far as, um, uh, operating costs and those type of things like that, as you're depreciating the value of the fi, the ambulance that you have, did, did you take any of those depreciations and kind of put it on a balance sheet so that way you got cash on hand to be able to buy a new one when the time comes?
So it was, we were so far behind financially whenever I came on that the board has not, we haven't gotten to that, to that point.
Uh, so last year, the, the county gave, uh, the EMS nine hundred and some thousand dollars of operational money. Then, um, I think this year, our, our, uh, budget's a little over a million dollars.
Millions, I think.
Yeah, something like that. And so, um, other than that stream of income, what, what other stream of income is through EMS?
Billing.
As far as?
Billing for service.
Okay.
And, and so the model that we showed the commissioners in two thousand and eighteen was the appropriation covers the staff, and, and the revenue covers all of the rest of the operation.
Gotcha. What, a percentage of that was from the county's portion to what, uh, you, you've been able to independently raise the revenue? What's the percentage of that?
It, for the longest time, it was about fifty. It's, last year, we actually had an increase from nine seventy-four to a million fifty-nine thousand. And that, that pushed the appropriation a little bit above what the revenue is. But the revenue fluctuates based on call volume and, and type of insurance that, that the person, that the patients have. But we're, it's pretty close to, to fifty.
Is, is the, um, is the LLC capable of getting a loan?
We have two, two of those people are financing now.
How much is left on those as far as the financing of it?
Both are under a hundred thousand.
Would, would it be possible to pay those off and then use those, that money allocated that, for the repayment of that to go purchase two more?
That's, that's the direction that we're headed in right now, if, if we don't find some other source of fin, of funding.
And, and I'm just spitballing, throwing things on there. So if the county would give, let's just say, two hundred thousand dollars to pay the sales off, you can then turn, take, take those, finance, and then finance two more. I'll get there eventually.
Is there any other questions to comment?
Yeah, I, I got some. So when you said, as long as you've been here, how long have you been doing this?
So I've been involved with the organization since two thousand and five. I became the chief in two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand and fourteen, okay. Um, on the sheet here, lots of information. It says, you know, five ambulance, it says two QRBs. What's a QRB?
Quick response vehicle. So it's a car.
Car, okay. And then under your, I guess some of the stuff here is assumptions, it talks about, per staffing model has only two trucks covering a county of our size. We continue planning towards a three-point-five truck model. So, uh, just trying to make sure I understand, so we have five ambulances, but we only function, only operate the two of them at a given time, okay? Because I had a comment made this morning, actually, where they saw me talking to the guys.
I heard you.
And one of the comments, the guy was blasting, was about this very issue, and he's like, how the hell did they not come and help me when my eye, I got my eye poked out by my wife? Nobody could respond. Her county didn't respond. He says, and they got five ambulances sitting up there and they couldn't respond? They tell me nobody was able to come help me? Literally, that's what the guy said. He went on. I listened to it for quite a while. It was, it was a little entertaining at one point, but, um, that's, the question really is, is so of the five vehicles, only operate two times, does that mean the others are more or less backups? Do you try to cycle them, I guess?
So we do. So we, we try to keep that mileage spread across to all five of them.
Right, right. And that way, it gives you time to do maintenance too. If you have, if you have a sudden catastrophic failure, you have a backup.
And the way we're staffed, right now, we could flex to four trucks immediately. If something hurt, happens, I'm certified, the WT's certified, and our admin staff are all EMTs. So if something catastrophic were to happen right this second, we're going to go get on ambulances in. So we can flex from the two that are staffed to, to four.
But that's nine to five, not twenty-four seven, right?
That's weekdays while we're at, while we're there. That two truck is a contract that we agreed on with the commissioners in two thousand and eighteen to, to staff two. Prior to that, we, there was one truck staff.
All right. The other question, you talked about, um, salary comparisons to neighboring counties. Remember, I was asking about this a few months ago. We talked about it. Did we have something that documents the comparison between the other, the neighboring counties with, as you go, something that we could actually see?
I can show, we actually, so we, all of northeastern North Carolina, we're in, we're, have an association, and we share that with each other, and I can.
That'd be worth bucks.
We're in the process now of updating it because everybody just got their, their raises. I can give you last year's and I can, as soon as this year's is done.
So for salary regulations and gas, who, what do y'all follow? Do y'all are considered county employees, right? So overtime's possible, these, et cetera, people can.
So we, we, EMS is a forty-hour work week. So anything beyond forty hours is overtime. So the way our shifts work, our full-timers get eight hours of overtime every week, except for every fourth week. So they work two twenty-four-hour shifts. So they're getting eight hours, eight hours, eight hours, and that fourth week, they only work Wednesday. And so they, it falls back to twenty-four for that. That's how, how the rotation works.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see as far as how we compare with other counties' runs. Um, Dave always comes up with the, the sweep file.
Right. I like that under reading.
Yeah, kind of come, come up with that.
I changed my way of thanking him once. I listened to that.
Yeah.
The catastrophic instances that you referred to earlier, you say you flex, what's the first option, flexing or do you support from, let's say, Chouan or?
So if it was tonight after six PM and all the administrative staff were gone, that's, that's what would happen, is they're going to call mutual aid?
Mutual aid, depending on where it is in the county, would be determined on who we called for.
So our mutual aid partners are everybody that touch us, including the city of Suffolk.
I just want to ask, did you have just, with Carolina, I assume Hartford and then Chouan and then City of Suffolk, is there any more?
Pasquotank in for Clemens.
Really?
So we touch Pasquotank in the swamp. Until, until Camden split, they had Camden, and so we really touched them. When Camden split, it made it complicated because we touched Pasquotank on the road, but Camden's ambulance is closer to us. So we're in the process of working that out with the communication centers right now to dispatch the closest appropriate ambulance. But we have agreements with all of them, including Suffolk. As a matter of fact, tomorrow night, we have a meeting with the chiefs from Suffolk here to discuss mutual aid and, and op, operational capability so that we can understand each other and work. But Hartford, for instance, they're, they're understaffed, so they are hard to ever respond. Suffolk is, they're overstaffed, so they're, you, they're typically, they're going to come. Most of the time, the answer's going to be yes, unless there's something happening in a way.
So I should tell you, talking to the guys, I've talked to this morning and previous discussions, uniformly, every single one of these guys this morning, it's like five or six of them, they're talking. Another morning, it's some of the same guys. They all say, "I don't want to be carried to a hospital," period. And, and this morning, they, they came up and it's like, you don't have a choice. These guys have to, they're carrying you to the nearest hospital. And one of them said, "I'll get in my car and drive." Just that wild.
All right, so.
For instance, Suffolk, if they come, they have to go back to Virginia. They cannot go anywhere else. By, by law, they're Nor, they're Virginia providers. So one end of their trip has to happen in Virginia. So if they pick a patient up here and they don't go back to, to a Virginia hospital, they're in violation of their, their credentials.
All right, so we, um, based on time, are going to have to move to the personnel policy. But I think that that was a pretty good briefing on where we're at and what is needed, um, going forward with that. So I am, let's see if I can find it in here. So, yeah, so we have invited the department heads in to be a part of the personnel policy conversation. Um, and I can let Mr. Perry, uh, pass.
Is there a hand to tell the other?
Yeah, it's coming. All right, so very quickly though, while this is happening, um, just because this is an audio recording, not a video recording, if we could go around, um, start with Mr. Tuttwaller, just kind of circle around the room, just state your name and which department you oversee so that it will be recorded for the audio purposes.
William Tuttwaller, emergency management department.
Kristi Bowden, payroll and budgets.
Lisa Cherry, planning and inspections.
Taylor Powell, tax office.
Candy Gordon, registered leads.
Teresa Lassman, transportation.
Kristi Gaskins, elections.
Willie R. Smith the third, social services.
Norris Rady, community center.
Scory Buzk, Gates County Rescue EMS.
Ray Campbell, sheriff.
Agent Barrett, county commissioner.
Dave Forsythe, county commissioner.
Running for round trip, county commissioner.
William Robertson, finance department.
Scott Pierce, information development.
Kristen Phillips, student through Brown County.
Helen Newell, cooperative extension.
Scott Sauer, county manager.
Emily Shrimbin, county commissioner.
Warren Perry, assistant county manager.
Matt Lowe, soil order district.
Ashley Green, soil and water district.
Ray Arnold, voting unit.
I also have the name right.
I was going to say, and we have our clerk, our clerk of, clerk of the board for the name right there. All right, so we're going to turn it over to Mr. Perry.
All right. So, uh, thank you for coming today to the first, uh, hour work session to talk about a new personnel policy. Um, a lot of the changes we're looking to make is, we're looking at how we're doing it today and then what kind of changes are going to take place. And, uh, of course, nothing that we're talking about here has been approved. This is just a suggestion. Um, and so, uh, I kind of looked at some low-hanging fruit, some things that we're currently doing, we don't have a policy for. Uh, firstly, I wanted to go over is a probationary period of employment. So apparently, uh, we do have a probationary period. I have the current, uh, probationary period listed there. Uh, some of the problems with our current policy is we will wait after six months to do an evaluation. And so what I'm trying to push forward is the revision is we would, uh, start, uh, doing this at the five-month period. So when the six months gets here, we're already having evaluation done. And so if we need to, uh, cut ties with the individual, we can do so before six months is out. So, um, I'm going to go, uh, looking at the third paragraph on the revision. An important purpose of the probationary period is to provide an opportunity for the appointee to adjust to, to the new job. Likewise, it serves as a trial period during which the employee demonstrates his or her ability to perform the work, to demonstrate good work habits and to work well with the public and coworkers. Before the end of probationary period, the supervisor shall conduct, um, the employee evaluation, discuss areas for improvement. Lastly, uh, the supervisor shall recommend in writing whether the probationary period should be completed, extended, or employee transferred, demoted, or dismissed. Uh, with the approval of the county manager, probationary periods may be extended for three months with the possibility of one more three-month extension for a maximum of six additional months. And the maximum probationary period for department heads is eighteen months, and for other county employees, it's twelve months. So any questions about the proposal for the new one?
Just a, just a question, if, if review is required there? Yeah, so literally, they can wait till somebody's thinking they're in good shape and last together six-month period, you call them and give reviews and you're gone.
That's right, that's right. And that's why, you know, these things have got to be done.
I, I was almost wondering, should you do it at least a month or two in advance? I mean, I'm just, not saying put it right in here, but just good common sense for me. I've talked to them long beforehand, so they probably got a good idea. They first started.
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah, yeah, well, I guess. It should be noted out in employees' mind whether they're doing good or bad.
Yeah, exactly.
That's six-month period.
That's right. Some people think you're doing good no matter what's going on, so you can't even tell them that, so, yeah.
Will you say, can you tell employees that they're doing bad because they always think they're right?
I, I, yeah, I like that right now.
All right. Any questions about the probationary period? Okay. Like you said, some of this is low-hanging fruit, but I do want to make sure the changes are made. Um, outside of secondary employment, uh, the current ordinance is, is listed there. Um, some of the conflict with outside employment, uh, for the re-proposal is listed below as an A and B. Employment with organizations or incapacities, and this is examples of conflicts of interest in outside employment include, or are not limited to, employment with organizations or incapacities that are regulated by the employee or employees' department, or employment with organizations or incapacities that negatively impact the employee's perceived integrity, neutrality, or reputation related to the performance of the employee's county duties. Lastly, this is, wasn't in the last one, but on the job injuries. An employee who sustains an injury or illness in connection with outside employment and is receiving workers' compensation from that employer will not be eligible to use accrued sick leave. All right, and, uh, any questions on that?
So is it any different for department heads versus just from regular, normal employees?
It's not, every, everything's the same for, for all.
I guess my only concern is, is that, I think it's good sometimes people, department heads or something, they have an auxiliary adjunct teaching position or something like that, or even like the case of, you know, our utilities, our work department head, you know, he might be a operator for a smaller community nearby. I think that's a good thing, but the problem is, is almost for certain level of people, is not worthwhile to document that. Is, is there a requirement for them to document it with the county, with the manager or, or the staff?
And that's what, uh, in the policy, the legal, it has to be approved by the county manager if they're doing dual employment.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I didn't read. It's, it's, it does, sorry.
I'm having them. Oh, okay.
So all dual employment has to be approved by the county manager or his, his designated, which I'll add. All right. So the next one, um, is on-call and callback policy. So currently, uh, the ordinance does not address the on-call or callback policy. Not to say we don't have one, it's just not documented. I think Brad, I know you use one, and maybe sometimes, um, grants and building and grants, you may use one occasionally, but, um, and Willie uses one, and we kind of communicated, uh, we kind of want to be parallel. We're not exactly parallel, I think, Willie, but we're close. Uh, so on-call, um, is town consists of scheduled non-work hours in excess of the standard work period when an employee is required to be available to be called back to work. On an emergency basis, they must respond within a reasonable period of time and must be sober and able to work. On-call standby schedules must be approved by the county manager. The HR department shall maintain a list of employees to approve for on-call compensation arrangements. The employee is required by FLSA to be compensated for on-time call, on-call time. If he or she must near, must remain near an established telephone, otherwise must substantially restrict personal activities in order to be ready to respond when called. Employees in this status will receive an on-call premium at the rate of one hour per on-call weekday, twenty-four-hour period, and two hours for each, uh, Saturday, Sunday, or holiday, twenty-four-hour period. Um, so Monday through Friday is one hour per day, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, two hours per day. Employees will not be paid the hours earned while on-call, rather than hours will be added to the employee's comp time to be taken at a late time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think this should just pay their, pay their.
Yeah, they need to be, they, they need to be paid out rather than compensated for a possible time off.
Well, I thought, and maybe it's different for municipalities and counties and all that kind of stuff. I thought the laws in North Carolina is that if you take comp time, you have to use it that week that you take the comp time.
I'm not sure.
I can assure you that is very difficult to do from the, I'm sorry, from our commissioner. The social services side for my social workers, when it's four social workers and supervisor, and they're all on-call once for, every week, once a week, and then they're gonna accrue comp time no matter how you split it, they get a call after hours. And so, for instance, my, Kristi can attest to this, when she sends me that leave balance, when I see comp time and all that stuff, we've done a lot better with that, thank God. But a lot of times, my supervisors, especially in social work, will accrue a ton of time, and they don't have time to take it off. You know, they have to work with me, hey, I want to take some vacation time, and I have to make sure I'm not taking time off because someone then in turn has to approve second party intakes when they come in. There's only two people who are allowed to do that, which is the supervisor and myself. So it makes it very difficult, you know, to comply with that. You have to use it within that.
No, one hundred percent.
I know it's state law, you have to do it that way. I mean, I know that for a fact.
Well, the Fair Labor Standards Act says that employee can accrue up to two hundred and forty hours of comp time before it has to be paid out.
You have to use it terms that week. That is also part of.
But that's not the Fair Labor Standards.
Yeah, it's not, it's not Fair Labor Standards.
To be fair to county employees.
Yeah, I've been dinged on that before. We had to pay them their overtime rate for that. So it may be a little different since although we are county employees, we do report to the.
We go by the FLSA, which is Fair Labor Standards Act.
And it was in there. I mean, that was where we got pushed back on. So that's, we got to make sure that that's right.
I mean, just my whole thing is, I know as a former county employee, we can get comp time that you never get to take. And that's not really fair compensation to staff that's having to stay over at work for time that they may or may not get to take.
But you always got paid out your comp.
But eventually, it could be months and months and months down the line from when I actually worked it, which isn't fair to the employee, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. You should, you should be paid overtime for that.
As a department head, we've had to deal with this a couple of times. It's just that unexpected cost that comes with the making that payout to staff, because we had had to do that once or twice since I've been a director here. And it does kind of mess with the numbers when I want to do something else with my budget or something else, I have to take that into consideration.
That's my big concern is, as a federal employee, we'd have federal employees build this monstrous amount of stuff up, and come to end of the year, fiscal year, I'd have suddenly a flood of people all trying to take off at the same time. And it's a, I'm sorry, it's a gift that keeps taking from a employer. To me, it's like, hate the people for the work they're doing right then, otherwise they built this monstrous amount of, effectively more vacation. It's even harder to cover for the time when they're missing. It just makes it more work.
I think that's just more of a bit of staff care, like caring for our people. It's gonna boost morale. I'm sorry, anybody that has to work over and they see the immediate compensation for that is gonna be more apt to not complain if they have to do it again.
That, and as well as the, when we're sitting here, we're looking and asking for staffing levels and what we're looking at every year. It's a whole lot easier to go back and say, well, how much overtime have we paid out?
That dollar amount, justify a new position.
That's probably within my new business is I want to know overtime rates and how much we're doing. Do we need to staff up, or do we need to reduce that?
Right.
Alright, very good. It's a good conversation. Alright, and then on callback, callback.
If I could, just to clarify a little more, because I've dealt with it a lot. The part about building up two hundred and forty hours, I think for sure, people should be allowed to collect some comp time, okay? There should be ability to, especially new employees, maybe only get two weeks of vacation, they're workforce, they're just, so I think there should be some ability to store some comp time, but it should be at some point discretion of the organization to say, okay, you can't go past eighty hours that we're paying you out. So to let them say, okay, I'll collect comp time because I don't have vacation. Let them collect up to like eighty hours of comp time, and then after that, we're gonna pay you for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, and I can attest, Kristi does a good job of setting the leave balances to our department. And I, it's my responsibility, I was a department head, to take a look at that entirety. And there was a time when there were some workers in there that had a large amount, and I think I maybe had a conversation with Warren about, hey, I'm gonna force them to take some leave, they need to take a little vacation. And so that's, that's how we, we had to work it out to get them to chip away at it.
Yeah, well, I think every department rate can.
The sheriff's office worked very hard on me because he had very high levels.
Yeah.
I have, I have several, I have several employee who, two or three that had right at two hundred and forty hours, but I'm three, three people down. I don't, I don't have time to let anybody take off a week.
I know, a lot, I've had, tell me before, they said if I was getting overtime, I'd be way more willing to work it. But like you said, if they're not gonna get paid by the end of the year, you know, I'm giving up time to watch my kids ballgame or something tonight and the next three nights to do something, and I'm not gonna say anything for it.
But they're also happy too. Like, we have a couple of employees that had high comp balances in Brad's department that are on medical leave right now, and the first thing they said was, use all that comp I have. They didn't have to use their vacation leave or their sick leave, so they were happy with it.
Well, you still have comp time accruing. They're still gonna have comp time. It just won't be to the rate of their overtime constantly being tacked on. And again, for the sake of looking at future budgets, there are a lot of, a lot of departments that have requested additional staffing that we can't justify without being able to look at it on paper in black and white and say, we spent this much over. Hey, that's a full-time position right there.
I'm gonna have to mix the slug of cash flow out and paint them all out in.
And pay them all out at one time, yeah.
Slug of cash that goes out.
Eventually, it's gonna, it's gonna wash out with a new position.
And we're short of staff.
And we're short of staff, yeah.
Alright, like I said, very, very good input, so on this one.
The only, I'm sorry, the only question I got, I had, Warren, is in regards to kind of the email conversation we had, kind of breaking out of explaining, how does the on-call schedule reporting for my department specifically work? Is that gonna be something? Because we are, we send it to sheriff's office to appropriate people that need to know where my social workers are as far as being on-call. Is that something you're now asking me to send to the county manager now?
No.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, because your rules were a little bit different, and you responded to that, so I'm not gonna want to change anything that you do.
We know your list, as the social worker, so we know your list.
Alright. So let me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna back up to the very first part up here on the six month, about hiring and defiring or whatever we want to do.
Six month probationary period?
Yes, of course. That does not apply to me and sheriff's office. I think that should be stated in this.
Yeah, and I think it's actually stated in some order.
It's in the beginning of what doesn't apply to elected officials.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Well, we, you don't have the whole policy. We're just starting up.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Kathy, yeah. But it is very well stated in there. So let me briefly get the callback. Callback time consists of actual times spent. You ready?
Ready.
Alright. Callback time consists of actual time spent when called back to work to handle an emergency situation, hours actually worked while on callback calculating, getting with the employee reports to work site, not commuting time, and our average regular total hours work for the week. Non-zip employees will be guaranteed a minimum payment of two hours of wages for being called back to work outside of the normal working hours when not on standby. Callback provisions do not apply to previously scheduled overtime work scheduled one or more days in advance. Employees on-call during a holiday week that are called back to work will receive comp time for the time actually worked. The employee will receive their holiday pay for the week. The time worked due to callback will be recorded under the comp time only when the employee has actually worked over forty hours when they begin to calculate overtime. Okay? So we do not have a policy right now for on-call and callback. We, we do, our rules have been established, but nothing ever been documented. So this is the first time that we would have documented on-call and callback. So what the commissioners want me to do is to look at a way of paying for this time that they're called back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is there any department here that says that's wrong, they don't want to do that?
And yeah, that's why y'all are running, like, please give us your input, because this is, this is the personnel policy that I feel like the reason we're doing it, the board, I think collectively feels like staff wasn't involved in creating at all and has no input, and things have changed, and we need to be more cognizant of, of actual staff needs, concerns, and what's gonna be best for morale in your offices.
So two, two things, first about to come, just made our thoughts. You asked about the whole thing, or just this callback, or you just wrote?
Well, we're going page by page, but if you want to give, and we will, and I was, I was asking a clerk, if we can send out just some kind of anonymous feedback type thing to have everybody type up any overview that they have at the end that we can get to Mr. Perry so that he can compile things as he's taking consideration as he's compiling a final draft. Because these are just segments of it to us to discuss going forward. But there will be a final draft brought forward before we approve anything to have another discussion.
Well, that was what we were next, right?
Yeah.
Just saw us today, other than.
Because there's some Department of Insurance rules that may.
Right. Laws that have to be considered, those type things. So this is a, this is the first phase type thing of moving forward with adopting the new policy, which we do hope to be done in a fairly reasonable amount of time. It's been going on for years now, so.
Well, like I said, I have probably reviewed documents from two other different county managers, as well as two other probably policies to get with that. There were four Gates County, so this was a compound of everything. Today, we're just going over eleven things. So what I'm gonna do as we leave here today, is I'm gonna probably bring at least a group of five of you, somebody we've already served on just before, like Lisa or Patrice, to go over eleven more policies that we're gonna be updating. And so hopefully by the next three months, we'll have a combined copy that we can show back to everyone. But every time I'll meet with these directors for department heads, I'll forward that information to the commissioners. Is that alright?
Yeah.
Brad, well, as far, as far as the overtime or the comp time goes, right now under current policy, holidays are not considered part of the forty-hour work week, correct?
Uh, no, that's right.
So you won't actually earn comp if, say, next week is Labor Day?
It would actually only work like four days if it's a holiday.
Would it be beneficial to add the holiday as part of the work week?
Well, to me, you.
Because if you actually work overtime, actually deduct from the holiday and if you put extra holiday pay, I mean, that just blows my mind.
That's what was in the ordinance.
I know.
Right, yeah.
I can't.
No, this is not all against, because we know what you're doing.
I know, I've been a bad person for years.
I'm gonna backtrack. This is not at all directed towards Kristi.
Okay.
For years, for years. Alright, so let's move along to the next.
Yeah, we ran out of time, so let's move on. We've never had a teleworking policy. Willie's talked about it, and so.
I can get off my soapbox now.
I know, I know. So I proposed one, and it says employees in certain positions with the county may be eligible for their job from their home during weather or emergency events, working on sound projects, etc., with the county manager's approval. Department heads must obtain county manager's approval of teleworking for employees within their department by written request of the county manager providing a summary of individual job tests and expected length of time to teleworking will last. Once the employee logs in and is working, they must log off for any personal activities other than ordinary breaks allowed under county policy. Authorization must be approved before and overtime is worked. In those circumstances, must work be performed that is not recorded in county form in full. Overtime that has been requested and approved in advance will be compensated in accordance with the applicable laws and regulations. Gates County will vigorously discourage unapproved overtime. Failure to obtain proper approval for the overtime work may result in employees being removed from the teleworking program or other disciplinary actions. The employee participating in the teleworking program may be offered county equipment to effectively work at home with the county manager's approval. If county equipment is provided, it is the responsibility of the employee to protect the equipment against damage and unauthorized use. Employees covered by workers' comp during this time, if they get hurt working at home, it will be the employee's responsibility to protect the county's records, papers, computer files, and correspondence from unauthorized disclosure or damage, and to ensure that all county documents are properly returned to county facilities as required in the event that either the employee or the county chooses to discontinue the teleworking agreement. The employee will be responsible for ensuring that all documents and so forth. So failure to comply with the policy can be terminated for. So we did not have a teleworking policy as of today, so this will be the first one.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as long as it's approved by the county manager.
I'm not. Let me, let me be clear, I support telework in general, but I think it's gotta be a lot higher than that. I think you have to have a couple-stage process to do this. You should have every single position evaluated, whether or not it's really applicable that it could do that work from home, effectively teleworking. And I've got a lot of experience with this. In a couple of countries with US employees, Japanese employees, Spanish, Italian, this can, this gets out of hand if it's not well managed. It needs to be hard fact, every job evaluated for, how much can be teleworked, done. And then separately, the employee, their performance and reliability has to separately be validated. And after that's done, the two parts made, only then can you consider it for telework, and then you have to determine the extent. This is something that can get way out of control really quick. People will scream and holler if you do it, reel it back, and deserving people are doing it correctly get screwed over when you end up deciding you have to pull everybody back from it because it's being abused, so.
You don't have a problem convincing me of abuse. I'm not pro-telework.
My problem is, no offense.
He said I'm not pro-telework.
I'm not pro-telework.
I think it should not be, no offense, I don't think this should be at the county manager level for approval. I think it needs to be comprehensively reviewed, all the positions determined, based on recommendations from department heads, whether or not this job can be teleworked or not, and then the employees evaluated, and it'd be a comprehensive approval for the position. And then after that, it would be the county manager's decision if the department head says, yes, I recommend this person be allowed to telework.
And I know, I was actually having a conversation at conference last week with another county, and they were saying that they have recently allowed telework to kind of come into their county and things, but they had it a percentage of the week to be worth telework and a percentage of the week had to be in office for how they were implementing it just to phase in, to see how it, how it worked as far as productivity goes. And so it was, it was a phased, it was a phased program for them, and they are kind of in the phase one. I think they said that they give them, I want to say it was forty percent telehealth, sixty percent, or teleworking, and sixty percent in office is what this particular person was saying they were doing to, to gauge it first. And again, it was gonna be based on productivity if they continue that program or not.
But I think.
Go ahead.
But I think that, Dave, that you will possibly take this as a, it's a full-time thing, where they want to be worked up. That's not what this is about.
Not at all.
Specifically. It limits you specifically, it limits you specifically to weather or emergency events.
Yeah.
There is no policy of that.
No one's only full-time working at home. So, yeah, it's only in emergency events. And commissioner, of course, I think if you want to get additional approval, like department.
I still think every position should be evaluated, because if not, when you have emergency conditions occur, they say, oh, everybody telework. And Brad, how do you guys prepare pipes to telework?
We don't telework.
Exactly. And there's certain other jobs.
We don't have many games when we're teleworking.
I have a prime example. I'm the only person that, I don't have an assistant or anything. So if I get, you know, hurt or whatever, and I have to be home, I can still operate my department, because most, most of the time is contractors on the phone, or, you know, whatever. But that's like ten, not all the time. It's just only if it's an emergency, I have.
But there's, a personal emergency, see, no offense, I don't even agree with that. If it's an emergency catastrophic event, tornado, something, a massive blizzard, that's an emergency. A personal emergency, you fall and break your leg? I'm sorry, you don't get to telework, in my opinion, because you broke your leg.
But then the work hours.
I understand that, I understand that, but that's not, that's not an emergency that the county's doing or Mother Nature. So.
Okay, I, I agree wholeheartedly, that maybe we should have maybe a list of jobs that they, that they may telework.
And it needs to be the supervisors.
So we'll add some more to this, though.
Yeah, yeah. Good conversation, though. But don't get me wrong, I'm not pro-telework.
It does, it does help, though, because like, when I had COVID, I have deadlines, and if I don't get the reports in on a certain time, they take a portion of our money back. So I think Kristi and I had this conversation. I'm like, well, I don't have to, because I'll be fine staying, you know, I have to stay home. But if I don't do these reports and I don't do them at this time, then they're gonna take a percentage of the funds that we get. And, I mean, so.
This is a different situation.
Yes, kind of.
I'll just comment, it's, it's easy to use Brad's situation with his occupation. Like, yeah, the option telework isn't gonna work in his circumstances, but from the social services side, I think it is a true benefit, not only from the employee attraction standpoint, but from the standpoint of ensuring work is still done timely, because not all cases are due Monday through Friday. You have cases that are due on Saturdays, and staff may have to come into the office on a Saturday before they go to their drop their kid off at their game or whatever you have. And again, it makes it a little bit more convenient and palatable for not only my incommens space workers to still be able to do their job and make sure we don't get dinged for something that the county may have to pay back, but even for my social workers, when they have to complete notes, when they've been out in the, out in the field on an on-call till three. but even for my social workers, when they have to complete notes, when they've been out in the, out, out in the field on an on-call till three in the morning, it's not realistic for them to go back in the office and complete the notes when it's fresh in their minds. They may be a little more comfortable doing all that stuff at home while they're in front of a laptop. So just, I understand Commissioner Forrest's types of grip with it. However, there are mechanisms, at least from the social services standpoint, to ensure that we know what our staff are doing. And I was sending an email to Christie and Warren yesterday about our day sheets and how to track stuff, and how valuable that is for us comparison to the time that people are in the office doing the work and stuff. Just putting that out there for transparency purposes.
Yeah, and really, I will commend you. You brought this up about a month after I was employed.
So, and again, this is not a final thing. He's gonna take all this conversation into consideration and we'll bring it forward as a final draft.
We got you all on tape, so, yeah. All right, so quickly through some of the others. Trainee designation provisions. A lot of times if you want to hire someone that doesn't meet the requirements of the job, you can come in and hire them at a lesser pay rate. And it specifies, Department head shall review the progress of each employee wellness. Let me go ahead and start it again. Advocates being considered for employment or county, or county employees that do not meet all the requirements for a position for which they're being considered, may be hired, promoted, demoted, or transferred by the county manager or given a trainee status under the State Personnel Act job classes as the work against program, which I think DSS has used before. In such cases, a plan for training and meeting the minimum qualification for the job classification, including the time schedule, must be prepared by the supervisor. An employee shall remain at the trainee or work against salary level until the department head certifies that the employee is qualified to assume full responsibilities of a position and the county manager approves of the certifications. The department head shall review the progress of each employee in a trainee or work against status. Every six months or more frequently is necessary to determine when the employee is qualified to assume full responsibilities of a position. Trainee salaries may be one to three as grades, not grads, just in case you, I did make a grammatical error. Below the hiring rate established for the position for which the person is being trained. Assignment three grades below are appropriate when the trainee, traineeship is expected to last two years. Assignment for two grades below are appropriate for more than six months, but less than two years. And no position subject to the Personnel Act may be assigned no more than two grades below as a trainee per, as for trainee purposes. A new employee designated as trainee or work against. Appointment shall be on a probationary status until requirements to the full job class are met. If training is not successful, completed or planned as planned, the employee shall be transferred, demoted, or dismissed. If the training is successfully completed, the employee shall be paid at least the hiring rate established for the job class and rate. As you know, the provision includes the sheriff's office and the, and those that are hired as a deputy sheriff, but not pass flat certification. So you can hire them since it's within a six-month period. You would hire them at one grade below what the standard grade is for a deputy. Which you had fallen under that already on some of the people you've employed. But that's, we kind of done it, but we've never called it a trainee designation, so. All right.
I think that, I'm not just in, yes. All right, so we are now gonna go into a five-minute break, and then we'll grab lunch and come back to the table for a working lunch as we continue through the, the rest of these. So just give us a few minutes in the back, so.
That in emergency situations where employees are required to work long and continuous hours, the county manager may approve compensation at time and one half for hours' work and will grant time off with pay for rest and recuperation to ensure safe working condition. So this gives the authority of the county manager to grant overtime pay in cases. Yeah, if it's needed. Any questions that I left?
Yeah, sorry.
Could you, in case you're concerned with, does the county under, comparing with SSS, FLSA, does the county have the ability to direct mandatory overtime or comp time work?
Yeah, well.
I'm thinking of Brad, if this guy, if they have a broken license, the guy says, sorry, I'm going off.
Same thing with DSS.
Yeah, so do you have the ability to say, we'll stay here and work, finish, you gotta get this done this week, and they said all week, keep remaining on Friday, and he said, hey, it's five o'clock, you're just staying here mandatory overtime, can we complete this task? I'm just saying, and this sounds like a hard ask, but I mean, the reality is, is do you have the authority to do that?
Well, in thirty years in this business, I've never had to do that. Those folks that are attracted to these jobs are committed enough, and they recognize that the issue, we've had some administrative staff between finance and public utilities, having to dive in at work weekends and corrects and.
But Anthony, you've never had to do this, so we don't really know that, so. Sounds like it's not really a necessary thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's, it's not.
I will say that, I sound like I've never used it either, or one time, we've received one time with one individual, but that was.
Yeah.
That one.
Is there a certain amount of time you cannot exceed working, like, with simply an hour a day? I'm, I'm physical, I don't.
Oh, is there, well, like in an emergency situation, you know, I mean, I don't think there's a limit that you, you know. I think if you're in Rescue Squad or you're in, I think, I don't know, Sheriff Campbell, is there a limit on how, how many shifts you're at at work? Can he work two shifts?
I thought about the level do that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't work, would've worked long hours, and we'd bother about that no matter.
Yeah.
It's not a mandatory MS, but we try to stay at thirty-six.
I say a lot of things go out the window in state of emergency, though.
But, but our work is a little bit different. They, they could potentially be sleeping.
Yeah.
Even though they're still on the work.
Waiting on calls, right?
The answer, I don't.
I, I was just, I'm used to dealing with it, you, you know, we can't work for sixty.
But yours is a safety sensitive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how it is, and I think we're in a safety stricken position. Well, I did, on the second page of the positions for overtime, is exempt employees, as many of you are aware, we don't, we do not have comp time, but we have what we call flex time. So flex time for exempt employees in the new version that I didn't say was approved. The flex time for exempt employees shall begin to accrue once an employee has worked over thirty-seven and a half hours in a work week. Flex time should be given at a rate of one hour for each hour of overtime work over thirty-seven and a half hours. The maximum flex time, which may be accrued by any affected employee, shall be thirty-seven and a half hours. So that means for the new set, you cannot carry over thirty-seven and a half hours of flex time. Yes, Will?
Um, I was gonna make a comment based on what was discussed previously about those emergency situations. And maybe I think it would be beneficial to have that included, because an example I'll give is something that happened to us within my first year here. And it's very rare, and we had the conversation about why we don't have a whole lot of kids, and the joke I made about we have a lot of families here in the county that really care. And we're very grateful for that. Or in very rare circumstances, that we cannot find suitable housing for a kid. Instead of, and while we're doing that research, we may have to house a kid for a while. And that may certainly necessitate them being, living in the facility or housing them in a hotel. Us only having technically five social workers, if you, two of me. You know, there was a time when we only had two, and so that's a sixteen-hour rotation, you know. We split that three ways for twenty-four hours, wherever the map is. That, those kind of things track, you know, add up. And if we can't find housing in enough time, you know, that's just comp time that's approved. There may be instances where, hey, we know you just had to, you know, run a marathon, so to speak, and supervision over a child for whatever it is. Um, you know, I think it would be, this might be one of those good examples of that, so just putting that out there.
Yeah.
How many, how many exempt employees you had to do that?
Uh, it's, it would just be my social workers who do that when we do have instances like that.
Are they all exempt employees? They're not exempt.
No, they're not exempt. Yeah, not exempt. I'm the only exempt one here, so. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't pertain to me. I don't sleep over that. But for my staff, my social workers, that is something that wouldn't be very, very, uh, valuable.
How do we define exempt employees within this county? Do we have a certain dollar amount? Is it by position? How is it classified? Is it called exempted?
Well, it's by position and amount.
Okay. So is it all department heads or exempt employees?
Yes.
And then some of them, I guess they have, you know, next in line, maybe because of all, depending on salary and stuff?
Yeah, depending on salary and what authority, and that, like, open people.
Okay.
Good question. All right, on, on the next page is an outline of unsatisfactory job performance, is the definition of it. And it kind of self-explains itself. What's a little bit different now is the communication and warnings preceding disciplinary action for unsatisfactory job performance. Is that employees' job performance is unsatisfactory or when incidents or inappropriate actions warrant, the supervisor should meet with the employee as soon as possible in more and more counseling sessions to discuss specific, specific performance problems. A brief summary of these counseling sessions should be noted in the employees filed by the supervisor. An employee whose job performance is unsatisfactory over a period of time should normally receive at least two documented warnings. Now, in the old policy, it said you had to have an oral warning, you had to have written warnings, you had to have a final written warning, and then you could have a dismissal notice. So here's a little bit different, because everyone's always confused that I do an oral warning, was it a written slash oral warning? I always said if you do oral, oral warning, you want to document it. And some people weren't documenting it. So now we're just saying there's two documented written warnings, one of which may be in the final written warning from the supervisor before the disciplinary action resulting in dismissal is taken by the county manager or hiring authority. In each case, the supervisor should record the dates of discussions with the employee. Now, I've spoken to a lot of attorneys, and these counseling sessions are very important because they've got to know they're doing wrong before they ever get a written warning. But that's imperative. So then, get your final written warning, and then, of course, you get a written recommendation that of why you've been terminated, either by me or the county manager. Okay, disciplinary suspensions, for purpose of communicating serious performance efficiency, should not generally see three days. Normally, we haven't been suspending, normally we just do our written warnings and then move to termination. So next we go to disciplinary action or detrimental personal conduct. And on the page after that, it gives the examples of what detrimental personal conduct it has to file. So when you discipline someone for detrimental personal conduct, it says normally the department head or county manager will place the employee in non-disciplinary suspension prior to making a disciplinary determination to allow time to gather facts regarding their detrimental personal conduct and make a determination regarding the severity of the conduct. After careful investigation and with the recommendation of the HR director and approval of the county manager or hiring authority, an employee may be placed on disciplinary suspension without pay, demoted or dismissed without prior warning for causes relating to personal conduct detrimental to county service in order to, number one, avoid undue disruption of work. Secondly, to protect the safety of persons or property. And thirdly, for other serious reasons. And we haven't had to use this before, and you can terminate someone by giving, you know, prior warning. And that's why it's always good for, number one, if you see something that seems to be recurring, make sure you notify that either in a counseling session or in an employee evaluation. Any questions about that?
So, under the performance of mixed use of leave privileges, like, I mean, that's not the same thing. It'd be fraud, obviously, if they lab on the category.
Yeah.
That's gonna be why it's different.
Yeah. All right. So the next one, you know, this is something we'll, we can circle on, but the current policy use of personnel board on the duties of the personnel board, which I believe right now consists of the county manager, Commissioner Forrest, and, and I believe the, this is the chair. Yep. So the duties of the personnel board are as follows. Recommend reclassifications of positions presented by department's manager. Recommend salary adjustments for employees. Recommend the employment of new staff where the beginning salary exceeds the normal starting salary for that position. Review and consider new existing personnel policies. Hear grievances and appeals from employees who file an appeal due to some action taken by the department director under the provisions of Gates County Personnel Ordinance. Now, when I was going through that, a lot of the counties that have HR directors do not have personnel boards. So I then reviewed some of the duties of the HR director, and I kind of felt there started to be a lot of parallels of that there, that the personnel board, when you don't, do not have an HR director, serves in a bunch and sometimes of an HR duties. So those are listed there. Now, I'm not saying we do away with the personnel board, we can always keep it. But the grievance procedures or handling grievances are in the pages behind this. Summary of the grievance procedure is listed, and handling grievances is a three-step process. First, the employee and supervisor should meet informally to resolve the problem. If not resolved, go to step two, which is the employee will formally file a grievance with the supervisor or HR director. Another county employee can be used as a mediator. If not resolved, you go to step three. Third, the employee can appeal to the county manager, and the county manager can meet with the employee to make a decision on the appeal. So here we would utilize this and not use the personnel board. You can do two different things. The county manager or hiring authority decision, whatever the county manager decides is final. However, the county manager should inform the board of commissioners of any possible legal actions. Any appeal must be made through the North Carolina SCORP system. Or if the grievance is not resolved to their satisfaction, the employee can appeal in writing to the HR director, who in turn will request the grievance to be referred to the board of commissioners. And the process should be utilized, especially in cases where the employee's grievance concerns actions or alleged actions of the county manager. So I'm not saying take the personnel board away, it's just a option that should the personnel board do a lot of the things that the HR director's already doing. But that's your, that's your decision.
One, one of the things that Emily and I kind of talked about was, yes, the original intent with the personnel board, because we didn't have a HR director at that point in time, and that's why it was created a long ago.
Yeah.
Um, we still felt like there's a possible use of that personnel board, but we'll probably have to change that in order because it's created within a one or two.
Yeah.
So maybe change and reevaluate what exactly it does and, and possibly have it where it's just oversight of, of county staffing levels and those type of things, where it's just a once-a-year review of what's, what's required, what's needed, those type of things. That way, as we go forward into the next fiscal year, we know and have a better understanding of what our needs in the county are. Or, and other way around.
Just kind of redefine, restructure the role, leave, leave the board, just with a new definition.
This just changed over a number of years, because as I said, the personnel board was created, the county, uh, served HR function.
Right.
All right, so grievance procedures are listed. And of course, Willie, it's page fourteen, talks about social services. Your grievance procedures are handled a little bit different through LAH, and we went through that unfortunately one time earlier. So if y'all just read through the grievance procedures, if you have any questions, let me know. I wanted to get to the last page. just to have a proposal. Annual leave accrual. So currently Gates County is the one at the top, where we're having ten days per year for less than two years, twelve days from two to five, fifteen from five to ten, and eighteen from ten to fifteen, and twenty-one, of course, or fifteen or more. So then I went to Camden County to see what they do, and you can see they're listing the days per year. Then I went to Pasquotank, theirs have been as updated as soon as Camden County, but that's Pasquotank County. And then in 2021, in one of the drafts, the Gates County new personnel manual, it said Gates County would propose zero to five, it would move it up to twelve days a year. Five to ten years of seniority would go to eighteen. Ten to fifteen years would go to twenty. Fifteen to twenty would go to twenty-one. And twenty-plus years would give someone twenty-four days of vacation a year. So if any of you have a pen with you, Churuan updated theirs. And Churuan, from zero to five is twelve. From five to ten is fifteen. From ten to fifteen is eighteen. From fifteen to twenty years is twenty-one. And from twenty-plus years is twenty-four. That's just something to think about. That's three counties that are plus five. One other thing that was addressed and something the county hasn't done was longevity pay. It's always subject to funding and budget approval, William. I'm glad you're here. Everything costs. But the longevity pay, just a proposal four or five years ago, was that five to nine years, it's $200, ten to fourteen, it's $400. Fifteen to nineteen was paid, six hundred and twenty-plus was paid, eight hundred. You know, different counties, I could probably show you what the three counties that I did the vacation on, what kind of longevity pay for the commissioners to look at, and look at the main four or five counties that surround us, but most of them do have some longevity pay and we have not.
How does that work?
How does that work?
Basically, about is it a thing?
Yeah, well, different counties do it differently. Some of them give it at the right Thanksgiving of every year, and others give it at the anniversary day.
I have a question for all the directors. How hard is it to keep employees these days for you? Taking that as it's pretty hard.
We, oddly enough, we don't have a lot of turnover. Most of our turnover is really in some of the more physical jobs like public utilities.
Yeah. Probably. Even within my business, we deal with that because, you know, with, you know, my business, the trades business, so the trade's a pretty high commodity right now, and everybody's salary is going up and all that kind of stuff. One of the things that we're wanting to implement this next year is a deferred compensation plan for employees within the company. And basically, we, for every year of service, we put an accrued amount of money into a deferred compensation plan for them. That money accrues interest. And every five years, that money vests, and you, and like the money that you put in there in year one, you get that money plus the interest that it bear for those five years on year five. And so every five years, you're rolling money out. So it, what it does is it has a pot of money that is sitting in this deferred comp plan that is a, pretty much a anchor to that employee of, hey, if you leave this job, you're leaving five years of deferred comp. And that rolls back to, in this case, will roll back to the account. So this is just a thought kind of thrown out there.
Yep.
And we, 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 we're going to put that to all high-value employees within our company, like superintendents, project managers, those type of things.
Do y'all do something similar?
We want a merit-based raise. You don't, you just don't get a cost of living raise.
Yeah. I see your hand raised, William. I don't know the budget for it. Well, I was just wondering about consideration of a contribution to the pool.
That's what I was gonna ask, because that would...
I mean, especially if you do, like, we'll do up to a match of a certain percentage to encourage other people to also participate.
I really think it depends on the level of employee because you have some staff that are... Waiting five years is kind of discouraging to them in some ways. And so, I mean, I just really don't think it would depend on the level of it, like, personal because...
If I'm ready to go, I highly doubt five years of, you know, a carrot in front of me isn't going to entice me to stay.
Yeah.
That's my thing.
I have employees $140,000.
See, again, like, you know, the money talks, so I get that part. But again, to what Emily's saying, to what Emily's saying, again, like, our staff aren't getting that kind of deferred compensation based on whatever that person's salary is. I highly doubt my forty K, you know, a year worker is gonna have five years, in five years, 140. Now, that might probably make me stay.
You know what? I'm talking about a science, but I need a job.
But my, my point there is, you know, you can scale that down.
Right, right.
So...
It's the scaling down that's the problem.
But if you have somebody that's making $40,000 and they got, you know, $15,000 sitting in this account, I mean, that, that's real money to folks that's making $40,000, right?
But hopefully they're leaving for a better amount.
They're probably leaving for $15,000 more.
Yeah, that's exactly.
I mean, that's the realistic part of it all.
Well, if they're leaving for $15,000 more a year, we're way underpaying our people.
Well...
And that's what we gotta talk about.
Well, we've been working on that.
Well...
Yes. We've come a very long way.
And I was just saying, like, with the longevity, keeping people is really a big benefit because really, when you have small staffs like we do at the county, we really don't have the time to keep training people. You know, and training them, especially for other, to go other places.
And that's a cause.
It's a cause.
Well, in transportation, you might have two employees, so you're really wasting an employee just in training.
Yeah.
Because it's riding with someone.
Exactly. And, I mean, and paying the appetites, the advertising costs, the advertising, and then you're paying the preenformal things that you have to do, so, I mean, it's...
Well, I think so, it takes five years before we can become proficient.
Any other questions about, yes, sir?
I just, I hate to talk about the past sometimes, but when I was with the city of Elizpa City, they did longevity. And it was, they started it at your anniversary day, so your first year, you were able to earn it. And it was, I think it was 125 a year, and that's what you got each year for your employment. So if you left it 20 years, you got 20 years times 125. Just one way to calculate it. I know that builds, but you have so few employees that are there that long sometimes. But, you know, you got a bunch of employees that've been there one year. So it kind of washes that way.
And they also give the morale away.
That's the point. That once a year.
At least, you know, I've been here, now I could get about a year, 20 years.
Right.
And that's for my rate, seeing that once a year payout is probably more enticing to where we are, just looking at where we are and the way things have been done previously. Having that visual compensation and saying, I'm appreciated, is gonna speak more now than it would saying, okay, I know I'm getting compensated for it in five years. At this point, maybe now the rope, that would be an option, but to initially implement it and say to the staff, we appreciate you, we see you, we do want to recognize that you're working. Giving something that they can tangibly access now is gonna speak a lot more.
What I was talking about, like, in addition to this.
Oh, in addition, then let's go in addition, hey.
Over and above.
All right. Yeah.
If, if this was, if this 200, saying that five years, you get that 200, what would that look like as a percentage, like, if it was cola? Because I'll, I'll use as the example, and, you know, I always, hey, cola, great, give me more money.
I'm gonna look to William.
But I'm making a statement where we get a 2% or 5% cola, oh, great, that turns out to be 50 extra bucks overall. Not even like per check, but overall increase.
Add tax.
You know, and add taxes, probably less than that. So again, like, yeah, oh, I can't wait till my five years, I get my $200. I mean, it doesn't really sound palatable, you know, and so I'm just thinking from the perception standpoint for our staff here. And, well, hey, hey, we're gonna have a longevity, you know, I get, I get it. The money is what it is, based on what we have eventually. But just things to consider and think about from, whether it's messaging or how our staff are gonna receive this.
Right. So then I would say, and I don't know if this would be applicable, we talked about personnel kind of board stuff. We wanted to meet and talk with these possible options, and we can bring them back at a later date and present all of these as options maybe for board. Do you think that would be okay?
Yeah.
All right.
I would like to kind of look at maybe five of the department managers meeting.
Right.
And kind of go over things.
Kind of go forward.
Yeah, and make a proposal to the commissioners.
So, great input.
Because I've got about 10 or 11 more issues right at hand to look at.
So, great input with that, yeah.
This is all we have.
And Renee's gonna start texting me soon to pay attention to the time. I don't move this along to the, what was, the 12:30 emergency operations plan review. If anybody has anything they wanna move away from the table, I'm gonna do it quick. Let's start by 12:45 and get things cleaned up real quick.
If we're getting resources coming in from state or federal aid, that's where we'd come, and then we could distribute it from there. And then we're gonna briefly talk about PACE Plan. This department has updated our PACE Plan, I'll tell you a little bit more about that, and COOP Plan. And then at the end, a little bit of what we do here, emergency management and fire management. So the EOP is a multi-hazard document, so it needs to cover more than just the hurricane. And then we need to ensure that it's efficient and coordinated. Like I said, it's kind of the playbook, so we get everybody's, so everybody knows who's what's responsibility. It does have to align, align with NAMS, which is the National Incident Management System. Those are some regulations on how we communicate and then some FEMA guidelines. It provides a structure for the whole preparedness, response, recovery cycle, which is what I'll talk about. So we have a basic plan, it's under review, we're under review. There's quite a bit of changes, some of the people or positions listed. Example of the 911 supervisors no longer here, it's had to be rewritten. Then we have some annexes and some work checklist and attachments in the back. And some of those are being reviewed and updated as well, thanks to a lot of people in this room's input. So it's, it's kind of, we don't currently have an index, so we're gonna be adding an index. And this is gonna be somewhat what it's gonna look like. And we're gonna talk about some parts that's missing this. But here are the annexes here in particular. Does anybody got any questions about some of these functions? These are the current functions we have listed until... I can't see them from here, so... We have a animal control protection, communications. Can you see it on the back screen?
I can see a file, you see my...
Okay. Damage assessments, which we, this is one of the areas we're gonna make a lot of updates in. Debris management, which requires a lot of updates. Direction control, donation management is one I still need to work on. Emergency medical, we have made some updates, include some hazardous weather things in there. Emergency Operations Center. And evacuation, transport, reentry is gonna be one that's gonna be added. Fire protection, we've already completed. Law enforcement's been completed, that's fatalities has completed. Notification warnings, one made a big update, this is probably a really important part to me. This is how we get the message out there of danger and what incident did happen. Public health was already updated. Public information still needs more updating. Public works, those minor sections that needed to be improved. Recovery operations, resource management, search and rescue, we actually had a pretty good one. Shelter mask cameras, which we're adding our capabilities there on what we can do. Terrace response was pretty standard. Training and exercises, one that wasn't addressed that we're adding. It's gonna, in there, we're gonna address on how we're gonna plan some training and exercises. This is the first time we want to see this plan is not the day of. And then unmet needs is one we've added. Biofacilities, we added in the school systems, we need to handle, and we've already dealt with ours. So in the annex, here is what is currently listed. It may be hard for you guys to see from there. So some of these, if you look to find your agency, and I don't know if everyone's aware of where they're at in this. Like, this extension is listed under animal control protection. That was a bit updated because we've kind of changed to how we handle animal management.
We work under donations and volunteers.
You still are under donations management, yes, I didn't know if you knew that. That's why the, that's one of the ones I still need to talk to you about, but yeah. Pretty much put it up here to see. Another one, like, damage assessment, it has, I believe, is their back agency, I don't know if they've done that much or...
I haven't done it. I think last time it was done was when Kathy Lane was still here, because I have some of her incident papers.
With everything that happened with the hurricane affected the western part of the county, the state, and from the DSS standpoint, the Director's Association ended up coming up with a list that basically partners us with a neighboring county to assist in, like, our work that we do in emergency affidavits and those kind of things get implemented. Is that something that we need to be included in that? Like, say in the instance that it's activated, our work providing emergency staff. And although our staff may be able to provide that support to community members, we do have a county that's assigned to assist them in those needs as well.
Yeah, that's where we talked about, about the unmet, and the unmet needs, and they put it in the back. So, yeah, that's one, that is definitely one of the things that we have picked up from the western. So big thing, I have this kind of quick list here to see if anybody knows, does it news anyone there on this list of roles and responsibilities? Anybody know that they had?
If you can't see it, if you take a picture of it, you can zoom in on your phone and see.
I was gonna print it off, but the printer died this way.
No, but like, it's helpful.
Yeah, I do that.
Red Sure Deed, so you have to have a certain crew to come in. The records get, yeah, some freeze dry, everything, have that.
And we don't have that address, so we may need to do that. And we'll probably put that under the cybersecurity one, because that is one of the listed ones. So primary functions, resource management, you say, which really comes down to the finance department. This is gonna change, we're really told a lot at the state level, that how FEMA, as you probably have listened, it may change this, how that's gonna be funded and what their response will look like. So these decisions on finance management is gonna really need to be, and we'll talk about it in a minute, the control group and under the finance, to just really get a good clear picture on what we're doing. Operations Center is run under here, public information will be done in our information office. Right now, it's listed as the county manager, county commissioners, emergency management chairs and others is requested. That's one of the plans we probably need to include and grow in on and do what's called a joint information center. And that can be done virtually. Recovery operations is a emergency management with the county manager, finance, and public work. This is usually the longest section. We kind of think about when the water rises, is being, is important for, but really, if we don't recover as a community, we won't recover from a disaster. So that recovery is kind of the long fight. Unmet needs is search and service, we've made a couple of discussions, we're actually hoping to add some groups when he had talked about outside of our agencies, that unmet needs need... Unmet needs is search and service, we, we've made a couple discussions, we're actually hoping about, um, some, some groups, what he had talked about with outside of our agencies, that unmet needs needs. And, um, vital facilities, we're adding, we're actually, you, um, the old one doesn't have a list of critical infrastructure. I didn't think for our registered needs, so if anybody can think about some things that are critical infrastructure that I may need to add.
I would imagine that's also true for park reports, right? Yeah, yeah.
Who is the public information officer?
I just asked that, it would be Ms. Renee Draper.
She hasn't received that memo yet.
And, and, and the news for you, we have a grant, we're, we're, we're getting some training coming in, that we're gonna be able to host and train in here to do that, and suggest. And, and use some of these other resources we have, so. That, that's part of that grant, it's paid for from the sign boards itself.
Billy, have you considered going to full day recreation slash community center?
So, we have, we have talked about them being, they're being added to the shelter plan, uh, that's part of that grant, where we're getting the heat in there and the generator there. Ideally, um, our plan for that is that's gonna be our post-recovery shelter, because part of recovery and getting the community back to normal is closing that, that primary shelter, which right now is in the schools, and getting people back to their return to life. Now, as, as, if you look at experiences here in the past, the whole county isn't affected, it's area, so we may need to, of recovery, it's a resiliency, and that's where the community centers can add.
Where would you park the, uh, animal shelter wagon that we heard about last week? Would that be out near their arena as well?
We're gonna have to add that, that plan, so, so right now.
I was hoping to get that surprise look.
Say what? So, so we do have to add that we do not have a, a co-location shelter, uh, there is no federal or state requirement at this time. It is strongly encouraged that we can tell from studies that people will not go to shelters if they can't co-locate with the, the pets. That's not bringing the pets inside, that's a whole nother problem. This is a, a pet shelter nearby, which we're working with, with Al and, um, she's.
The state vet, yeah.
Who's she, who's she?
Yeah, yeah, that meeting, so, um, and we're looking at, at gaining some resources, right now, our closest with the, the women in the trailer, how we manage it, that, that has to be added. We're adding that to the plan, we don't wanna be one of these counties that get kind of dinged for not being prepared for that, so. So, some of the other ones that I had parked out, we do not have a cybersecurity or IP resiliency program in there, we'd add that, we'd probably also roll that up as documentation retention. Pandemic and infections, these, we actually did not have one, can I, I'm pretty sure, um, that's working, severe weather, and the flood, flood, flooding. And there's, uh, another one that's gonna bring a little, um, continuity of operations, we have a coop plan at the county level? If, if not, we're, we're gonna need to have one. So, this, this is where, if, if, if.
Fall back position.
Yeah, fallback position, like, the, the county offices have to be close, how we handle that, if someone's missing, who's the next person to go down? Part of that coop, coop plan is like, if our, parts of our infrastructure goes down, what's that next step to go back, that's, that's what that plan is. We do not have a, a defined one, so that's gonna be the next project after, after this thing here. Access functional needs, we have some stuff with, um, health department and EMS, where we check on people who are, you know, medically dependent on power and some stuff like that, but we need to expand that. And right now, where, where people can go in and sign up for that a little better. And then radiological technology hazards, which we are required to add, um, and we are working with the state EM on that, we are in that survey, we're playing fallout area technically, so we have to, to, to. Um, other things to add is, uh, commonly here in the eastern part of the state, people have a one-twenty of the landfall checklist. This is a hurricane ready, ready preparedness list, that's gonna be added into the annex. And what's called is a, a daily battle regal, that kind of gives us, um, a schedule for briefing and updates on how the EOC goes, what kind of steps are we gonna do every day when we're open? And then, um, a big one is gonna be EOC position staffing guides, um, with clear roles and responsibility. That's gonna be a requirement for FEMA reimbursement, it's actually always been a requirement. I have never heard them asking for that documentation, but we, we are being told that it probably won't be documented. So, if you're in this EOP, there's gonna be some required training. In, in that, I made a, a training, um, spreadsheet, the good news is it's all fee-free, online self-pay study training from FEMA. I mean, some of you, I know it's gonna have it, all emergency services personnel's gonna have it, it's a couple hours done at thirty minutes to an hour at a time. So, um, then, and updating some of the checklist and job aid specific habits, that's gonna go in the back, and then what's called ICS ones, those are incident command forms, and you'll get, and then we'll see some of those in a minute. Whole list of attachments kind of there. It will be coming out digitally now too, so you can save it on the desktop. Uh, these are the checklists that are currently in there, plus the ones we're talking about adding. And these are some of the other updates, I think I've done, evacuation procedures, which we still need to, to finish out. The vulnerable hazards, we have completed. And, communication says had to be updated, so. And then the training and exercises, like I mentioned, to provide those. So, I asked before, anybody got any suggestions of their experiences in the past of historical events?
Have we ever set up a shelter for employees and their families? So, for those folks that are working those twenty-four, thirty-six hours, they don't wanna worry about their spouse and their children?
I don't know if they've ever done one here, I've, I've done one in another family.
What, what agencies are represented in your EOC routinely?
Um, so, that, that's gonna come up, so the two important parts is the control group and the support group, and we'll have a slide here in a minute about that. So, the control group is the important one, uh, those are the people that makes the, a decision. That's gonna be the county commissioner, the county, the sheriff, the county manager, county commissioners, those are gonna be ultimately making decisions. And I'll kind of get into that when it comes into, support group is usually like public works, myself, EMS, fire. And, and that kind of expands or grows as we want, so. Kind of show you some of the documents, and we'll pass two of these around, these are called incident action plans, these are some ones we've actually used, some of you may have seen it. And some of the forms are in there for what we use, so the big thing is, um, of the plan, and it's gonna be what we got going on, there's usually maps, weather, that kind of stuff in it, what's the spec? Units, who's, who's gonna be the, the primary person, like, about even ambulance, how we're gonna get an ambulance, where it's coming, how's it going out, that kind of things. So, we state the objectives and the strategies that we make that, and we'll talk about how we make these in, in just a moment. There may be daily or operationally period, if we're in a larger event, we're gonna be open for twelve hours, one of these will be produced every twelve hours. The ones that we have here that we've been using, the event-based things.
Billy, could you touch base on when the sheriff sets up the bypass for Gatesville, for either the Christmas parade or the Halloween event, how you coordinate that?
So, yeah, that's one.
Communications and the signs and.
So, yeah, that's what we do, I, I meet with each of the responders that have, have the requirement, things like that, a lot, a lot of things, actually, the sheriff's actually in control of the, of the scene. So, if I take his request, what his planning needs are, and we put that in there, and it states where its things are gonna go, who's gonna man them, what's their roles and responsibilities in certain positions. These are a little abbreviated, we, we do in hurricanes, it's gonna be a rather thick document, but this kind of gives you an idea of those forms.
Yep. I'm just, in, in what instances would we be prepared to?
So, a lot of times, uh, larger ones, it's gonna involve everyone in this room, would probably be a weather event, hurricane.
So, non-emergency related, like, this is, Gates kind of growing, isn't it, like, emergency related, so.
Yeah, this is the planning phase, not the response phase. But when the EOC's open, this is part of what the EOC's doing, we're not just making resource requests and filling those, we're making the plan for the next day of work. Priorities and tasks, this, the, these are the needs, and this is how we're gonna meet them. So, then, and this is kind of, so it provides an emphasis, objectives, once again, operational direction, sure, clear communication, that's the biggest part of it. Uh, resource guides, um, and usually kind of defines the terminology, so. And thi- this is where we get into what happens here, so you kind of, this is called the planning fee, if you've had this before, the incident kind of comes in, and then as we do this endless cycle every twelve hours. We'll have meetings in here, make decisions, set objectives, say how we're gonna meet those objectives, make a plan, get it out to the responders. Does that make sense? So, it's used for decision-making, so that planning fee, that's when we're making those decisions, and those decisions are being pushed more and more to us at the local level, we need to be prepared at the local level to be resilient and self-sufficient. And, we look at the, the, um, operation period before, see what we've met, what we haven't met, responder safety, and things like after action, just to just help feed this. So, sample IPs is just some of the ones that's come around that we use. So, and then, oh, oh, see, so, EOC is a central command and control section to coordinate things, um, activities at all kind of levels. Kind of hard to picture probably now, but we can set it up, we're, one, one part, we're doing planning, another part, we're tracking resources, another part, we're, um, requesting resources, all those kind of things. So, this is kind of the cycle which emergency management lives into, works into, so first, we're always trying to mitigate things. So, this is safety improvement things that we can do, uh, prepare things, plan, training, exercises, get equipment ready, get new equipment, fill in those, like, we see we have a need, and we try to feel that need, or be prepared for that need. Then response is the one we kind of take, take out, that's that immediate reaction, and then we go into recovery of any incident, we try to recover. I even use this for, like, when we have house fires, I actually judge this, the, it, the incident to me, even at a house fire, isn't done until the house is replaced, and then people are back in a home. So, one of the things we're gonna try to add, and I can pass this around too, this is suggested seventy-two plan, we don't have a seventy-two hour plan. Right now, we're being told a lot at emergency management level, we need to be ready for seventy-two hours on the county level. We don't have seventy-two hour plan, so these are some of the positions that I have, have in there proposed, and the training that's gonna be allowed for that. Initially, the training that I've suggested and all, took everywhere from anyone who's involved is, is listed in there, and kind of explained, but it's all online self-paced training. And it is, um, built for redundancy and resiliency. This is that plan, so, any event needs to be as small or as large as we need it, so it always needs to grow, but this is probably the first step to make those decisions. Of these positions, the, um, incident commander, who's in charge of the, usually, it's usually the chief, chief officer of some type, public safety officer, or, sorry, public information officer, which is, um, this Draper. A safety officer, usually a pre- appointed for event, and then operations link, as far as roles that go in this center, is operations, planning, logistics, and finance, this is something we're always gonna think about. Operations is what we're doing, plan, planning is how we're gonna do it, the next time, logistics is what I need, and finance is obviously how we're gonna pay for it. And then IT on call, that's something we don't have in our plan right now, I'd just suggest is to go ahead and put IT personnel on call, cause guarantee you something's not gonna work when I need it. Level two is kind of when we're supporting, coordinating, um, information clerk specialist, that's someone that can help answer phones, emails, monitor Facebook, get information out there. Volunteer organization coordinator, um, we're, we're finding after every more and more event that you need to have someone to coordinate volunteers and volunteers that come in to help, we don't really have a good way, um, to do that. Shelter and feeding, probably it's, DSS has helped with that, but once we get moved in there, it's probably a lot of hand. Damage assessment, we need to, to relook at, the quicker we can assess that damage and get that information reported, the, the quicker we can get help with those things. Ziller communications is the plan we're building here now, and, um, we need multiple ways to communicate, not just, we're gonna get on the internet and, uh, pick up the cellphone. Donation management is something that, that we're gonna grow into, um, larger events, luckily, people in the United States still all want the help, so there, but that could be an influx, that could be in itself a task to do. Control group liaison, control group is probably gonna be more and more important, cause these decisions to make has a financial responsibility, so the, the, the control group needs to do that, and having an active, it's, it, I, I understand commissioners and whatnot, it is hard to get into the EOC every twelve hours. So, sometimes on the liaison, and then you can work through those remote settings, they work out for, and then the, um, long-term recovery liaison, and that's, they will build with DSS locally. And we have some local partners, we're looking at regionally, doing some volunteer coordination, uh, across the region, so you'll just go out. So, training rules are, are, are listed in that, and they get approved, they're gonna come out. So, and, and, and as many of those forces as, as we like, kind of, I did, I put the roles and responsibility out there, once they get approved, I'll, I'll send those out, so you can kind of figure out where you're a best fit, and be prepared to help, and then, um, and then we can always grow development from there. Those are the positions I kind of listed, and I can send this out. Uh, a new thing we added is a pace plan, so I, I have written one for this, this department in here, we need to have a primary way, an alternate, um, it's a fallback in an emergency. So, like, our radio plan right now, our primary radio communications is Viper. Our second right now is a, a eight-hundred backup, um, local network we have, and a VHF, um. This one is the, uh, when the MTD, MDTs are going out, there's a cellular radio network going on that, so if the Viper tower fell over tomorrow, we can use the cellular, commercial cellular network to do radio voice communications. And then we're working on improving this emergency, so, but, but that, what are the other things, radio communications, internet communications, you need to have the backup plans, but that's gonna be important, the county coop plan, a little, little more depth here.
And the dispatch, I don't know, but do you need copies of like the trains, if we did those, or, is that something you, I don't know, we keep, in, in staff files, on files, just now?
We, we had a county need to figure out how we're gonna manage that, so. Some counties, HR director manages it, some counties, the EM manages, sometimes it's departments heads after, and they all try to flood it, the finance at the end, that's not the one I recommend. It's the last thing Mr. Robertson's gonna want, it's more paid for at the end of this, but it is important that if you're on there, you're gonna have to need a certain minimal standard, but drink, look, many of us have already done it. So, coop, I call it the continental operation plan, we're gonna be developing that after this EOP, is rapid recovery, type of thing, like, what would, what would happen if the, you know, the courthouse got hit by a tornado tomorrow, you know, those kind of things? Where would we set up an operating? So, part of this, this process, and, um, a lot of the responders here, but if we have a large incident, we'll be reaching out for after-action reports. So, this is where I kind of judge how we did, and what we need to do different next time, so the next time we go in that planning period, get that planning period. Get that planning period, ten years from now, for the same similar event, or the next year, cause we did, do trade every year, how we make it better. So that's what these after actions will come out, what, what happened, what we did better, what we could suggest, those things. So, um, kind of the role of fire marshal and F M, fire marshal, that emergency management's the same, kind of have that same prevention. Type goals, um, training and exercise, we have several we're working on to get it out. Hopefully this year, we're gonna start doing several tabletop exercises in here to get hands on those things. And then capability projects, so I, I try to, especially with grant funding. Take these after actions and these I Ps and reach out, and that's what I use for document case or justifications for grant funding to field capability goals on. Be no mini, please let me know, so I can work on it. So, kind of, I'm gonna be way ahead of schedule, but E O Ps is that, that whole foundation and readiness. I P, like I said, is these, these plans for the operations. Paces, um, communication plan, I do suggest for each department to have their own, same thing with COO plan. And, um, the whole thing is a counter collaboration, communicating collaborates, but we all work together, all will find a set of goals. Any questions? I'd say it's a lot of alphabet, so.
So, right now, we don't have any kind of COO plan whatsoever?
I don't have one documented in emergency operation plan.
I mean unofficially even? Tornado hits courthouse, y'all guys, comes from, when the courthouse just got flooded out, you did something, right?
Yeah, we have some, 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 some rough plans here, we have some accessibility of, this being one, it being a flex office, we can, um. With, uh, Mr. Pierce's help, we, we can bring, you know, set.
I guess that's what I'm pointing out, is you just had a real life scenario where that happened, and what you did, it seems like.
Well, we discussed having court move over to the commissioner's chambers up on the second floor. Fortunately, it was a light court schedule. Logistically and from the security standpoint, I think the sheriff echoed, it would be a real challenge to take, uh, district court or superior court up to the, the second floor. You may have done that in the past, but, uh. Given the front steps versus the elevators, there are a lot of challenges here. We don't have a lot of, a lot of options. This is an ongoing.
And I guess it's like COO planning in my perception is, you know, you would develop a lot of functionality. The first level functionality is obviously what the, the immediate services you have to provide to the citizens, whether it's, you know, maybe your water is on or not, or. But then second level is something else, you get the court services, that seems like a level three, okay, if you have to suspend court for three weeks after tornado. Everybody's gonna feel unfit that they can't go to your service.
And that's why most of our, like.
But they're gonna be expecting to talk to you.
Is infrastructure, well, uh, to help talk to me, I got Wi-Fi, uh, shortly after, or we didn't have Wi-Fi in the head.
You have radios too now?
Yeah, I have a radio now, uh, even a Wi-Fi channel. Crystal just had installed a, is it a fifty thousand K W generator? Fifteen or fifty? Fifty, at the old courthouse. They've just done the initial testing, I mean, it was just planning, I would say less than ten days ago.
And we have two mobile offices, here I can roll out and set up.
Those procedures, the courthouse building gets white, you move to other buildings, if the whole area gets white. Then you're talking about, or you go on and trying to see if you can use the gymnasium and butt clint or something to function, you know? Okay, I'm just.
But potentially, we're even using this, we had to move county administration, this would be one of the first places we would look.
We had another scenario, I think it was working, Matthew, that had knocked out a county water system, we had a plan for something like that.
Was what, was twenty seventeen, is that right?
So part of this warehouse is, we're storing drinking water here too. We have racks, because we've had so many incidents, we still have the, the local area dipper. What's, I call it a water buffalo, but that's not the right term, that's the military term. The potable water supply.
And I can say with Hurricane Mabula, my home was on Punchbowl Road, she couldn't get off either end, and they had emergency monitors that were bringing cases of water to each household down that road, because they were unable to get, get off that road, um, for several days. So I, I'm assuming they were doing that throughout the county on areas that were a little more landlocked and unable to access, yeah.
But does, does the plan go down, I mean, I can get it's like.
Which isn't something you can plan ahead, you can't say, oh, well, this road's gonna be blocked up, and this road's gonna be, you can have a general plan of action as to how to, how to respond to something like that.
My point to that is like, yeah, you know, the general plan of action is like, yeah, we're gonna do this, we're, we're, but as far as. How do you get the infrastructure back up and going, do we have agreements with different contractors that learn about this?
That's one of the other reasons why we were looking at placing a wheel somewhere, yeah.
Yes.
Other than all three of them.
I think it was in November, we joined, what's the warren program that has the.
Emergency Water Warren, it's like a statewide emergency response group, um, you can call them question generators, pumps, uh. Even crews become assist to go get, you know, water systems, we're sitting in the back of. We do have two interconnects with, uh, Quinones County and Chihuahua County, um. They're not really gonna be able to feed us the water to provide for the whole county, in case they're, say, our work plane gets taken out or whatever. Both of them together won't be able to provide water to the county, I mean, they can, we get about three hundred gallons a minute out of it, you know, each county.
Which is again, to your point, we don't need to have all the wells around.
Anybody got any questions?
Is the, um, heating and air set up for the community center now?
September it goes in, right?
They are, they came by, they've done a few things, they came by today to assess the sand that they spread, to put the pads on, it's settling. And, um, the electrician called today stating that when he hears back from Dominion, he'll call me to let me know when they're gonna cut power to everything, so you can get in there and finish.
Put, yeah, the generators here.
Yeah. So it's just waiting on that?
We will be, we will use the gymnasium at the community center as a shelter with air conditioning, with heat, where here, it doesn't have either of those.
It does have heat.
What's that heat on? In the summer, yeah.
Definitely in the summer. But that's where we agree on it, yeah. Went for farming.
But this was a, nearly a quarter billion dollar grant that, uh, Mr. Tuckler worked on to help get the auxiliary power and the, uh, air conditioner.
Cause we, we don't really have a Brazil, Brazil urgency center, so the community center will, will kind of become that Brazil urgency center between us and here, so. And that, that's why we asked for the funding for the warehouse right now, to, to bring trucks and supplies in and try to get it back out, which is a, it's a nightmare. This one we can use the driveway up front for when deliveries come in, and then when we redistribute it, it'll go right up there, so. It would affect like their community and stuff, so.
So Sheriff, do you, do you have like a mutual aid agreement with other law enforcement agencies or anything?
We do, we do a firing, that's all.
Billy, when you're not using Viper, you have a alternative way of communicating, is the sheriff connected to send communication?
So that new public safety net, he's on it. We're trying to get some more V H F radios and channels, and we had that with a vendor, a, a system called the Net Tasked, which would, would let us essentially, even if the cell towers go out. We're, we're hoping to add that to where we can use our regular commercial cell phones and text over that. So it wouldn't be voice communication, but we're, we're looking at it, that's probably being an extra project.
But if all the cell towers go out?
So, so it, it does not work with, so it uses your regular cell phone, and, um, we're, we're, we're hoping to be able to have a, a system to where the old tower at the courthouse would, would have a repeater on it, so it would. Send like text messages on that standalone system, but, um, that's, that's kind of going an extra step. But, uh. Like courthouse is now on the radio system, you guys can communicate directly. Um, planning and zoning and buildings, we're, we're, we're on that network, especially since they're becoming a, a big part of our damage assessment team. And I have cash radios here, so like public utilities needed, we, we can get those out, but we do not. V H F are backup, or, or third backup, we only have very few radios, the fire department still kept them in their trucks. Um, story, do y'all have any V H F that you guys got?
Does the radios there would take, like, we'd have to do something to deploy the mics to get it used?
That, that is a pace and that's part of that pace plan we're growing up, we didn't have a pace plan.
So that's all the, the Viper system, I don't know enough anything about.
So, so Viper is an eight-hundred meter system that's state-owned for users?
Yeah, what I'm trying to get, yeah, for the, for regular radio, is that gonna function in all cases, it's not like, uh, with or without towers, there'll be, there'll be some functionality with that regardless? Of cell tower availability or something, what I'm getting at, Willie, is this, is there an option at all that we consider that is beyond means, like have some limited amount of set, of capability?
The Viper tower would still function without a cell tower, that's what this tower right here is, but if that tower is gone. Not very well.
So that's why we did the, it's called the Zello network, which is on the tablets, we can do radio traffic over the tablet, over cell towers, that's gonna use all the other towers right now. Um, commercial towers. And then the portables on the back tables all like lie aside from each other.
But the satellite phones are probably something we should think about.
So we are working on getting some satellite communications here. Kind of going down that, that long, as far as sending internet communications here, voice communications, we can do that here, we also have some, a ham radio station in here. I can also send emails over the ham radio to.
The satellites, I'm dealt this three years, but like three years ago, there was several plans available for various companies, where you could go in, if you knew, like say hurricane was coming. With three days notice, you could go in and basically pay them, it's a fairly good fee, but you could pay and say, we need five satellites for this emergency situation. And you pay them the premium, I, I think I got ten in Norfolk back in twenty, twenty-one or something. Five of them, and I think we paid to have them on for a month, we paid like twenty thousand dollars, but they worked like a gym, and when the emergency passed by, I told guys, I said, use the hell out of this, we're paying for them anyway. So, but, I mean, you could send text traffic, you could send everything over those, and it was totally independent of any wireless. And I guess I'm worried about us being a remote location if all the power fully went out, we haven't seen anything like that in years, the chances are minimal, but there is an option that you have those guys, but you did have to, you had to reserve the phones at least a week in advance in order to get them.
So we, we have a cash that we could request from the state, it is localized, it's all eastern.
Just Katrina thing, I was down the south when Katrina hit years ago, y'all, and it was devastating, there was nothing, and we had guys who went out with sleeping bags and Humvee trucks and all, went into Mississippi where everything was wiped out, there was nothing. And we literally had guys have to drive sixty miles to the closest point of calls and give updates, and drive back into the affected area. I guess I'm just thinking that we would ever really have something that bad here, I guess, hopefully everybody can find it and try and tell it was.
And, and I'll say at different levels, like when we've had these different emergency response things, Western and Z kind of revamped how everybody thinks about everything, so they are getting a lot more available statewide to have ready on the go when needed, but they're.
They're also a little bit prepared, so that's why we're.
That's right, yeah.
Satellite communication.
So I know the state emergency manager has been, or what is, uh, we'll write, what, emergency director?
Director.
Yeah, um, he has been talking about implementing things statewide based on what they've learned from Western and Z, so that incident where like you're cut off in the world, you're gonna have a state, like you said, rushing in trying to.
So what the news was yesterday, Chimney Rock just finally had a road up and back up to.
Yeah, yeah.
This week, this week, it's helping that long, that town is very isolated.
But they have stuck through it, and they have worked with relying on their neighbors, it's been amazing to listen to.
Not trying to put you aside, I'm just.
Oh, no, no, so you say this thing did have a program where every E O C has that phone? We, we have been looking at some options, cost effective and prepared as far as risk, the, um. With the, adding the Starlink, which we buy the equipment out, we turn it on when we need it, so we're not paying for it monthly, we can connect some radio stuff in it to get at least out from here to help.
Yeah, I think that's what, yeah.
That's a little more cost effective than the satellite. But it would still rely on information coming here and us relating that, and that's what that room right there is for. And with the Net Tasked, I don't have to buy equipment, we could repeat her up like we're hoping to. We can use our current phones that we have.
Right.
To send that message and then we'd be related. Yeah, so if it come in here, we could get message out, so.
Thank you, sorry to.
Oh, no, no.
Which realistically, if, if that tower gets wiped out by something, this building's also gone, so, let's just think about that.
Well, I'm more worried, so usually when it comes to the Viper network, I'm more worried about, uh, software or cyber issue, not a factual structure.
We got a whole nother issue if that's gone, cause this whole thing is gone. Yeah, where, where is the backup E O C?
Courthouse is.
Okay, there we go.
I don't know who's.
If this is wiped out, y'all, that's where we go.
That, that was another reason I was glad to hear y'all got a generator. I'm gonna hold on information real fast, but without them with hands on, bringing three hundred pages.
We're way ahead.
We're way ahead.
We are way ahead, um, so do we wanna do like a ten minute move around break and, um. Get ready for, we can move into the administrative updates in fairly, fairly early, and maybe get out of here earlier. All right, everybody, we have the recording that's live. Okay, so we have the recording that's live, we are gonna have a shift to the administrative updates in order, um, we're gonna go straight into public utilities. Um, and then move ahead into the rest of the agenda items afterwards, so I'm gonna turn to Brad. Good to go, Mr. Tower, okay, there we go.
We've got the handout, if you'd wanna start, did you make that?
Yes.
We've got the, the latest well sampling, uh, data, we also have the, uh, hacker test, uh, information, and it, it's still in a hand drawn graph. You don't have it, he's passing it out, uh, from Dr. Screw, Dr. Screw's gonna be with us at our next meeting on September, uh, seventeen. We've also got the well data from the five agricultural wells. There were two from Travis Cowper, two from Reggie Askew, and the other, I think, was Todd Lewis. And he'll, he'll help us get that one. And Friday last week was one year since we had the call from Senator Hannity telling us that we were number one in Florida, in the state of North Carolina, number six in the, in the United States, so. Unless, unless somebody do something.
No, um, for, for the report.
Don't worry, later, yeah, okay.
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm just wondering if Senator Hannity may be with us this evening.
Oh, great.
Well, I know it's one. I'm doing bad.
I guess I need to open my email.
It may have not been related, I'm gonna be honest, it may have not been related.
Surprise, surprise. At least that's a good surprise.
Just a few highlights on meter installation, we're ninety-seven percent complete, I think we have a hundred and forty-seven meters.
We got a hundred and forty-seven meters left.
Uh, left to go. On the hydraulic study, uh, side of things, uh, the site for the new three hundred thousand gallon elevated tank, uh, has been determined to be most appropriate. appropriate at the existing site, so as, as a part of that project, we'll be removing the hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank and putting the new one right there.
So, so, Brad, is that based upon trying to equalize the pressure distribution from the tank to all areas, or how, why, how's that, how'd they determine that to be optimal for hydraulic study?
Countywide, it would best serve, where it's at, hydraulically, it would best serve right over the state, if, on the hydraulic model.
So, I, I hear you say, I think, trying to interpret is that the lower pressures are more towards that area, that would raise the pressures, the lowest ones across the county.
Yeah, in Hovville, Gatesville, the, all of those areas, cause right now, right now, you know, on, like, say, Caspers Creek, they're getting their water all the way from Sunbury Tower.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, it would increase the pressure in Gatesville, Hovville.
Especially, yeah, especially when you do that directional bore on it.
So, what about the routing related to the tank too now?
Well, I'm gonna get to that, number one, uh, we've got the easement from Dominion Bow. We, 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 Dominion approved it, I think, three weeks ago.
That's surprising.
Yesterday, uh, and all parties have signed it, the, the routing that you had, uh, communicated recently about going across the field, turns out that's the same property that owns the land up on Robert Street, it's, it's Todd Lewis, and, and the route headed across the field runs through some wetlands, a canal, and where he has fields that are serviced with centerpoint irrigation.
That's, that's good, can we, can we make that somehow, can we give a little summary of that point, what you're describing, because I've probably had three or four people call me to point, there was a tune in line, and they built it specifically to get water to the, to the solid.
I'd, I'd be happy to do that, and, and, and the other piece, uh, in terms of, of countywide issues was that the town and the county received this money jointly, it comes all through Gates County, the, the two appropriations are to the county, but specifically says that the improvements we're making need to benefit the town of, of Gatesville, running that line to Ashton Lewis doesn't give Gatesville any benefit whatsoever, so I'd be happy to get a, a summary out, so even ask some talking points on that.
Just cause I've repeated, I get basically messages from people that have taken pictures of the hydrant there, and across there, and then whole long recitations about how we originally funded and grant to form that, and they originally called that area the industrial park.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I, I must have heard that from three different people.
And it was wetlands when they designated that, and they had to drain that.
That's the historical information I got from Bud Yor, it, it, that line was ran because they considered that an industrial area, so they ran a ten inch line.
I've talked to both of the guys, you know, both have talked to me about, yeah, what's here and there, most of the time it's similar story.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll get that to you.
No, not looking for just a preparer, nothing like that.
We're, we're prepared.
Thank you.
Uh, on the five farm wells, we get, there's the Askew Farm, one on one fifty-eight, one on Highway thirteen, the Calper Farms, one on Hackley Road, one on Shepherd Lane, and then another Lewis Farm, uh, Highway thirteen in, in South York, uh, four of the five wells, uh, had fairly high fluoride, the, the, the highway one fifty-eight for Mr. Askew was only at zero point seven, this was a single sample, um, Askew's farm at, uh, Highway thirteen was a two point two, Calper on Hackley Road was a one point nine, Calper at Shepherd Lane was two point six, and the Lewis one was one point seven, so, uh, it was, it was not news, it was necessarily beneficial to us, other than the note, the fluoride may be everywhere. Uh, we also have one more data point, since the last time we were together on, uh, seven sixteen, you'll see, uh, well one A, we, we experienced, uh, a spike at two point two three, uh, two was fairly consistent at zero point seven, uh, well three was at, at three, and, and we've had a, help me out with that damaged piece of equipment on your testing device, pipe that?
The pipe at the, uh, sampler room broke, so I've had, I, that actually came in late yesterday afternoon, so I have it now.
Oh, good.
I just hadn't had time to, uh, continue sampling.
So we've had a little bit of a, uh, lack on our, our, uh, immediate sampling.
But, can I?
You know, Jim, where did?
Um, we had well three down doing some work for about two weeks, um, and I've actually talked to Dr. Screw, you know, over this, the only reason I can give that well one spiked up is because well three was, uh, off for two weeks, but well two, which is in the middle of both of them, stayed consistently the same, so I don't really have a rhyme or reason why fluoride spiked, I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense, it just did, um, so.
Well, but it also appears that our, our, our more shallow screens on well one, it's, it's the, the top screen and the middle screen, well two is the middle screen, there's only one screen on well three, uh, Dr. Screw is, is looking into the, uh, possibility that, that that's the line at, at about, uh, two hundred and fifty feet below, uh, surface, where we might be able to get, uh, some additional water without the, the high, uh, floor, again, he's gonna be with us on the seventeenth, and he promised we'll have a polished up.
Yeah, I guess the question really is getting fluoride clean water at that level, but the question is, is what kind of production rates they can get out at that level?
Well, exactly.
And, and I guess, of course, the, uh, the D Q's gonna say what they'll permit you to take, and they might say if that's the black part, that, hey, you're not gonna pull out that much water, so that might be a concern, hopefully he can answer all those questions.
And Dr. Screw has posed the question that, that the board needs to be thinking about to, to give direction, is to what is our target, you know, the U P A is the, the four point oh maximum, the, the state's using the secondary at the two point oh, uh, but the state's also saying that their new recommendation, it's not yet codified, but their new recommendation is zero point seven.
U P A is recommended now one to one, so either way, we're way below.
Yeah, so, so I think if, if that's the target where the board thinks we should be, uh, focusing our efforts, we, we, I think when Dr. Screw's here on the seventeenth, we oughta really think about coming to a, a consensus of vote and agreement on, are we shooting for the zero point seven to one, or just to be below one?
Yeah, that was the question I was here to ask, which direction the board, did they want to just go under the secondary limit, or go to the state recommendation limit?
I think I've been pretty consistent about this whole, this whole time, is we should be below the standard at the state and the federal, we should be below that standard.
Yeah, I agree.
But I, I really think it's not an easy question here, because the truth is, is we're talking about quantity and quality, but, and the question is, is at the level where we can get fairly clean water, might we put us below, but ultimately, if we, he's already said, hey, you need to drill another well, that one well we had is a high production well, we're at risk with it, so if we're gonna produce a second well anyway to get the quantity, then the question is, are we gonna be able to get quantity at that level? Should we already be planning ahead towards?
Well, see, that's, that's the thing, you either go shallower and end up putting in more wells to meet your production, or just go deep wells and decide, hey, we just wanna go all over and just roll it.
I, I don't know the state.
I'm just, I'm on the second side of that, I've been that way the whole time, go for quantity as far as the well goes, and then we treat it, so that way we put exactly the, what we wanna put back in our well system.
Okay, well, we are developing the foundational basis for that, and one of the next exercises is the quality piece, there's a test, we call it a pilot test, is that what they're saying it is?
Yeah, right now, we're scheduled, um, the pilot test is actually in Chilwell County right now, um, I think it's supposed to run there for six weeks, then it's gonna go to...
Town of Weldon.
Pilot test is what, the pilot test?
R O pilot test, yeah, a pilot test.
For, for our existing well field, to see what is the quality of the water we're, we're dealing with, so that they could come up with recommendations on the design for an R O, uh, solution. We spent a couple of hours with the permitting section from D E Q in Raleigh, um, on, on a conference call, where they walked us through the, the permitting exercise, and one of the initial comments was, well, you know, there's not a single discharge permit in the Chilwell River at the present time, they're saying there never has been for, for wastewater, so that, that's gonna be one of our, uh, exercises we have to work through to see if we can, uh, define and qualify and, and meet their standards, and, and there's a component they call it environmental alternatives analysis that goes into that permit, and we'll probably be looking at things as, as much as connecting with Suffolk, if they've got capacity to sell water to us, to see if that makes more sense than, than putting this.
I just did this, I just did exactly what you're talking about, for our groundwater permit, exactly alternatives analysis, we had to consider like seven different, we had pipelines being built to Suffolk, pipelines that would connect the Franklin and Smithfield to give us up water, we had to come up with alternatives with building our own water treatment plant, but even then, you had discharge, production, waste disposal issues, and have to cost all of those things out, and show that taking the water out of the ground is your most optimal method, and honestly, that was painful to do, but it's not terribly hard to demonstrate that, yeah, to take it out of the ground is the best thing we can do, and have a small amount of discharge is not terrible, and they say they've never had discharge, or waste water discharged, but the reality is, the only thing we'll really discharge is fluoride, which is not a focus contaminant for most of the N P D E S permits that you get anywhere in the nation, fluoride's almost never something they routinely would test for in wastewater anyway, so, anyway, I'm glad to hear, it sounded like it's good news, we're generally going in the right direction.
Progress, he spent a few hours Monday at Camden County, looking at their R O plant, and he will have his production presentation tonight at the meeting with the slides and, and, and all that stuff, uh, but I think that was a very valuable, uh, visit for, for him to, to learn of their process.
Brad, you're more than welcome to come down, we'll show you our little R O package plan and our, one of our well systems, it's this lower flow than, than Gates County system, but you see, we're getting ready to replace it, it's been in place for almost twenty years, and we're getting ready to replace it, and just, it's a whole package, just pull it right out, the whole thing on a skid, with a forklift, and the left side, the next one in, connect all the pipes, pretty easy to do, we have a small discharge to a local creek, um, you know, certain amount where, you're welcome to come see that, the same guys that do the technology for Camden, does ours, they also do Smithfield, Virginia, and they do two others here.
Is that harm?
Huh?
Is that harm?
It's, uh, Inveco, I think it's, but they're the manufacturer, they're not the company that installs it, but they're the manufacturer of the equipment, but you're welcome to come see it anytime.
I see a field trip in this.
Yes, it's, really, what all of Osmosis is, it's a special thin membrane thing, and you put them, depending on how much you need to remove, like, the same amount of flow, if you don't have much fluoride, you might only have to have four of these filters run through, if it's a lot of fluoride, you might have to put in eight of these filters, basically based upon how much water you're pushing through and how contaminated it is, and then you pull the membranes, if you have pretty clean water like we do here, you don't have to clean the membrane filters at all, I do know that one place we had, we were replacing the membranes monthly, and it was ten thousand dollars a month for the membrane, so that was where they had a lot of really contaminants in the water, and these guys are telling me we got pretty clean water here, except for fluoride.
Well, getting back to the pilot program, I think around November-ish is when they should bring in a unit here and start running the pilot, I think they want to run it for two months, eight weeks, so have a better understanding of, you know, what it'll take to remove, welcome.
There's, you know, several technologies, I think that email I shared with y'all, the string, they have this bone char thing, but that unit, I mean, your guys would have to be changing out this stuff, this, it's really crushed, right, and you'd have to take it and move it in and out, and I think that's too much of a pain in the neck for a small organization to have to do, then another one is, is activated carbon, carbon filters, but it's the same thing, it filters and they can do the job, but you end up having to each one dispose of, you know, equivalent of a truckload of charcoal, and that seems just stupid, to get it to something, we have to do a whole bunch of extra labor and all makes it more expensive, but, anyway, I, I'm, I'm actually thrilled to hear this, that we're going there, cause I'm like Nathan, I think, I think we ultimately need to seriously look at, go ahead and treat, be prepared to treat, because even if we get clean to start with low flow, if we ever really start growing here.
Well, the, the pilot test will give us the data we need to know how to design that R O plant for what we're attempting to do, so.
And more importantly, what the discharge really gonna be.
Yeah, well, you know, our, our average daily flow is nine hundred thousand gallons, and our peak is about one point three, one point.
One point three, about one point three.
And they want us to, you know, go for a figure higher than that because of the, uh, discharge and.
What's the ratio of it, Nina?
Depends on the contaminants.
Yeah, depends on, I was looking at some, I know Camden, they're, they're permitted for seven hundred twenty thousand gallons a, a day, and they waste between two hundred fifty and three hundred thousand gallons.
But they're pulling a lot of salt, though.
Yeah, they're pulling a lot of salt, a whole lot of salt.
See, I think, I, for some reason, I could be wrong, I think we're, we're, our is a smaller facility, I think it's, uh, four hundred thousand or something a day, and we don't have ten thousand gallons to discharge, so, but you can see the water flowing, but the regulators say that we do, we don't even have to, we don't have to test their sample, so, I mean, state may have never permitted any kind of wastewater discharge on the Chilwell River Basin, which I understand, but this is not a wastewater plant, where you have leftover suspended solids, bacteria, it's.
And it's not like you discharge a lot of salt, that's, you discharge the fluoride.
But this is a wastewater discharge permit.
It is, it is.
And, and they're telling us that in terms of a blue string, we need to be looking at the Chilwell River, they don't believe we have any other appropriate, uh, s, s, blue line string, as they call it.
They, they don't wanna discharge to a zero fluoride string.
Anyway, we're, I think, making real big progress, he's got a, what'd you say, a control panel he got to put in today?
Yeah, for SCADA.
They, they wouldn't let us, and this is maybe a question for them at some point in time, but they, they wouldn't let us pump up our wastewater treatment plan.
We don't have the capacity.
We don't have the capacity. Well, it depends on the amount of play you got, really, but they probably don't wanna put it through there.
Yeah.
But we clean water, I mean, that's what.
Yeah, what?
I see, Joe Kowalski, was the pollution, is the solution to pollution.
I'll tell you what, they didn't want to hear that when we were on the phone.
You don't say that's a regulatory issue.
He's like, read the room.
We are, uh, making progress, and Brad has his PowerPoint, but we promised to let him get out of here a little early, so he can get, unless there's anything else you want to cover.
The, uh, the one thing that I would just kinda like to add, Brad, and you gotta answer this right now, if, um, if you wanna just kinda touch on it later on in the night or something, but, uh, how many known leaks do we have in the county at this point, um, and all that kinda stuff, I was just kinda, kinda, cause I know you're working on it, you're slowly working on all that.
I've actually contacted, been in contact with two contractors, six to eight weeks before they can get in here, um, they're just, everybody book slam up, everybody busy, um, unless it's considered an emergency, but.
Yeah, I get that, and I totally get that.
I'm trying to remember how many are on it, is it sixty something?
What leaks?
Yeah.
Major leaks, we have about, it's between eighteen and twenty, the rest are more like service line leaks and stuff like that, but the, the big main line leaks is about eighteen or twelve.
If you're doing one type of procurement, so that's a problem, but, I mean, you know, we have an annual contract for a contractor, a company called Phaseline, they just have a couple of them, and we do an annual contract, and so we can call them out, it's pretty routine, once you split the contract, they respond within two hours of any break that we send them to, we try not to send them up thinking of the worst ones.
Well, I, I, I have a Viretech and, uh, Ralph Lodge, um, on contract with that, but they only respond to emergencies only.
Really?
Um, and I can schedule work, but that's for the six to eight weeks, and, you know, schedule, schedule leak repairs, but that, they'll show up, you know, within twelve hours or sooner, depending on the type of emergency, but, yeah, I have those, we have those on contract, those.
Also, a company that services Portsmouth, I can't think of the name of them, the city of Portsmouth up in Virginia, is now going to do almost a hundred percent of their repair work done by contract, and I was just talking to them on the phone this morning, cause I'm supposed to be one of their employees, and, uh, cause he, he's, he's already looked, cause he's used to doing the work, and he wants to go somewhere where he actually is gonna do the work, but they were saying that their guy was real responsive, that, you know, we commiserated with him, and he's like, yeah, these guys show up, he says, right away, he says, we call them, but they've got a recurring contract, that's the key, and that's the thing, is if you're doing it one time, then you're kinda low priority, if y'all, I'm not saying they're letter recurring contract, but if you do, you can put in there, and they're pretty responsive, two hours, routine response within sixteen or something, but.
You got that thought as well, is, you know, if you get twenty major leaks, and how many major leaks can you fix a leak, right, and so.
Well, if I'm fully, yeah, fully staffed, I could, you know, three or four, something like that.
Yeah, see, three or four weeks, so if it takes a few weeks for them to get out, you can say, okay, I'm gonna save these for these guys over here, get that contracted out for them to come out and do it, you work on these over here, so that way when there are other things that you can do later. Get that contracted out for them to come out and do it, you can work on these over here so that way when there are other things that you can do later on, they do come out. That way you kind of move, move things along to kind of help out with that one.
That's what we've been doing, we've been doing a service line leaks and we've done a couple on one fifty eight, the one that you text me about.
I got another one I can text you about.
Well, the other thing too is sticking in here, so if you have, you do it in four weeks and you have a backlog of how many right now?
Well, he's got twenty major ones.
Yeah. So I'm saying if you're doing four weeks, that means in five weeks you catch up, but that's assuming you don't have any new ones.
Anything.
You're having to develop, right? He fixes pressure, he comes up in here.
And he said that was if, he was full staffed.
He's a chief of staff in L A and another one with a medical emergency, so.
What are you doing with these guys, Brad? He's working a lot on getting a compound.
That's right, yeah.
He needs a light for later.
He's been juggling a lot with a very limited staff.
He's got a tiger by the tail, but he's been working on it. Cause I think the leaks were a whole lot more than that when you first got started.
Yeah, they were a whole lot more.
A whole lot more than that.
Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, we'll see in six.
See you in six.
We will move into the strategic planning, circle back up to the top and work our way down this administrative update list.
And I suggested to the chair after your, your last meeting, was that just a while, I guess it was? Seems like it was six months ago.
It really does.
As, as we've talked about the planning process, the, uh, establishing the priorities to have a, a program that we can front, put in front of Sandra Hennig or anybody in the general assembly. Uh, we've been searching out some examples, one fairly close by that was recently presented in twenty twenty five was Granville County. I've got a, a paper copy in your, in your book, I think we've got a digital that Renee has sent out. Sampson County just released, they're, and they're calling theirs an economic development strategic plan. They just released theirs, uh, a week ago yesterday. And they've got, they, they've recorded it, both the session with the commissioners and the program they did publicly. They've sent us the two links, I've not had a chance to, yeah, we'll send those out, uh, after today's meeting, I just got them yesterday afternoon. But I think those will give you good food for thought for the, uh, type of process and engagement we might want to do. Uh, and I've suggested to the, the chair that the school of government has a one day class on strategic planning. Primarily geared toward, um, city and county managers. But we've checked with the, uh, school of government and, and we, we've identified a few key folks, department at level. Like this lady next to me, she has very little on her plate next week. And I, and I, and I.
That's not true.
And I've met her with, with Patrice and, and Lisa and Willie and a few others. And, and I, I really think this would give us some in-house horsepower to help with the logistics and the, uh, effort that we'll, uh, need to undertake as we launch one of these things. Uh, but the Granville, uh, plan is, is very thorough, it covers any number of things, including educational, uh, needs if we're going to go for school, uh, construction. And, uh, I, I would just encourage you to, that these are, these are very professional, well-done, uh, projects. And if we're going to go to, whether it's Golden Leaf or to the general assembly, we need to have something that really catches their attention.
I, I agree, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the, all the above approach, when as far as people are going to go to. The biggest thing is I want something that, uh, we as a county can be proud of when we go up there and shake that in front of them and say, we, we need a hundred million dollars so we can do all this stuff. Here you go, and how can we get it over the next so many timeframe?
And I will be traveling to Granville County in the next few weeks to meet with a couple of them there, just to discuss the process that they went through with coming up with their, with the plan and different, um, more resources they use, that type of thing, um, as they're developing theirs.
God, I very much want to be a part of this, uh, project plan, uh, brought to ten, uh.
We can get you registered. I'll ask the P I O to help you.
Newly appointed, may I have?
Oh, that's something, that knows you the man.
Thanks for lunch? All right, I'm going to talk to payroll one of them.
On, you'll be pulled a deferred comp plan.
Again, I, I think it's, it's going to be time well spent. Can I jump to the next item on this?
Yes, sir.
I emailed everybody a hard copy or a digital copy of the regional jail study. And I wanted to give you all a hard copy of the email that I sent out at seven o'clock, uh, this morning. That summarizes some of the, the financials. The good folks at, uh, A D J would really like us to be their partner for a price. And, and, and the buy-in is the low, low, uh, cost of two point seven million dollars. That's if Chawan goes with us, that's if we go on our own, it goes up.
Use A D J.
I'm from this jail.
Use an acronym, man, you always.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
I love a low cost, isn't it?
Gates County's got the most efficient well-oiled shed we would possibly have. And, uh, number one, the sheriff keeps the crime rate down.
Right.
And, and so we have fewer pre-trial detainees. Uh, but to have to invest in a, uh, uh, new facility would just be, well, the, the original calculation they made for Washington County and Gates and Chawan's a mere forty million off. And that doesn't include the architect fee, that's just the construction. Again, those are in today's dollars and by the time they had it permitted, who knows? What might be. Uh, but, but just the estimated, uh, annual operating cost, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Last year, the sheriff, I only had numbers through May this morning when I looked it up, but he probably didn't spend just a little over two hundred thousand last year. And that's on housing and medical, uh, for the inmates. And you can see from F Y twenty-one, I mean, he, he's, I mean, twenty-four was a bit of a blip, three hundred and sixty-six thousand. Uh, but the thought of, uh, going in in twenty-six and over A D J at seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars plus a hundred thousand dollar. That includes the hundred thousand dollar debt service annual payment. Because they, they want you to buy in and pay for all their past sins in terms of, of debt obligations historically, and then help them pay the bill going forward on that mortgage. It just, you know, and, and unless the sheriff really gets excited about wanting to have a jail, uh, I, I just, he's got the best of all worlds. As, as long as he can manage those relationships with the surrounding counties who seem to work with him real well.
So what happens if, uh, Chawan has to think, hey, we want to build this jail?
Well, well, Pasquattanck already has the jail.
With Chawan, Washington?
Yeah, Chawan, Washington.
I spoke with Kevin Howard, the Chawan manager last night. He doesn't believe that, that Washington's really in a mood to build a jail and certainly not willing to, to probably go the regional route. If I had to speculate, I think Chawan's going to look to negotiate a better deal with, with Pasquattanck. See how many years they can spread that buy-in, you know, can they stretch it possibly to ten? Back when we, uh, you know, we started with the, uh, the, the sweet five and then I added to that the sweet and sour seven. These, these other counties have a much larger jail, uh, responsibility. Over in, well, well Camden's only, Camden is double us, Camden's jail expenses, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, and that was in twenty-four. Jones County, who was in our benchmark list, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, maybe the same population, around ten thousand, I don't know what's happening.
Our sheriff's better than.
That, that's gotta be the thing, I mean, y'all need to nominate him for some kind of an award. Washington County is spending over a million dollars a year running its own jail facility. Uh, and, and these numbers are now a year and a half old. Brooklands is spending three quarters of a million and Chawan is spending a million and twenty-eight thousand. Those were all in the, the twenty-four fiscal year. So for, for us to buy in to one of those high-cost, uh, long-term arrangements, I, I just think we really need to think about that. And again, I, I just, the benefit of, of this study, I, I think is to be able to justify to your citizens, you're saving them a ton of money. By not creating the overhead, the additional staff, the additional liability, uh, providing healthcare, having food service or a kitchen.
Even if it doubles, if our costs double. It's a mystical way to better.
It's still more driscally responsible to keep doing what we're doing.
I have, uh, four right now in Almody Street, I have two in Northham County, and I have two in Hurricanee. So it's not, not talking a lot of the inmates.
Yeah.
On a, on a high, high form, when I'm looking at a monthly bill ranging twenty, twenty-one, two, that's high. High, a lot of times up, yeah, we'll handle it, probably fifteen or less, twelve, fifteen thousand a month, that's for all of them, that's for everybody.
So, I mean, really, if you think, uh, we, we need better off to buy a nice, paying, transport, paying, uh, industry.
Well, I think Sheriff was talking about that.
And my only concern is, and then this is just, you know, just talking, is that, okay, we, we tell them, hey, appreciate the offer, but thanks for no thanks. Will they?
Be as available as they are now.
Yeah, not as available as they are now.
Or as cost efficient as they are now.
But even if they go.
You're right, so how extreme that you behind the back, you smile like sure, they're probably.
Yeah, even if they, I think, were we at seventy-six?
Cause I had no means saying, yeah, we are, I'm just saying.
What's the daily rate?
I think it's, uh, seventy to seventy-five at A D J, in Northham County, twelve to four dollars a night.
Even if they went to a hundred dollars a day.
If they went to eighty, you know, and double would still be, yeah, money's good, yeah.
What other problems come up with this, though, Sheriff? What other problems are associated with this whole situation for you?
Well, the only problem is the logistics of getting everybody back on court days, say like next week we got three courts, we got six inmates to bring back. I've got inmates of all, except for prison law, they have to come back, only one. Uh, D O C will bring the other back with another prison. But on court days, I'm running, next week I got, I'll have four to get picked up from A D J, three for, and then I got to send that same transport or another transport to Northham County to pick up two. And on the way back, we got to pick up one from Hurricanee, I'd steal everything.
So, so the reality is advocated for you to be fair, I mean, quite frankly, when it comes to staffing, even if we pay, even if we pay for extra body to help you manage with the transport prisoners. We still are way better off by supporting our, sure, not to mention the days when they're not home, people, we got more law enforcement available.
And ultimately, it comes to the question too, like, how does the sheriff feel in regards to the buy-in with us financing out of the equation, like?
You might want to get a copy of that, so next time you come around, crash for additional funding.
Say, here's where I saved y'all a million, here's where I saved you a million dollars. And here's where I saved you a million bucks.
I think, I think we've saved a lot. And, uh, the, the relationship that we have now with, with the jails, it ain't always been like that.
Right.
Cause I, when I first started, we couldn't get anybody A D J.
Really?
It would take.
Just didn't like us, what, what do we?
The previous administration screwed that up for me. So it took a long time for me to get things back on the even keel. And then pretty much, we make a call, hey, that one can you take? And we always do that, we never show up for jail, and they got an inmate, we always call, ask, hey, can you take?
It's your jail, yeah, yeah.
And there have been times we've had to call around to the few different places.
Biggest issue for us is dealing with a female inmate, it's really, really hard to get someone, thank goodness, A D J has an alternative supply. And they've got, they've got a major problem on Hurricanee, the jail structure itself, it had leaks, they've got a COVID outbreak, they've got everybody, they're not taking inmates from anywhere right now, so. And they've been, they've been good workers up, up to a point, you know, um, when they, we're just, we're just a man in space.
I don't think they have another upkeep of a building, jailer and staff.
When you hear the horror stories that I, that I hear from inmates that be transferred, what's going on in the jail? The jailers and inmates, um, you're part of it.
Yeah, they've got twenty-four hours a day to try to figure out how to tear it up. And, and they do a good job.
You got, you got, you got jailers that are, that are, that inmates will cash out in jailers for cigarettes and, and drugs. Cigarette, forty bucks, forty, forty bucks for a cigarette. I'm just, I'm just glad we got a good working relationship with the jailers and, and usually I don't, I don't have a problem. Northampton is a little stretch to get to, Sheriff Jack Smith never turns me away. So, and, and the only problem that we have, the worst problem we have, is we have an inmate that won't behave, Tim Hammond. And at that point, I'm not going to burn any bridges, I'm leaving now, because in the next one, Carol, they're, they're going to say nothing.
Right.
So I've had to do that multiple times, I had one, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, would not behave at Almody Street Jail. I had to move him to Northampton, we're a lot threatened, and when he got back to the office, said, if you don't behave, he and I, probably, you're going to Central Prison, you know what he said? That's where I look the guy, so what do you do with somebody like that?
You send him to Central Prison?
Turn, turn right back on the road.
You lowered him on.
They, they could come all the way.
And another thing to deal with that, that you guys might realize is when, when we have an inmate that goes in to jail and they have a medical emergency. Comes back, comes back to us. So, uh, I've got one right now, I've already made a call to a district court judge, he's sitting on a fifteen thousand loss secured bond, he's got heart issues. We had to make a flying trip over there the other day, cause there's a human in the A field. They canceled us while we went right, they got him back stable, come back, but he's scheduled to have surgery in October for the fibrillator put in, I'm not paying for that.
So.
What's he, what's he in jail for?
Uh, pleaded a looney, assault or gun petition, he bit somebody with, with stormy screen, bit somebody and fought over a rescue squad unit. It's Williamson, he's not, not a local. So fifteen thousand dollars secured bond, all I can do is push the button and I'm an unsecured bond, but he'll get a fifteen thousand dollar unsecured bond. So if you don't show up the next time, then he gets hammered. But I'm, I'm not taking him out until I absolutely have to, but I've had to do that several times. Because if he, if he goes in and is admitted, then one of my deputies sit with him twenty-four seven.
So see, you teach us, I know this is kind of tough, but, so a guy like that, how often does a guy for the charges that he's facing get time served? What I'm trying to ask you is, is keep him in jail till the end.
A lot of times they get there.
That's what I'm saying, so you keep him in jail till almost time for surgery, releasing on personal recognizance, so he goes to court, he gets out of his heart thing, he's gonna probably get time served anyway. So he's gotten his punishment for his crime? Yeah, I can't, I'm too glad I'm not you.
So as of now, though.
I think we're starting still a little early, you know, cause we started a little early, so.
We can move to the next and then skip back to her whenever she arrives, yeah.
Well, well, now that we handled the easy one with the, with the jail study, I want to talk to you a little bit about the schools. And this is a multi-pronged, uh, discussion. Starting with the announcement that went out about the school lunch program, and I know I had several, the seventy screen grabs. And, and, and again, maybe the absence of a P I O or whatever over there is just, that, that could have been handled, I think, in a less confusing manner. And, and a little bit more gracious manner, given the commissioners funded them, I think, exactly at the level they were asking, uh, for it. And they did put out an, an additional, uh, piece. But, but I've yet to be able to get a conversation with the superintendent and the school finance officer about how to allocate these funds. On current expense, we have an arrangement where the county provides the, the current expense money, a twelve. On current expense, we have an arrangement where the county provides the, the current expense money, a twelfth every month. Because that helps us from a cash flow standpoint, because most of our taxes don't come in till right after the first, first of the year. So they get an equal portion every month. I think the capital outlay, do you see it goes out twice a year?
You just send the first part of the year, half of it, and then about midway to the year, the other half, unless something comes up that they want to get in purpose.
So what's your concern, though, I guess?
Well.
I'm trying to understand, because to me, it seems like.
I'm layering a cake.
Okay.
I'm, I'll, I'll wait till the.
My mind accepts, I'm like, bottom up front and tell me why.
I'm sorry, I feel there needs to be some buildup here. Um, the, the other item I've communicated with the superintendent about is, we've discussed, and I think have come to a consensus, that the Article forty-six quarter cent sales tax initiative, which has to be voter-approved, is a good idea. If you pledge all or a portion of the money to the schools, that needs to be decided. And I've, I've talked with, I, I finally talked to, to, uh, Dr. Williams once on the telephone, real brief about it. But we really need to start having some serious discussion about how to roll this thing out, uh, to get all of our paperwork to the Board of Elections, because they've got to put together the ballot, we're talking for March, if you want to have it on the, the primary ballot, and the, uh, the communication needs to be strong. But now I'm going to get to the big one. The school has, how many lottery projects?
They got four school projects going on, right?
So they've got two that were started back in twenty-twenty-two, the high school and, and Gatesville Elementary, and those have been clicking along just fine. But they've got, uh, uh, recently some needs-based money that they're using to renovate Buckland and, uh, T S Cooper. And as is normal there, their course, they ask, whenever they're trying to draw money down to, to pay their vendors, to have the county sign off on it, uh, so they can submit it to, uh, Raleigh, which occurred July twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, a month ago. And we immediately were copied on an email from the Department of Public Instruction, the group that, uh, does school planning. And, uh, and I'm going to give you this to take over and smoke over. But basically, uh, the gentleman said, because we got two different emails. He said, with regard to the needs-based funding request for Buckland and T S Cooper, design documents for these projects are still under review. And and for them to do construction, they have to have approval from, from Raleigh, because they're spending state money. He goes on to say, we are awaiting responses from designers, uh, back to the school planning, uh, for review documents. As such, no further funding for construction of these projects can be made until design review has been completed and certificates of review issued. Well, I immediately sent an email to, uh, Dr. Williams, asking to talk about what is the impact for, for Gates County. We are a pass through. The way that lottery funding is set up, the money, when it comes time to spend, it has to flow through our books. The county writes the check, but only after the work's been performed and certified that it was completed. But you're not supposed to start the work until you've got a.
Some might would think that you're gonna force, try to force the issue, we can't close this because I've spent the money, or it doesn't work. Has been brought up in the public, and you already are locked with those two projects.
The, the, the concerning thing is, is that for these two projects, one, one invoice is almost nine hundred thousand, the other invoice is about six hundred. We got about a million and a half dollars of work that's been done, that the contractors have invoiced for. There's got to be contractors and subs, uh, wondering when they're going to get paid. Well, William and I got on the phone, uh, this week again, for about the third time, with the gentleman and D P I. They're not going to make the, the, they've missed the July payment cycle, they've missed the August payment cycle. The, the next payment cycle is like September twenty-fifth. I don't know how many months these contractors can go. Cash flow-wise, sitting on one point four, one point five million dollars of Volkswagen or Bell. And we had some issues early on with the high school in, in Gatesville, you know, before William and I joined, you know, Gates County. Your, your finance officer was vacant, your manager was vacant, and, and Marie Roundtree was the one trying to keep everything together. And all the contractors found out who Marie was, they started sending her the demands for payment and the invoices when it hadn't been reviewed by the schools, hadn't been approved by the architect. And it wasn't until really William got here that we got, got the flow, uh, corrected on that. But in, in my view, this is inexcusable, and I've been begging Dr. Williams to get me an answer to.
May I go through their chair instead of the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Through what?
Oh, no. I just dropped an email to Sally.
How do they get a permit? Because you can't get a permit to do the work unless it's approved by the state.
You can't approve a permit.
You can't get a building permit unless it's approved by the state.
The department of law offices approve. Construction permits, if they're planned.
I think if you do a plan here, you get an offer of certificate of review, basically saying we reviewed this.
I agree with it.
Yeah. Because especially I am Ted Hilton, the D P I guy. I said, well, with my understanding, you don't have.
In your absence, you have to all grow.
Those who don't agree with us, you're looking at, and you want to change something. Let me, they got stopped and turned, or me doing. And he said, probably not. I said, with possibility, if could. He said, yeah, there's a possibility.
Because it depends on who gave him the, the directions to proceed. If he's proceeding on his own will, then it's his problem.
Yes.
But if, if the school gave him directions for proceeding, it's the school's problem.
Yes.
Well, the state has taken the position that the contractor's at risk, because they, but, but I think the school has a hand in this, too. I said.
Well, contracting one-on-one is, you don't move forward unless you got, so it's perceived.
Yep, exactly. So was it, so the thing is, uh, help me make sure I understand this. So the payments are theoretically, the invoices are approved from the school system, saying, yes, this work was being completed. It comes to our finance office for payment.
Well, he signs the school board and their, their maintenance personnel, they sign off the sheet. He fills out a form that has to be sent to D P I, which has to have both chairman.
And that's in the back of your head.
So you're sending, so has D P I sent any reimbursements for the construction?
For, well, actually, that's one of those statements that Steve kind of got on his high horse when I was talking to him the other day. That they've paid some of the construction before. I said, I know they did. But I think they did it accidentally, because I was not scheduled to get payment. And when I got payment in, I had about sixty thousand dollars more than I was supposed to. And I went digging through my paperwork, I found one for Buckland. Then they had already told me they weren't going to pay until they got the paperwork in. They ended up sending me anything. So I think somebody, that made a mistake, released that. But these other two, the big ones, they put a hole in them and said, no, we're not paying these until we get the certificate of review.
Well, I, I have the, the board member samples from Gates High School and, and El, and the, and the Gatesville Elementary. And on the form, they, they denoted that Pinnacle Architects is the design firm, A R Chessens is the general contractor. On Buckland and, um, T S Cooper, those lines are blank. Now, now, there's, there was a construction trailer out there with A R Chessen in both facilities. But for whatever reason, they've left that in. I wonder, do we have, do they have valid contracts with A R Chessen? I don't know.
I heard the call.
There's clusters.
Well, yeah.
No, I know exactly.
I, I, I reached out to Dr. Williams a week ago, and I, I explained to him that I have this meeting coming up. And I wanted to get this resolved so it wasn't an issue. And it's been crickets. And, uh, and, you know, so, so again, I, I, I can't sit on this. I, I really need y'all to understand.
I can tell you, A R Chessen definitely did work at Buckland and T S Cooper. I mean, they at least changed the kitchen range hoods, because we just did the inspection.
Okay.
Now, I think they were doing other work there, too, about, you know, they replaced the kitchen.
Well, the work stopped on July twenty-fifth. They, they took their cruise.
You want to call?
But also, just a little insight, but also a little insight of this. I think, for some reason, along the way, we've had a miscommunication, because when I got the letter from there, I read it saying, you didn't have the paperwork you needed. So I talked to Steve Tubal. He was under pressure that the invoices he turned in didn't have signatures on it. He said, I saw, I made a mistake, I'm getting them revised, I'm sending them in. Wait, that's not what the letter said. Scott and I called him, just Hilton talking about it, and he basically said, they don't have a certificate of review. I said, well, that's not signed, a signed invoice. He said, no, that's just proceeding. So when I called Steve again, I said, based on the, uh, email you got, he's talking about a certificate of review, not the signed invoices. I think you need to talk to him. So I finally got him to admit the other day, he finally called, talked, and called and talked to him. I think he's on board now, understanding what our concern is. Now, how it goes forward, I'm not sure.
It's just if, if word gets out on the street that contractors aren't being paid.
That's gonna be a problem.
And, and I just don't want the word to be out with the counties dragging its feet, because.
Well, yeah, but there's a two.
Because we're the ones that cut the checks. But we only cut the checks after the cash is in our bank from the state.
Right. So what's the appropriate action for us to take? Because one is, we want to be responsible. We want to get reputation, Gates County doesn't pay their darn bills. But at the same time, we don't want to take heat, or misbehavior, I'll call it, by other agencies that work within the county. And if they didn't go and get their approvals, we shouldn't be trying to cover or, or, you know, make them not look bad if they've screwed up and have done stuff they shouldn't. And this, this is clearly a case of where somebody's charged forward when they shouldn't have. Trying to force an agenda, maybe? I don't know.
I mean, we, we called repeatedly, trying to, to get this thing resolved at the administrative level. There's just not been any cooperation. And I don't know how to explain that one. I can't get returned emails from the superintendent.
I would, Madam Chair, email their Madam Chair. And then, if you don't hear back from them promptly, you know, we can have Mr. Pickdaw contact.
Yes, I agree. I'm gonna get her a little while to respond, and if it's not a timely response, which to me would be by tomorrow morning, um, then we'll look at it and report.
I, I don't think, I, I, for me, I'm different. I'm different. Everybody else, I realize that, but I believe we're very bold on warrants. I'd call her on the phone. If they don't respond, I'd call Barry Williams.
Well, I would probably call Sally.
Honestly, I, I feel like it's to the point where we now need to take a public position, saying, we are now demanding action by the school board to resolve the issue as payments are not being made. I, I really do. I think it's important that they come out and stand and work strongly.
If I have not heard back from her by the time we break, then I will get her a call.
I would not want to say payments not being made. That sounds like we're not paying them, right? Funds are not being released.
By the state.
I can't pay.
Funds are not being released by the state. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
I think we ought to come out with a statement that says that, so that it's a clear thing, A R Chessen or somebody else, hell, you're a contractor. If you start hearing, well, you work against me, you don't get paid.
Exactly.
We want to make sure it's not people perceive the, the county government. And we also, I'm not interested in burning anybody down, but if they need to go take action, whoever at the school, they need to get on the force and go do it.
Well, and the other thing I failed to mention is I've talked to both Barry and, and Steve Harrow about the fact that we got dinged on the audit this year for twenty-four because we didn't have the lottery annual report included in our, uh, paperwork for the auditors. And we rely on the, the school system to describe the projects, the percentage completion, how they're spending the money. All we can do is verify that the money's been paid and that it was reimbursed by the, by the state. So we, we've been trying to say to those fellows, we've really got to have that report, because we're going gangbusters on, on getting audited out earlier this year.
This is going to come out publicly. Yeah, that's what's going to happen, is somebody's going to go and draw a fit. If it's Chessen or somebody else, or saying, hey, I'm not getting my money. And they have a right. I mean, if I was there, I'd be filing for late fees and all kinds of stuff immediately.
Well, again, this is not what I was hoping to have to share with the board, because since I couldn't get response in thirty days, y'all all need to know collectively. And I wanted to have it in a conversation, not just a, an email.
Well, we've sent an email, and I just sent a text, because I know some people don't check emails every day. So email and a text. If I don't hear from her by the time we break before going across town, I'll try to go. Fair, I can call her and transfer.
Dr. Williams and I used to talk every week, once or twice a week, you know, very good communication going on. I haven't heard from that man over three months. And I got, I got a known little issue that.
I was gonna say.
I'm not hearing anything back from him, too.
This might be, is that what you were talking to me about? I was gonna say, go ahead and bring that up, if not, after.
And, and, and here he is. I'm really concerned, man, because they say my debt is for security at Baltimore, forty bucks out of town. But the, the ten ninety-nine everybody last year, not taking any taxes. I, I've been working on this thing for, for several months, trying to get them to redo, redo something where the tax law take that, because I had, had guys, they, they got dinged for six hundred bucks.
Right, yeah.
They won't work with me on that. They said, if they don't, we're not going to have security at football games. So we've got to come up with a plan where you got security, and the guys are still getting paid, but they're not getting paid. Just saying that they can't do it the way they used to do. They got to do it the same way they do it. There's something else going on over there.
We listen to the question, if, if, if this was April, instead of August, we could talk about, okay, well, we're going to debit or line item to pay for the sheriff's department security at schools. We'll have that as a separate line item or something. Or we could pay, pay for the services and do the tax part.
And then they have to pay, they can't imagine.
Right. Or we just take that out of their budget, delete from their budget.
You got a football game Friday night, you want to have four guys out there working.
Who we playing?
Uh, Pasquattane.
Well, that won't be as bad. It's not for a team or anything.
Well, at least they're in a jail where you take the.
Pasquattane, um, well, okay, we'll see.
So you talk to the guy about another thirty days before A R Chessen calls somebody. Because that's, that's bill, uh, that's July third bill, so this is July bill. So they're, they're, they're expecting to be paid.
Yeah, by two or three months, they'll start calling.
Yeah, you got it by the authority.
Really?
Well, the September cycle will be around the twenty-fifth or so.
We pay our gas with the fourteen day period. No, you know, we do, except for you, your school, you're not a school system.
You owe me four million dollars.
That's a school system. I'm talking about the county government, school system, but must be all school systems going out and paying their bills?
And I'm on the side.
Yeah, I would say if we wanted.
And I do get the money, chop ours into our rain. And to have a chair.
Sure, I got it.
Right, see, that's what, yeah.
Because this is just a conversation.
Yeah, if we want to take a break, but we know this is the issue, we're going to wait to hear back, we'll move forward. I'll try to have an update by tomorrow. But, um, we have our next person, they'll be coming in for the, um, animal control PETA discussion. Um, just kind of break until she gets here, if anybody needs to move around.
Well, it was just a week ago or less, we had a chance to have a introduction for Rachel Bellis with the chair and with Lauren Perry and with Mr. Parker, the animal control officer. She had written an email, uh, about a week ago or so, maybe two, indicating she wanted to have a conversation with the board.
Yeah, no, so we, um, we met in the, is it the library?
We called at the library.
The library at the historic courthouse down there. And like I said, it was, it was just a few of us. But she was gonna take the opportunity to share what she shared with us that day here with you all, um, so that we could kind of decide which direction to go with the conversation, um, from here. So you want to go ahead and share?
Yeah, sure, okay. Well, um, I don't know if, if everyone's familiar with PETA's work, um, but we've been helping animals and residents in Gates County and other counties in northeastern North Carolina for more than twenty years with, um, free spay neuter, dog houses, flea prevention, veterinary care. We pick up animals, um, for surrender. We are available twenty-four seven for animal emergencies. And in, you know, in twenty eighteen, uh, we did try to work with the then Board of Commissioners to pass an ordinance that addressed, um, continuous training of dogs. Um, it did not go the way we, way we wanted, but that was sort of brought about by a dog who was chained outside twenty-four seven and who ended up dying of heat stroke. And that was on Roundtree Lane. And then that sort of prompted our, you know, trying to get the Board of Commissioners to pass an ordinance. And so after that, we sort of, you know, stopped, and we started focusing on other counties, and it didn't really seem to be the time. And so we reached out initially, um, to Scott and Commissioner Forsyth, is not here, he said. Because of the case in Cora Peak that we've been dealing with for so many years, and we were hoping to maybe work with animal control and to see, like, what could be done. And so that's when we met, um, about a week or so ago. And Emily was kind enough to join the conversation, and it kind of turned into, okay, so if animal control can't address the situation that has been going on for so many years of nickel whack. okay, so if animal control can't address the situation that has been going on for so many years of nickel-waxed and these chained dogs and these animals, because of the current ordinance, is there something that we could do to strengthen the ordinance, to give more teeth, to allow animal control to improve animal welfare in the county? Um, and, you know, I brought along, it's not just that one address, you know, there are others within the county, and I brought along some photos, and I could, if you wanted to, I could tell you, um, you know, about a couple addresses that we have, um, but it's, you know, I, I think in twenty eighteen, when we, I think we had a lot of the county commissioners support, what we didn't do, what we should have done, was reach out to the hunters. And when they came, when it came to kind of vote to see if this was something that they wanted to really look at, we had a sea of orange vests come out, and, um, so, so I think moving fo- what, what we have done since then, moving forward, is we've really tried to get, if there's a hunting community, if they're organized and vocal, which they generally are, we've tried to really get in front of them and to say, hey, this is, we're not coming after you, we can exempt you, which is what we did with the Halifax County ordinance. And we didn't have one hunter come out, it was the dog fighters that came out to oppose the chaining ban, it wasn't the hunters. And so it's kind of like, we would love to have a conversation, obviously with you, you are the, the body that votes on, passes these ordinances, but if there are people in the community that would oppose us, we kind of just wanna get in front of them and say, this is what we're trying to do, don't you do this to your dog, this is who we're trying to protect. And, um, so, yeah, so that's what we're hoping to-
Yeah, actually, Jen, I hear you've got reports to share, I think it'd be appropriate to-
Sure, okay, well, I, um, definitely the ones that we kind of talked about, and I, I won't say exact addresses, just because, um- Yeah. Um, but this, there are two in Cora Peak and one in Hobbsville. And so the, the ori- the case that I originally came to Scott and to Emily and to Warren and to Al with was, um, a case that we've been dealing with since maybe twenty sixteen or something. And it's a woman who I believe is still living illegally in a house that doesn't have running water, and she has several chained dogs. There have been goats, there have been puppies, there have been chickens, I think, and there have been cats as well. And the problem is that the weights of the dogs fluctuate, and they're generally on heavy chains. We have given her tie outs, we've provided dog houses as well, um, she's a hard person to communicate with. Um, sometimes you get her on a good day, and she'll let you do things, and other times she won't, and this is a case that I have been contacting animal control about since, um, Deputy Atkins was a animal control officer, and then I dealt with Bud, and now animal control officer Parker. And they're really like, if there's a little bit of water in the bucket, he really can't do anything. And so, just to kind of show you, and I don't know if you can see these, and I'm happy to just kind of pass them down, um, the conditions of the dogs, the weights fluctuate. And so you can see that, like, this is one of the dogs, Soldier, who's been on the property for years and years and years, and this was a photo of him taken a few years ago. And like, you can see, that's him, you know, you can see like the ribs of the dogs, and then you can see like the flea infestation, and they lose the hair. And so these are just like, some of the things that these dogs go through, you know, when they're kept in crates. For some reason, you know, she's keeping them in a crate, and then it's like the hair loss as well from the fleas. Um, another thing that chained dogs have to face is the fly strike, and that's when they're forced to live among feces and garbage. The flies come, and they eat their ears, they literally eat their ears, and you can see in some of these photos, those are flies that are eating the dog's ears. Um, we've also picked up dogs for surrender that were not doing well, that she didn't want anymore. And so there was a beagle that was on the property, um, and he had a terrible ear infection, he had wounds, he was underweight, and she was keeping him in this hutch. Um, and I'm just gonna show you some really awful photos of like the hutch that she was keeping, and filled with feces, and like the feces underneath the hutch. These are just like, you could go there, you could say, okay, everything looks, but like over the years, this is kind of what's been going on. And then this is, these are the water buckets, and this is what we commonly find in the, the buckets, filled with algae, empty. Um, and then there are cats on the property, and the cats have infections.
Were there all these pictures currently?
These are, these are over the years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then this was a dog that we picked up from her that is amazemented.
Yeah, just, uh, let y'all know, uh, Al was calling, uh, Rachel or someone with PETA, and he went there on, uh, May, May the sixteenth. And, uh, his picture, you know, it, it didn't show any ribs, and, uh, and they all have water. And so, uh, you know, he, uh, he, you know, it's not a perfect situation, but I think all the hoses and all the leashes will probably come back about two days.
Yeah. Yeah, because we had them on heavy chains, so to get them off of the heavy chains, they don't have so much weight around their necks. We provide the, the lighter weight tie outs that are still strong.
But again, uh, we had, after we had talked a week ago, we had said Al's a good guy, had to do an inspection.
Did he go out?
He had, we had talked, that he would go out labor this week, so he's, he's good to be labor.
Okay, so, yeah.
I'm sure he'll go out into the morgue, right?
Yeah. And so, you know, that's just, so that's one case, and this is just very typical of what we see with chained dogs, the fly strike, the flea infestation. We actually, we found a dead dog, not in this county, in another county, and when we took the dog for a necropsy, the vet said that it was flea anemia. Like this dog literally died, was eaten by fleas, died from that, I think. That is such a horrible way to go, and this summer we've just seen so many fleas, and so this is something that chained dogs, dogs who are chained outside twenty-four seven battle, you know? And like, there's nobody putting flea prevention on these dogs except for us. So this is another case, um, and we, we were actually able to get these dogs, but it was, um, several like Shih Tzu type dogs. And they were okay, and then they got really maddened, and we shaved them down, but this is, the last time we found them was in this condition, um, you know, and we explained how awful that was, and so they ended up surrendering them to us. And then there was a cat with, an outdoor cat with, you know, a horrible upper respiratory infection, so that's just, that's another case as well. And it's not to punish, you know, these ordinances aren't there to punish people, they're really just put into place to say, hey, if you're gonna have these animals, these are the duties of ownership, these are your responsibilities, um, to get vet care for your animal, when they're said, you can't have a kitten, you know, with the eyes crusted closed, you have to take the, the cat to, to a vet. You can't have dogs living in mud, covered in mud, you know, outside, they're just, it's giving animal control and law enforcement, because, you know, I deal with a lot with law enforcement, and, you know, sometimes they're like, we can't, there's nothing we can do. North Carolina state law is really vague and ambiguous, and really just covers cruelty, but there's nothing like definitions of adequate shelter, definitions of adequate space. What is adequate water, what is adequate food, what is adequate care, does that include veterinary care? And so do, those are kind of also things that we try to include in the ordinances when we, um, when we work with, with localities. So this was, this was another, um, so they currently have seven dogs plus three chickens. Um, and when we found the chickens, they were in, excuse me, a dog crate. And so the dogs were sort of like, some were chained, some were in pens. We brought them dog houses because the dogs had, didn't have adequate shelter, I think they had like a bear, they had barrels. Um, we brought them a pen, because the pen that they had wasn't sufficiently big, and so we provided dog houses, you know, we've sterilized them, they allow us to, we've replaced heavy chains with lightweight tie outs, we, you know, we brought the pen, and we, you know, like the dogs are living in mud, and so here are just, um, these are just a few, and they're not like the worst, but you can just kind of have an idea, you know, a Yorkshire terrier outside chained without any kind of shelter and stuff. So these are just kind of like some of the, some of the, the photos, um. And so, you know, we wanna help people, but we also would love to have something that we could say, hey, you know what, that's not, that's not adequate shelter, that plastic barrel doesn't, that's not going to protect your dog in the cold and the, in the heat, you know, when it rains, it's gonna flood. If you're, if you're keeping your dog in an area that's gonna flood, you have to move the dog, and so just kind of, um, things like that to give animal control, and, you know, just some guidance on, if you're gonna keep a dog outside, then, you know, these are the, the standards that you have to follow. And then, um, I have packets for, there are five commissioners, yes? So I have a pa- packet, this, no. So I have, um, just if you wanna take one and pass it down, it's just, um, we put out a quarterly report, um, so it just includes our latest quarterly report with the work that we do. It's also, there's a lot, you know, one pager about why chaining is cruel, um, when Richware, they recently passed a tethering ban, we made flyers for them. Um, when Halifax County passed their tethering ban, we made flyers that went in the water bills, and, you know, we put up billboards and, so it's just kind of like what we can do, and then there's also an op ed in there, um, you know, about why North Carolina should improve their animal welfare laws, and, um, just, just some information about what we do, and what, you know, how we're willing to help, and, um, so I guess it would kind of be up to the board, is there kind of a desire to work on, you know, the ordinance, and how do we move forward with that?
So that's how it was presented to the board, letting them know that you would come in to kind of give an overview of things that we had talked about, um, and deciding from there if it would be a continued conversation, and if so, um, how to move forward with it, which would be, um, bringing in the other voices in the conversation to the table, um, for a, a more in-depth discussion. So I'll leave it to the other commissioners here for input and questions.
I mean, I think it's something that we definitely need to look at, um, going with what, uh, Chair Truman was saying, uh, a little bit earlier. Maybe put together a team to discuss what we had in place, maybe what needs to change. And it does need to include your normal dog hunters, you know, maybe, uh, somebody from the animal plant, from the animal shelter, uh, some hunters. You know, just a good, the group of, a big group of people, and, um, that doesn't mean for that.
Stay cool.
Like a, uh-
Animal advisory board?
Like a, yeah.
Yeah, some, something similar to that.
Just to review, but yeah, they'll have different voices from different sectors, um, in addition to the commissioners, um, representation for PETA. We did mention the shelters, uh, we mentioned hunt clubs, having, having them involved, so, um, animal control officer for warrants, um, to have at the table for the conversation, so, yeah, if we have a consensus, because again, we can't vote here, and moving forward with something like that, then we can look at scheduling a work session in the future to represent the ideas, and have, I guess it would need to be a public hearing of sorts at some point if we change an ordinance, correct?
If we change the ordinance, it would have to be a public-
So, depending on how far it goes down the line, if it gets to the point where we do agree that we wanna, um, change the verbiage and include different things, then we would need to go to a public hearing before it can be adopted, but, um, yeah, so, Commissioner Rauter, Christian Rivera, any input?
I agree, I mean, as far as being able to, uh, take a, a look at what the, how the ordinance is currently worded, how we can fit something in there that maybe kind of, uh, strengthens it a little bit more, may, maybe better off, so that way, uh, our animal control can have a little bit more teeth on it when it comes to something like that, so.
So we'll look at a further study then on that?
It would also need to, need to include the, uh, hunters as well, and I think it's the, uh, North Carolina Dog Hunters Association probably. We have some members in Gates County, that's, that's a part of that, so it'd probably be good to kind of draw them into it and have that discussion with them.
I think they got a function coming up.
They do in October.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, um, get the top few from that to come in?
Well, just for reference, in the work session package, I do have a copy of the Halifax County animal ordinance, this is the very last part of that packet that was provided then.
Okay. And this was one of the ones that you mentioned that you had, that, that PETA was behind, is that correct?
Yes.
And you had worked with the community to develop, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we worked with all of the, I think that the county was able to talk to the hunters directly and say, we're gonna exempt you from A, B, and C, um, to where they were fine with that. The only thing that Halifax passed, which was the only way it was gonna pass, because one of the commissioners was really stuck on it, which we didn't really agree with, was that they did two pen sizes, you know, like we always push, obviously, these dogs are in these pens twenty-four seven, they very rarely come out. So you wanna give them as much space as possible, and when you put a shelter or a doghouse in there, it's less space. So we would always, when we have, when we build a pen, we generally do twenty by twenty, and so that's obviously what we're gonna advocate for. But they said, well, the ten by ten is, what is gonna pass, because you can buy that, it's not super expensive, it comes in a kit. But what they did was they said, ten by ten for dogs over this weight, and six by six for dogs under this weight, and, you know, we were like, this dog is gonna be, you know, there's like no space, and so that's, you know, when, when I send out the Halifax County, it, the definitions are great, the wording is great. We have seen a difference in Halifax County since they passed the ordinance, um, but that six by six pen, man, even for a small dog, there's just not a lot of room, you know? And they're pooping in there, they're peeing in there, they're eating in there, that is their space, you know, and also, unless you really require people to clean them out, you know, they're not getting cleaned out as much. So we want to do some, do better than having them on a chain, we don't wanna put them in a worse situation. And I also put a letter in there, um, so just, so we're also working with the North Carolina General Assembly on a, on a statewide bill that would put definitions in place, and that would ban chaining in certain weather extremes. We've been trying for like the last three years, um, and I'm sure you know that, like, the General Assembly's kind of locked right now, there being disagreement over the budget, so, you know, like the House is not coming back in the Senate, and so there's a lot of dysfunction, so I'm not sure that anything's gonna get passed, but that's kind of also what we're working on. And in your packets, there's a letter from Chairman Vernon Bryant from Halifax County to the North Carolina Association of County-
I'm gonna say, if I may, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna reach out to NCACC, again, Amber Harris and Destiny Everett are both, uh, no longer with the association, but they do have others in place, Joey Hicks, Andrew Blackburn, that are working with the legislative committee to move those things forward.
Yeah, yeah, we, and we met with Amber, and, um, but they, they wouldn't really take it up, we didn't really want it to necessarily be part of the association's packet. We kind of just wanted them to support the bill, um, but Vernon was kind enough to write that letter to Kevin Leonard, which, you know, kind of explains why they decided to go ahead with the ban, so.
Rachel, what did you, you said the other day, that you got something passed in Currituck County?
So we had work on that, but Currituck County did pass, um, an ordinance, and I, I haven't looked at it myself, I know that because of the animal control supervisor who told us, and it's basically a weather extreme ban on chain.
Is that, uh, less than thirty-four, above eighty-four?
Probably something like that. Now, the only problem with the limitations is that it's, they're really hard to enforce. You know, where I live in Norfolk, there are a lot of cities and Hampton Roads that have the restrictions, and then they ended up going to a full ban, because if you have a three-hour chaining limitation, can't have an officer sitting outside some of these houses for three hours to make sure that they bring their dogs in. And so the limitations, they found difficult to enforce, and so they, we always, we always encourage total bans, 'cause then animal control can, you know, they see a chained dog, say, hey, I'm sorry, you know, that's not allowed anymore, you have this amount of time to, you know, to get into compliance. We would love to see a total ban in North Carolina. We would love to see a total ban in North Carolina, but it just, it's not gonna pass, the same as in Virginia. We did get the weather restriction passed, um, in twenty-twenty throughout the state. And there are certain, you know, there are localities like Norfolk and Newport News and Suffolk and Hampton that have total bans, and also Franklin as well. But yeah, Curritown County, it looks like they passed a weather restriction. And it's also, you know, like you find dogs who've been left outside during hurricanes and tornadoes, and their doghouse has flown to the other side of the lot, and the dog is still attached to it, and so, you know, weather restrictions are also a step in the right direction.
Well, I think this is a lot of information for us to look at work review, um, moving forward, and then, uh, like I said, before, getting the right contact, make sure that we have the right people at the table for the next, and have us be in touch with scheduling something going forward to, to, to come back and, I guess, do this again, but, um, with a larger group, uh, open that up for conversation, and again, have different perspectives in that conversation. So do we have any other questions or comments? No?
Okay.
I think that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, um, take this and all of this, and we can reach out to Halifax if needed, Halifax isn't too far away.
Yeah.
We have Commissioner friends there, so...
Yeah. North Hampton County, I think, is close as well, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for making the trip.
Absolutely, thank you so much for having me, it was so nice meeting you. Should I just wait to hear from Scott, or do you want me to follow up in a week, or, um...
Well, I'm gonna be gone all next week.
You want me to come and speak, Adam?
Let me get situated a little bit further into September.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you so much, have a great day, thank you.
Appreciate.
Do you need a water or something?
I do.
All right.
All right, so we wanna move right into, I guess we have first the agenda here. Convenience centers, re-entry council, RFQ, community and senior center. Are we good, or do we need another?
Well, I'll try to make it real short, so we can take a break and get ready to move to the extension office. Convenience centers, our three-county consortium with Perquins, Chauan, and Gates, has the landfill commission, and it's now come up twice at the two quarterly meetings. They are really interested in having the three counties have consistent rules and regulations with, within the, the three counties. So if they move staff from one to the other due to somebody being out sick or vacation, there's some consistency. They also, uh, are gonna, uh, look to double up their staffing on Sunday afternoons. Apparently, that's one of our busiest, uh, times, and, and they're gonna bring in some additional part-time help. I don't think they're asking for any additional money, they're gonna try to work that within their budget allocation from the county. Where we may need to consider, uh, some, some additional funding, will probably come out of the fund balance for that fund, it runs in a separate fund, is for some of the container replacements, you know, the compacters and the roll-off containers. They've got any number of them, the large thirty-yard open-top containers that they patched and welded, and have just said they, they really need to be looking at some, uh, replacement. Normally what they do is they have each county buy the same number, because the, the boxes all get, you know, switched, or it's not that the Gates County boxes, but, but, so it was, if it was five, or six, or ten, whatever it is, that, that may be forthcoming. But I really need your help for all of these that made the trip on the farm tour to Reggie Askew's farm. He cornered me again for Senator Bud's, uh, visit about the, uh, filters, the, the cooling cell filters. And we accept those for free at the transfer station in Belvedere, and apparently the farmers haul them there all the time, on their, whatever their cycle is, I don't know if they change them quarterly or semi-annually, and, and I think I mentioned to you that, uh, Angel White said she really likes dealing with Mr. Briggs. So I guess he must be one of the frequent, uh, customers, and apparently has not raised any issues with it, but, uh, the manager for Perquins made the comment that if we were to take steps to add a special box just for the, the chicken filters, that we would probably get a few filters from Perquins, 'cause it'd be a, uh, or Chauan, whoever's clear, because it'd be easier to drive into our convenience center right on the line versus going into Belvedere, so I don't know if that's something that you all would have any other additional comments. Mr. Askew is the one I know that has, uh, brought it up, but he did ask me again, "What are you gonna do about this, Mr. Manager?"
So him and, and Reggie Askew.
Yeah.
Are, are they like using the same convenience center? Can we just, just put a box?
Anywhere?
In your, so y'all don't just drop, drop off here, 'cause...
Yeah.
What honestly does them, the reason it's so easy, easy for them is 'cause we're right there at it, and we go through backwards, and they're just as fast as you can go to convenience center, we can deal with the transfer station.
Yeah.
So, um, the, that way it's just, hey, it's here, drop it off, let them use it.
So we basically designate that location as the one location where they can drop off?
In the county, yeah, I would, I would do it closer to the ones that we've heard from, yeah.
That way, that side of the county, 'cause it's, it, I...
'Cause realistically, Hoxville, it's not really that far to go across the county line and do it, but when you're looking at Gates and Newark, it is a bit of a haul to, to have to go do it. If you have something in Newark, that's more justifiable for that, out of the county, yeah.
Yeah, it would be a mine.
Hundred percent.
It's like perfect now.
I got you a twenty-three minute recording, sir.
It's like a perfect time, like I saw somebody driving, I was like, "Okay."
We are.
Well, he is the chairman of the animal control committee, right?
Yeah, you're now the chairman of animal control.
That's what happens when you're not here, right? So, um, but yeah, we're, we're now talking about the convenience sites and the filters that Reggie Askew had brought up on the farm tours, um, and Mr. Verriman talked about putting a box just in Newark for that side of the county, and...
Okay, well, I'll, I'll look into that and see what they, um, see if that would cause any heartburn, um, for the folks at Perquins.
Make the stipulation, he's gotta cross them down before he takes them there.
Yep.
The other item they're asking each county to look at is to see if we can get security cameras at all of our convenience center sites, uh, for the purpose of, of being able to record interactions between staff and customers, 'cause a member of staff have indicated that they, they feel threatened
They get mistreated, yeah.
and had illegal activity from, uh, certain, uh, customers, and they just, I don't know if they wanna be able to monitor it live or just have a recording, uh, we'd have to see, I, I guess we'll probably have five or bright speed or, you know, at, at all these locations, there's probably a, an internet capability, but...
Yeah, the benefit that comes up with this is, I'm talking, yeah, it works at Corpiet's site, I've been talking to much, I sat there one time and watched for license plates, we had the whole issue about, well, I'm people, and, uh, so I spent another day out there for like an hour just watching it, and I did see three cars coming in with Virginia plates, so I asked him, I said, "Hey, how often do you have people come from Virginia?" He says, "Dude, all freaking time." I said, "Really?" He says, "Yeah." I said, "I said, it's not just like maybe somebody's driving their sister's car," and he said, "I don't know about that." But it might be worthwhile just for that, to also be able to just monitor out of state. I don't think it's a big deal, maybe for the more southern...
I think with out-of-state plates, I had forgotten, because we are so close to Virginia on military basis, that so many license plates will stay other states, especially Virginia, but they reside here. They do actually reside here, but they don't have to change that.
Yeah, my, my business car was...
Right, there, that happens.
We should let him dump it.
That happens quite often, though, I think, because we...
Well, yeah, it's funny you say that, so, uh, Johnny Green, uh, he, uh, he pulled up to the trash office the same time I was late, and, uh, his wife works in Virginia, you know, for cottage, and he was driving one of her vehicles, and he didn't know what it was. So I had opportunities, I had some you deserve, you know, you can't dump here your Virginia. But it was, well, it was hilarious.
And that's where the conversation, like Mr. Buck has brought up, basically like having a sticker, have something in there saying, indicating, "This is the vehicle that can, can do here." I know that that's been something Mr. Buck has brought for me multiple times, and I think the rest of the board probably as frequently, um, so there are different ways to regulate it, but...
But the amount of money that you're spending on registering and stickers being made and everything like that versus how much it's, it's gonna deter somebody who shouldn't be dumping there, yeah. That's, uh, that, you, you probably wouldn't even pay for stickers. Probably only in Corpiet, yeah, I would obviously, probably.
And is it worth it for that?
And, yeah, that's just the point of discussion.
It's a great idea, but it's just that you gotta look at the risk versus rewards of it.
Right.
Also depends on whether they're bringing a bunch of tires or something like that, that's different, you know, that, that has...
Speaking of that tax back from the state for tires now, well...
Can bring a tire.
They can bring a tire.
I never knew that.
Can you take tires?
Certain days, certain days.
Oh, really?
A certain day, they have a...
Well, I learned something.
Taking my tires.
Okay.
Let me know what day that is.
I'm definitely, I mean, I'm current security cameras, I don't think security cameras are ever a bad thing.
No, it's, it's, go ahead and just work into the budget, and, you know, maybe not do all of them at once, and...
All right.
All right.
Maybe that's the next year budget, it'll... And, and like the, the roll-offs and stuff, they're, they run around forty-eight hundred dollars per container, and we're in desperate need of them. 'Cause that's one of the questions I have, so Dixie is our hauling service.
Yes.
And they're picking up, we own the containers, if one of them busted going down the road, whom would be liable for it?
Hey, what's the answer?
I don't know.
Well, probably the three-county landfill commission.
Yeah.
'Cause they're running collectively.
Right, so, yeah, that's why I think it's important to have good dumpsters, of, you take a two-by-four washing machine for somebody's windshield.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like a transport company is responsible for it, you know, they're ultimately responsible for the load that they haul.
Yeah, they're, yeah, for securing the load.
Yeah, but, but if they have acids and acids and acids replaced...
Then they can refuse to pick up, and the, if it's the integrity of container.
So, I mean, it's just...
Yeah, I think it is a little bit still in the liability of the driver, 'cause it's just not fit for him to pick up.
It's for him to...
He can turn his way.
To verify the integrity of the load.
He will do have a problem.
Yeah, then we have another problem, you know.
Maybe we need to get, need to get the dumpster.
We just need...
Yeah, you need a good dumpster.
Which you said they're how much, roughly?
Yeah, like forty-eight hundred bucks.
So not ridiculous.
No, they're not, they're not crazy. But if you replace them all at one time...
Right, but that's where that comes...
I think they would stage them over several years.
Yeah, that comes where we talk about the circulation, like rotation for lots of these purchases, looking at annuals as going forwards, and things like that.
Rotation of animals, that's right.
Huh? No, obviously not that.
Well, item next, I wanted to mention the re-entry council, we're worried with Chauan County. Our caseworker has the office right behind that television, who she set up to use that door on the other side of the building for, for her clients. I don't know that we have a lot of traffic yet, but, uh, we are looking to recruit members for the local council, and I know we have a few names.
Yeah, we have a couple of names, um, so I have reached out to, um, Pastor Brandon Davis from your, uh, your back, no, Cool Spring.
Cool Spring.
Cool Spring, um, reached out to him, I'm gonna, uh, we've talked to Cher about having, uh, Sergeant Aaron Smith and SRO Trey Lasseter, um, be a part of it, and Cher has okayed that. Um, I have Ms. Crystal Saunders on my list of people that I'm trying to reach out to, to, to ask to be a part of it. We also have in-house, uh, we talked about, um, Crystal Phillips being a part of the council. I'm trying to remember offhand who else we had.
Might be Dr. Trace, but I'm not sure.
Um, there was another name or two, I know she was on the strategic plan list, but...
But Crystal's got a corrections experience.
Uh, Willie Smith, Willie Smith, different ones like that, that have, um, either extended, eh, eh, experience with dealing with people from that population, um, I really think it would be nice to have someone that has had experience and is just as involved, so if you have any suggestions of anyone from within the community, um, or that's on staff that was just involved, that we think would be a good part of, of this, um, definitely let us know the names of those people.
Pastor Eric. I know him.
Okay.
I believe Carol, I think, uh, she's, I think she's taken the elections position, yeah, she's got experience. Yes, Caroline Taylor.
Yeah, Caroline Taylor.
Uh, she was the number-two superintendent over at the Bertie Correctional, the maximum security facility.
Yeah.
Really is sharp.
Definitely excited, but I think it would be nice to have somebody on the other side of the law just as involved, be a part of the, the team as well, um, and it's important to cover all demographics, because it's gonna be different across men, women, black, white, older, younger, um, all the demographics need to be hit. So, any, any further names, and I think we'll be looking at moving forward with that here shortly.
Stormy Butts?
You want, oh, I was gonna offer you somebody, not me. Our peer support specialist, uh, wanted to go to help, she, she's already working with her, so there's already a little bit of a tie there.
Okay, okay.
I think some of those people fit into a...
Spell it.
Different popular brandy.
Is it I or, or Y?
Y, and it's Coors, and C-O-U-R-S-O-N. And the man who cuts our grass at the station was a resident of this building that we're setting in, when this was a prison, I don't know his last name, it's Boudreau, something like that.
Oh, Ken, for sure.
He lives right there on Thirty-seventh, just past the, the church.
Yeah, he has quite a story.
He was, he was incarcerated here.
He had quite a story, yeah. Um, okay, so I will see about reaching out to those.
And then the last item I have was for the new community center and senior activity center. We have the money that we're, the, the state has allowed us to repurpose, to hire an architect to do the design for the new facility, we're gonna prepare a, a request for qualifications to get that out on the street, hopefully have that at your next meeting to approve, so that when you're out making the request for the, the project, you can say, "We've got a set of construction drawings, we already own the land, uh, ready to, to, to roll."
That's exciting.
Wh- where is that at?
Uh, it's behind the library.
Okay.
So...
Further up Sunny Land.
Yeah.
Further up Sunny? Yeah.
The aging council will be excited, I just went to that meeting last week, and they, that will take a while.
I had somebody pull in my driveway on the way here this morning and tell me that he needed an update on what we were doing for senior centers, and I told him, my heart was, you know, of course, we were thinking it, I said, "My heart would be to see the community center actively used from nine to three while kids are in school right now as engaging with the senior population, 'cause we have staff and we have a building at this point, there's no reason it can't be active now, in my opinion." Um, I don't know where y'all are on that, I know the county oversees some different things now, but I feel like if we're gonna be staffed as a community center, that's not a student's center, and that they need to be more active in engaging our senior population during the day when students aren't in school. That's my spiel, input.
Was a good spot, EMS to do some health screen, it, historically in the past, we didn't want any candidates there. We, we were able to intervene and some...
We did a lot of stuff there before it went to the school, and then they stopped having those regular meetings.
Let's start going with you.
Yeah.
They usually have blood drives out there all the time.
Yeah.
Yep.
These classes.
But just, and, and not just that, they're like activities too, like something to engage them and get them involved, like...
'Cause an act of seniors usually helps your senior...
They are, it helps, it helps put off, it helps put off dementia, it helps keep your mind active when you have those opportunities, and we owe it to our seniors to give them more than what they're getting. So, I mean, this, what is it, our new number here, our percentage of our population, which our new population per, the newest map book that we just got out, um, is ten thousand two hundred ninety-four, which is down from last year by almost a couple hundred, um, but it has the population over sixty-five is, almost twenty-five percent of our population is over sixty-five. So if that's a quarter of our population, and the under eighteen, I'm just kinda doing math here in my head a little bit, under eighteen, population of Gates is only eighteen point five, then, yeah, we have a building that's a community center that needs to be used for the twenty-five percent of our population during the day.
Okay.
Which, yeah, that's...
Something else, I'll let them see that, I don't know, there's a blood pressure machine.
A blood pressure machine. Blood pressure machine.
You know, it was like you sit down and all bring.
Do they even make those anymore? Do they have aspirin? I haven't seen those in a while.
Yeah, they took a lot of CBS stuff, I think.
I bought a real cheap one, I'm not. You just like, you put on your wrist, it's actually very.
Now, they could have a station for them.
I, I mean, I think it needs to be a station, I, I really, that would be pretty cool to have something, cause that would be very inexpensive to have a little.
Right.
Wound goes on your wrist.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or even, it's little, what, what, I bought one the other day.
Yeah.
It goes right to your phone, track, send it to your doctor, but, uh, activity, place like that.
Yeah.
So what's the subject, I'm sorry, I won't.
Uh, we're talking about this, if you want to recap this, the, what we were approved for, you said that we could do the money and.
The, uh, the new community center slash senior activity center.
Right.
We have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it was originally going to be used to renovate the old one.
Right.
The state has allowed us to repurpose that money for the design for the new one.
Ah, good.
So we'd like to put out an RFQ and bring that to the board to, so y'all can select an architect to design that facility, we've got the land. And then when you're meeting with federal or state representatives, indicate we've got a shovel ready site with property the county owns and a set of open construction.
So it's assumption there it's at the commerce center?
Yes.
At the commerce.
Do y'all have something, ideas, a particular location or just?
Well, we had an original location and that could certainly be adjusted as the board sees fit.
Yeah, that that location is still on the plan.
Yeah.
Protifications with the current stuff going on at the office.
No, it's really, we haven't really messed with that, cause we knew that that was the overall plan.
Needed, yeah, and the idea, well, we, the direction we seem to be going is giving that back to the community and that would be a big part in giving that back to the community.
Yeah.
So.
Being close to, uh, just live in.
And EMS.
And we saw like, blood pressure system place where you take the blood pressure.
And we're also talking about utilizing the community center more for senior engagement until that time comes, because we have a center that's empty from eight to three right now.
Yeah.
So, staffed and empty, so.
So it's time to eat again?
I I would think our, our director of the community center will be needing a little bit more product to do.
Um, I know I've had conversations, I've been told that they put out a sign that they put dominoes out basically that they offer, but to me, that's not community engagement and actively seeking to engage the senior population. You need to go out to churches, you need to go out to places where seniors are, you need to try and actively engage to bring them in, have activities more than just putting something on the table, like schedule things. That would be, to me, active engagement with our senior population. As of right now, having a room that's unlocked and dominoes on the table is not active engagement.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
You could put a setup EMS once a month.
Right.
I know Camden would double in size the day that we did that. People would come and get their blood pressure checked and blood sugar checked, some of those people, they only want to check what we're getting.
And and it shouldn't be us saying, hey, you should try this, they, you know, the person that's running that should be coming to us and say, hey, I need additional funding, cause I want to do this.
I want to do this, right.
Yeah, that's what, I would, I would love to be able to see something like that for a county of those, hey, you know, what that three hundred thousand dollars you've been giving, just ain't enough, because I need to have this, cause I want to do this.
And it shouldn't have to wait until we have a new building.
Yeah.
That's something that can happen now.
If we're really being honest, I mean, y'all know me, I'll speak up. Um, we've got three people there sitting there during the day and nothing happening, but yet we close on the weekends when all the kids potentially would want to use the place or later in the evening. I mean, really, I mean, are we setting hours based on the convenience of the employees or are we setting hours based upon?
The needs of the community.
And I think we're not doing it based on the needs of the public. I hate to say it, you know, you take the job and if it requires you to work, you know, four to eight in the evenings instead of eight to two in the afternoon, but you have a whole lot more kids available, want to do it, want to go to the gym, that's something we really ought to consider. Why they aren't coming, does again, the director, she'd come in St. Pierre's, I'd like to utilize my staff and research from that. And I'd be, I'd be honest with you, more than one time, I've gone there, watching the kids play ball or something else, you go there thinking, oh, go buy a drink, I'm sure whatever, door's locked, can't go to the bathroom, so you have to go to that nasty hole in the wall in the ball field. That bathroom there, which is terrible.
Well, we have come to that, though.
Yeah, it actually does, you're right, I was there last night, it was much better than I was surprised.
There, yes.
Still gotta teach children to go like this and flush the thing.
Yeah. I washed it inside.
Yeah, it does look better, but even still, I mean.
Yeah, I agree.
I've been, I've had folks from other counties come to, come to ball games, they're like, the community center's not open, like, nah.
Well, that should be open every day, you have a ball.
Public service announcement from, uh, extension office, it's going to be closer to five before the chicken is done, sorry.
Chicken, one chicken.
They're feeding us tonight, there, it's their annual report to the people, so they're gonna, um, feed us and talk to us.
I'm sorry.
It's fine, so closer to five, we'll be ready, but.
I want to.
Yeah.
Well, what is that on as far as what we're talking about?
Yeah, this is.
And if this is probably talking about the.
This is an opposition.
Yeah, um, what, what are we doing now with all the, cause there was a discussion back and forth with schools as far as the ball.
The fields.
And who's going to maintain all that stuff, where, where's all that headed?
Yeah, well, um, the ball fields have always been maintained by, uh, well, one little league field is been maintained by the county. And the high school looks after football field, softball field, and the baseball field. Now, we do not, even on the little league field, we do not have a contract for anyone to cut it. But Brinkley's, because they're out there cutting everything else, they just always cut it. And so, uh, I've been speaking with Danny Hill, cause Danny Hill is looking after, I spoke to him last night, he can look after football, softball, and baseball. So, uh, Danny, he's looked after all of that, and he's armed up with Norris, they've got some ideas of how to use equipment. So Norris could use it possibly if Danny wasn't able to, but, but we never cut the grass either. That's always been either high school on those three fields or Brinkley's, we're cutting a little league field.
So did the, when the community center was part of the school boards, was any of the community center staff responsible for anything that's out there? We transferred that function over to us, but.
It was always done, well, the high school was to look after their own fields.
Right.
So they.
They do a good job?
Yo, Danny does a good job.
Yeah.
Danny does all the seed chemicals and everything, so, uh, so, and Danny's, that's who's done it if it wasn't the baseball coach.
Right.
So now it's Danny, cause.
Coach left.
We got, we didn't coach.
Yeah.
And other coaches will take control of it later, but, but Danny does, and I talk with Danny every week about what he's doing out there. And so Danny has agreed to go ahead and take the little league field, cause he wants all the fields and all this, so.
Who pays him?
He's a volunteer.
Yeah, he volunteers.
He's a volunteer.
Well, at the end of the fiscal year, Warren had asked Danny, what could we do immediately to help out? And they provided us a list of supplies, and was it seed or fertilizer?
Seed and fertilizer.
So William helped him find some remaining money out of the community center budget that hadn't been spent, and we got, what, several pallets full of?
Mm-hmm, we got enough to almost whatever.
But, but to be clear, who owns the fields?
County owns the fields.
Well, if you read the deeds, the county owns everything.
Well, yeah, yeah, I guess I should say, who has, who has routinely in the past operated as if they own the fields? It's been the school, right?
It's the school, yeah.
Well, they use them the most, so it's always been the school, and they wanted to do the upkeep, so we did hands off on those three fields. They let us use them, but they want to do all the maintenance and the coating. And like I said.
So that's when they came forward with an agreement, proposed for us to sign saying here, let us take control of it.
They want ownership in that agreement and we can't give them ownership, cause they don't own anything.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I spent a lot of time with Danny, like I said in the last month, Danny, he said, I don't want to do anything political, but I do want the fields to look nice. If it's some agreement between you and me verbally, I'm okay with that, cause he's got some other people to help him, like I think Travis Reed's in.
And this guy was out there last night, yeah, they're out there extending water hoses and spraying the places.
I was out there last night too, yeah.
Basically said they want it all to be uniformed and look the same and look nice and be maintained, and they have the equipment and machinery that they're willing to use enough, and they have the staff that's willing to volunteer.
Yeah, that's right.
Volunteer staff.
So we don't have the equipment, they've got the equipment, and like I said, Danny, I've kind of met with Danny and Norris and they kind of reached some little bit of friendship that was never there. So, we're gonna, we're gonna get along.
I'll be honest with you, this kind of strikes me odd that we have, what, five employees at the community center, and yet we have to have a volunteer doing field work.
Well, they want to, they don't want the, they don't want the staff to do it, they want to do their own.
And they started with the, the little league ball field, I coached on there three years ago, little, the little kids, little league boys, and the field looked atrocious three years ago, so they clearly take it over.
That's why we're doing something different.
Yeah.
And, uh, and we're not paying anything extra for it, and I got to keep Danny mo- motivated to keep doing it, but he enjoys it and that's what he, he doesn't want anybody.
He does.
I think he likes to see the kids have best.
Yeah.
So he has a heart for the kids.
You know, he, he coaches baseball out there, so he wants to see improvement in the sport.
And and it was not too long ago, we did provide them some extra money, uh, with, for one of the fields.
But that's what you were just talking about.
Yeah.
No, 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 it was prior to that, it was prior to you being on the board.
Oh.
Uh, we did for tennis courts.
No, uh, uh.
What do you?
It was, uh.
They rebuilt the, uh, this announcer's stand or whatever, right?
That was, yeah. They did, they dealt it.
Nah, this was, uh, put more dirt, it was seventy-five hundred dollars a month.
We did put.
As far as the baseball mounds?
Yeah, maybe it was the.
I remember it was a lot of money that was spent for the mounds, is what it was told to be.
Cause they didn't have all the money, they were trying to raise money or something.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
The pressure, Jack was on the board, it was.
I was over there.
Yeah, well, you have, you have to redo.
That's why you don't remove.
Yeah, the softball and the little league field both have to redo their infield almost every year with clay or dirt or a mixture.
I, I think they don't want to do.
Uh, that was probably had to do both, both of those fields together.
Well, we had a four o'clock adjourn on here to relocate to the next location, which they do have a little bit of a delay, but if we want to go ahead and adjourn and move and I don't. Move things back to offices and all the things and get ready for tonight, because we'll be eating a little bit later, um, and then get ready to do this all again in, what, two hours?
One, one, one last question to kind of ramp up the whole.
Yeah.
Community center debacle stuff that happened, are we going to refund back Jonathan and the money that he spent and all that kind of stuff?
Well, I was going to make the motion tonight to do that.
I, I personally feel like it was, it should be refunded because they were ordered based on the email that came through, um.
I just, I totally disagree with this, because it was the earmark for that, not at all.
Yeah, they, but they had money for spending that for all kinds of things, whether it was earmarked for or not, so I'm still going to make the motion, I'm just giving you a heads up, I plan on making that motion. To ring person. So, can I go back and rephrase, y'all already leave it, so what was the outcome of our Peter presentation?
We're going to be forward planning a work session to get input with animal shelters, uh, animal control, um, hunting clubs, and us at the table with PETA, um, in the future. We'll be scheduling that hopefully sometime in September, um, at least.
With PETA, I mean, why are they being invited to the table?
They're going to present what they presented here to.
To a group, okay.
To the group, yes.
Okay.
So they're gonna, yeah, cause they're the ones that approached us, so they're gonna give the, have the opportunity to present it and to be able to answer questions, field questions as they come through based on what they're presenting.
And then if, and we'll look at the ordinance, what we have, something in the ordinance might need to change.
Right.
For some of the, the stuff that we just.
And in the back of our work session packet, there is a, um, copy of the Halifax change, and then she has in the, um, folder that she left, she had a little more information in there.
So, we, we do, we do need to look at some of the a- animal ordinances around, um, the several places and get connected to that, I've, I've often, I've had a constituent, uh, call in. And the guy's got, I don't know, how many chickens and ducks in the yard?
I see them in water.
And and I told, I told him it was not more of a, uh, animal control ordinance, it was not, I said it was more of a health, yeah, I think, it's called Health Department. I mean, it, it's bad, it's bad.
Uh, we did confiscate, uh, uh, three dogs and two cats from my house on Corn High Road Friday. And it was so bad inside, there was a baby inside, that, uh, we did, I don't know, I reckon it's okay to say it, that DSS was contacted, but.
Really?
Yeah.
So tomorrow it looks like that.
Yeah, but, no, this is.
But we're talking about, you know, animals outside and everything, but animals that are kept inside, they're, this, this was far worse than the pictures we saw a while ago.
Really?
Friday turned out.
I'm going to put out there, I've heard back from the chair of the board education, um, she said that she will arrange, she's working on school pickups right now, um, that Dr. Williams is with the consolidation folks, but she will try to break in, she's going to be in touch, and tomorrow would be the best day for her because she has something coming up in Greenville on Friday. So we're going to look at a meeting tomorrow morning, I'm going to continue that conversation with her on scheduling and Mr. Sauer, so hopefully we'll have an update by tomorrow afternoon on that conversation. Are we good?
I knew there was somebody to get open the, the communication there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, I guess we will adjourn from the work session and we will see you all as.
Doing a motion.
Doing the motion to adjourn. We have a second, all in favor, by show of hands, that is unanimous, wait, I'm done.